Good morning. I'm Senator Liz Krueger. This is the Economic Development Budget Hearing for the Executive Budget. It is February 23, 2021. I'm joined by my partner in this process, Helene Weinstein, Chair of the Ways and Means Committee of the Assembly. Today is the 11th of 13 public hearings conducted by the Joint Fiscal Committees of the Legislature regarding the Governor's proposed budget for state fiscal year 2122. These hearings are conducted pursuant to the New York State Constitution and legislative law. Today, the Finance Committee and Assembly Ways and Means Committee will hear testimony concerning the Governor's proposed budget for the New York State Department of Economic Development/Empire State Development Corporation, the New York State Office of General Services, and the New York State Council on the Arts. Representing each of the agencies, I would like to welcome first Eric Gertler, Commissioner and President and CEO of Empire State Development, Rowan D'Assito, Commissioner of the New York State Office of General Services, and Mariman, Executive Director of the New York State Council on the Arts. Following each of their testimony, there will be time for questions from the Chairs of the Fiscal Committees and other legislators on either the Fiscal Committees or the Committee of Substance for the topics of that hearing. After the final question and answer period, there will be an opportunity for members of the public to briefly testify about their views on the proposed budget under discussion. I will now introduce members of the Senate, and then Helene Weinstein, Chair of Ways and Means, will introduce members of the Assembly. And I will also be introducing Tom O'Mara, the Ranker of the Senate Finance Committee, to introduce his members, and Helene will do the same with Assembly Member Roth afterwards. So let's see if we can figure out who the Senators who are here yet are. We have Senator John Liu. We have, to keep going through, Senator Diane Savino, Senator Anna Kaplan, Senator James Sanders, Senator, excuse me, lots of Assembly Members. That might be--
Senator Scoofus is here as well.
Oh, thank you so much, Senator Jim Scoofus. I'm now going to just hand it over to Tom O'Mara to introduce our Republican Senators today.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Krueger.
Sure.
Devices going at the same time.
You're getting that double loop feedback.
Yeah, sorry, I had two devices going at the same time. It was good feedback. We are joined on our side of the aisle this morning by Senator Jim Tedesco, Senator George Barello, and our Ranker on the Commerce Committee, Senator Michael Martucci, at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. And why don't we pass it over to Helene Weinstein to introduce Assembly Members?
Thank you, Senator. So we have Assemblyman Bronson, Chair of our Economic Development Committee, Assemblyman Sterpi, Chair of our Small Business Committee, Assemblyman Otis, Chair of our Science and Technology Committee, Assemblyman Pretlow, Chair of our Racing Committee, Assembly Members Aubrey Bronstein, Button Sean, Conrad Cook, Darling, Delon Glick, Griffin Hindman, Kellis Lundford, Rajkumar, Seawright, Salidi, Stern, Warner, and probably a few more will be joining us shortly. So why don't I turn it to Assemblyman Roth, Ranker of Ways and Means, to introduce his members. I see also Billy Jones, Assemblyman Jones has joined us. Assemblyman Roth, why don't you introduce your colleagues?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody. We are currently joined by Assemblyman Friend, who is our Ranking Member on the Economic Development Committee, Assemblyman Derso, who is our Ranker on Science and Technology, as well as Assembly Members Morinello, Byrne, Burns, and Lamandis, and I believe our Ranker on Tourism, Jody Giglio, should be joining us momentarily as well.
Before I go back to the Senate, we have Assemblyman Rodriguez and Assemblyman Zabrowski was with us. I neglected to mention him. So now, back to the Senate.
Great. Well, thank you very much. And so again, our first testifier today will be the New York State Department of Economic Development and Empire State Development, Commissioner, President, and CEO. I guess you just couldn't decide which title to have, so you took them all. Eric Gertler, welcome. You have 10 minutes to testify, and there's a clock. Everyone all day should be aware of the clock. It's there for whoever's testifying. And if you're asking questions as a legislator, and the clock says you have three minutes, that means you have three minutes to ask and get the answers. So if you're, you know, if you decide you want to use all three minutes to give a speech, you're not actually going to get any answers from the person you were asking questions of. I'm sorry, Eric, now I'll handle the microphone.
No, not a problem. Thank you. Good morning. I hope you can hear me well. Great, thank you. Good morning, Chairwoman Krueger, Chairwoman Weinstein, and distinguished members of the Legislature. My name is Eric Gertler, and I serve as the Acting Commissioner of the New York State Department of Economic Development and as President and CEO Designate of Empire State Development. Thank you for the invitation to participate in today's hearing. I'm honored to appear before you virtually to discuss Governor Cuomo's fiscal year 2022 executive budget. One year ago, I had the privilege of attending this hearing in person. At the time, the economy of New York State was thriving. The state, under Governor Cuomo's leadership, was experiencing a decade of historic economic growth, setting all-time highs for jobs and wages, and achieving a record-low unemployment rate. Shortly after I testified, COVID-19 hit New York. None of us could have predicted the pandemic would so fundamentally alter our lives in the way it did, and still does today. No one could have predicted that the global economy would come to a standstill, that borders would be shut, and that industries would be closed to prevent the spread of a deadly pandemic. Each one of us has been personally affected. We may have lost a loved one. We may have family who are essential workers. Our children or grandchildren may have had school semesters canceled. Our constituents and friends may have lost jobs, and we may know stores and restaurants in our communities that were forced to close. The pandemic has also altered the day-to-day work at ESD. Throughout the agency's history, it has been focused on growing the economy. But when COVID-19 first struck, we were called upon to issue guidance that would impact large portions of the state's economy. It broke our heart. But curtailing economic activity to reduce and minimize the virus's spread was a critical component in the state's public health effort. To this end, before discussing the proposed budget, I'd like to share some of the ways that ESD assisted the state's public health efforts to combat the coronavirus. First, shutting down a state's economy was unprecedented, and ESD was tasked with developing essential business guidance and working directly with tens of thousands of New York State businesses to determine whether they could remain open and how to do so safely. Second, while the economy was shutting down, the state's need for critical medical supplies was skyrocketing. To address this need, Governor Cuomo issued a call to action for in-state manufacturers to retool or scale up their operations to produce COVID-related products like personal protective equipment. As a result, ESD has awarded more than $20 million in grants to 36 New York-based companies. Third, beginning in May, ESD was called upon to help implement the state's phased reopening plan. Beyond providing guidance on state policies to the business community, we helped launch the New York Forward Business Reopening Wizard, allowing businesses to instantly determine their reopening status, identify industry-specific health and safety guidance, and complete a business safety plan, generating more than 550,000 business searches. In addition to these and other ESD efforts to support the state's public health response, our team was equally focused on protecting and preserving the state's economy. Understanding that small businesses are 98% of all businesses in New York State and employ more than half of our private sector workforce, ESD launched several efforts to help support the survival and growth of small businesses across the state. We provided $7.5 million in grants to nonprofit organizations, helping small businesses access federal assistance. We launched the $100 million New York Forward Loan Fund. We provided $21 million of loan capital to community development financial institutions to provide paycheck protection programs, PPP loans. We launched Empire State Digital, a first-in-the-nation partnership to help small businesses and restaurants to grow their online presence. We partnered with Diageo North America for the raising the New York State Bar Restaurant Recovery Fund, awarding more than $3 million in grants. We announced the New York Forward Small Business Lease Assistance Partnership to help commercial landlords and tenants reach mutually beneficial lease workouts. Additionally, in the face of disparate race and gender-based COVID impacts on our workforce, the role of ESD's Division of Minority and Women's Business Development became even more important. In addition to providing MWBEs with as much COVID-specific support as possible, the Division hosted the annual MWBE Forum virtually this December with more than 2,200 registrants. While many at ESD pivoted to support the state's public health and economic responses, other members of our team continued to advance important existing projects. After decades of delays, Moynihan Train Hall was completed on time and on budget. We completed the topping off of the new Belmont Arena on Long Island and of Crete Semiconductor Fat Plant in the Mohawk Valley. We worked with Beam Suntory to relocate their global headquarters from Chicago to Madison Avenue in Manhattan and supported the expansion of in-state businesses like Plug Power, which will build a new giga factory in the Finger Lakes. Recent economic data reflects this progress, with private sector jobs growing in New York State every month from April to November, and the statewide unemployment rate improving faster than the U.S. in recent months. With the support of our legislative leaders, New York can and will rebuild. As outlined in the executive budget, building back better begins with funding additional rounds of the Regional Economic Development Council and downtown revitalization initiatives, flagship programs that will focus on rebuilding communities and supporting impacted industries. To help jumpstart New York's economy, the Governor has also proposed the new Pandemic Recovery and Restart Program, offering $130 million to help small businesses recover from the pandemic and bring back jobs to New York. New York State has already invested nearly $500 million to expand broadband internet access to 98% of the state, which proved crucial during the COVID-19 pandemic. To ensure affordable broadband options for all, the Governor has proposed a first-in-the-nation initiative requiring internet service providers to afford an affordable $15 per month high-speed internet plan to all low-income households. The COVID-19 pandemic has also highlighted how a lack of access to affordable childcare can disrupt families and force caregivers, primarily women, to choose between their career and providing daytime care for their child. To help support working parents, the executive budget strengthens childcare programs, enacts employer childcare credits, and improves childcare affordability. At ESD, the Excelsior Jobs Program would be enhanced to encourage recipients to invest in childcare facilities and provide childcare services to workers. The executive budget also advances the Empire Station complex by capitalizing on the momentum generated by the recently completed Moynihan Train Hall, furthering Penn Station's expansion and reconstruction, and extending the High Line Elevated Park to provide seamless access from Moynihan. To accelerate the tourism industry's recovery, the Governor has proposed a Rediscover New York campaign, while the New York Pops-Up Initiative will safely revive the struggling live entertainment sector. As a state, we have faced remarkable challenges this year, but together with our legislative partners, we will continue to build our economy back better, stronger, and more resilient using a strategy built on four pillars: creating vibrant communities, developing our workforce and small businesses, incentivizing the growth of export-oriented industries, and fostering innovation to create the jobs of the future. I thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak this morning. I am joined today by Kevin Yunis, our Chief Operating Officer, and Pravina Ragavan, ESD's EVP of Small Business Services, and we are happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our first questioner will be Chair of Economic Development Committee, Senator Anna Kaplan.
Thank you, Chairwoman Liz Krueger. Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Good morning.
I can tell you that I've been discussing this with a lot of my colleagues, and cats and co's is something that is on everyone's mind. And I can tell you also that I personally have visited some of these cats and co's and have seen firsthand the great work that they do. And of course, it's a partnership between the centers, private, and the public. The executive budget proposes to consolidate cats and co's into a single program. And co's will be made into cats for two years, and then all programs will compete for spots, and I think much reduced number of spots. Can you discuss that, and what is the rationale for eliminating some of these centers, since they really do a great job, and they also, not only they do a lot of good research and come up with different products that is made in New York, but also hire a lot of people throughout the state?
Thank you, Senator. As you know, no one has championed innovation more than Governor Cuomo, and innovation is an important part of the state economic development strategy. And these centers are obviously very important for innovation. And as you know, this was something that I also discussed with this, at this hearing last year. Here's how we are looking at it, and why we want to, in a sense, move the COEs into cats. You know, at a time when, you know, things are much more competitive, we want to make sure that we're aligning resources in the best possible way for these centers. We also want to make sure that we have predictability and stability with a 10-year designation as opposed to annual designations. I mean, we are living, working in a knowledge economy that makes things that much more difficult, that much more competitive. We want to make sure that these centers are aligned with the universities and with industry in a way that allows them to be the most effective possible. As you said, as part of this proposal, what we are intending to do is having the COEs be designated for two years before then they compete for these 10-year designations. And that is the reasoning behind the proposal. We want to right-size these centers. We want to align them with those interests of security, stability, giving them the ability to provide the most effective way to be the most successful in a very competitive economic environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So the cats and co's are by design meant to enhance each region, each region's cultural and technological competencies. So for example, Rochester has a cat in data science. Alcatlan has a CEO, Center of Excellence in ceramics. Albany has a Center of Excellence in weather. Given these different specialties, what metrics would be used to determine the winners?
Sure. The, you know, I'm also joined by Pravina Ragavan from Small Business. I'm going to call on her a second. But, you know, certainly the idea is to ensure that, you know, through the competitive process, we are making sure that we are awarding those designations to those that we think will ultimately be the most effective in providing the types of technologies and providing the right, you know, effectiveness, you know, in their specific areas. Pravina, can you please also add to that?
Sure. Good morning, Senator Kaplan. The similar process we have now for cats, which is a competitive RFP process, which allows us to look at all the proposals. The proposals are vetted exactly the same, which look at both technology, job growth, as well as private partnership. It would be no difference from what we do now for the existing cats, for the COEs, and we really do also includes, include experts as well into that analysis. So it's not just by state officials, it's also an expert panel that works with us to do the RFP and scoring. And we wouldn't move that process because it's been working very well with our cats. We would just be enveloping the COEs into the similar process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pravina.
And the centers are currently split between public and private schools. Would that split be maintained under the new program?
So, you know, again, on this, you know, I'm going to have Pravina also, you know, add to, elaborate on that.
Yeah, the, we would keep the same type of split to ensure that we have also regional penetration as well as different universities. And it's important to ensure that these universities also get that private support because that's what makes these programs different from programs across the country.
I agree, and I think we should really keep all of them because I think they all do great work.
Yep.
And I have more questions, but I would also like to go now, address the MWBE. I know that we've seen a lot of MWBEs have been affected by this pandemic and have really been effective, and we have the program to help a lot of minority and woman-owned businesses. I want to know why, at this point, we're trying to take, give them a cut where they actually, this is one program that really could use more funding, not getting them the cut that they are getting right now. Could you address that a little bit more?
Of course. You know, again, as far as our overall economic development strategy and is, you know, championed by the Governor, we want to make sure that everybody can participate in our New York State economy. And, you know, if anything, if we look at our results, we've had really successful results in terms of our MWBE program. On a high level, just to give you some of the high-level data, you know, we've had a 29.5% participation rate. We've had over $3 billion in contracts. These are nation-leading numbers. We also, in a sense, were a victim of our own success. We have, you know, many MWBE firms, 1,400 per year, that are looking to apply, and we have actually put in, you know, additional ways to speed up that process. We've streamlined the application. We've added staffing resources, you know, to that to make sure to make that easier and faster. And, you know, we think that the funding that we have right now, you know, is sufficient to continue the successes that we've had. I might also note that we brought on a very critical hire for our MWBE Division, a new Executive Director has joined. And we will continue to focus and improve and ensure that MWBEs who have really, you know, faced disproportionate impacts from this COVID will be the primary focus and will continue to do all that we can for MWBE firms.
Thank you. That is definitely on everyone's mind in our conference, and we want to make sure that we help those minority and woman-owned businesses, small businesses that have been impacted, get the help that they need. I have one other question with respect to MWBE. What is the status of rules and regulations for personal net worth amended as the result of Chapter 96 in 2019? If you remember, for some of industries, they needed a higher net worth possibly to be able to do what they were doing. Can you address that?
Correct. So on a high level, as you know, in that program, we need to have a certain level of net worth in order for, in a sense, companies to graduate, you know, out of that program. You know, my understanding is that we recently raised, you know, that to $15 million. We're now ongoing, engaging a vendor to conduct a study, and, you know, it's obviously an important area that we need to continue to focus on because we want to make sure that we have as many MWBEs being able to participate in the program.
Thank you. I see my time is up, and thank you again for answering my questions.
Thank you so much.
So we are going to go to Assemblyman Bronson, the Chair of the Assembly Economic Development Committee, for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for being here today. I look forward to working with you in my new capacity as Chair of the Economic Development Committee. Yeah, I'm going to echo the sentiments of the Senator in connection with the Centers for Advanced Technology and the Centers of Excellence. These programs have proven, have been proven to be job creators. They provide an educational service to our students, and they're located in colleges and university campuses across the state, as was noted, private and public. And, you know, and they've done so, continue to provide a wonderful service while enduring cuts here and there over the years. So I think we should not be tinkering with those programs right now, especially in the midst of COVID-19. So not a question there, but a statement of where I think we should be as we go through budget negotiations. I really want to hone in, though, on the past year. And you know, to contain the spread of COVID-19 and to protect the lives of New Yorkers, many measures have been implemented and continue in 2021, albeit with adjustments, that have really devastated the state's economy and have had a real impact on our families throughout the state. Unemployment records through the roof, actually. Businesses have endured state-mandated shutdowns. They have had their capacity and operational restrictions given on them, costs associated with COVID-19. All of this has really impacted the economy, and I get it, because we wanted to protect and keep our families healthy. What I really want to know is, in the budget as proposed by the Governor in our area, what can you identify as the key components that will help us-- that will help us retain and create jobs, will meet the needs of our families from an employment standpoint, and mend our economy and particularly in an inclusive way, to ensure communities of color and other marginalized individuals can fully participate in the economic recovery? So, you know, overall, what's the strategy that is in the executive's budget?
So, you know, first of all, let me, you know, echo what you said. It, it has been a, it has been a very challenging year. We know that many individuals, employees, businesses have been affected. I have talked to many, you know, businesses, employees, presidents, workers, and it's been tough, it's been tough everywhere. And, and so, you know, we think that we have a budget that, that helps New York State continue in its, in its recovery and help to rebuild this economy. If we go back to before COVID started, and, and in fact, we go back to the month before COVID, we were seeing an economy that was showing record private unemployment and record unemployment. So, you know, this is an economy that has been built up under, under the governor to, to a point of being incredibly successful prior to, to COVID. You know, now, there's a number of different focuses that we, we need to have. First of all, we need to focus on small businesses. Small businesses, you know, you know, represent the backbone of, of our economy. 98% of businesses are small businesses. And I can assure you that we have a number of programs to help with, with small businesses. I, I identified a number of those during my, my testimony. You know, we have used, you know, for example, we created a New York Loan Fund that has been helping not just small businesses, but MWBE firms, which are, which are also critically, you know, critically important. Who've also received a disparate impact from, from COVID. And many of those small business programs, they will, you know, they will continue. We talked about the MWBE efforts that we're making, and we're going to continue to focus on MWBEs. We're going to continue to focus on, on businesses that have not been able to get the same access to capital, that have not been able to get the same resources. Those are important components of, of our strategy. I'd also like to cite the Governor's Infrastructure Program, largest infrastructure program in the country, over $300 billion. We've seen the success of that infrastructure program with the building of bridges, airports, Moynihan Train Hall, which was completed on January 1st of this year and opened to the public. All of those projects add thousands of, of construction jobs, providing new opportunities to, you know, to, to, to workers. We're also going to continue to ensure that, you know, that we see as much money from the federal government. You know, as, as the Governor has said at many of his press conferences, we were ground zero. We were the epicenter of COVID. And we expect fair funding for our budget. That as well, to help the state government put money into important institutions throughout the state. And then, and then lastly, and, and I could obviously continue and go on and on, but I think, you know, the return in funding of our Regional Economic Development Councils, we have had a very successful economic program whereby we've seen a bottoms-up approach from the regions throughout, you know, throughout the, the state. I mean, just one, one statistic, there's a case where, over the last, you know, 10 years or so, we've invested about $7 billion, over 8,000 projects, and seen a return of $18 billion. That, that is money well-spent. Those are investments well-spent. And we think with, with all of those programs and adhering to ESD's, you know, mission and our four points mission of workforce development, livable communities, incentivizing export industries, and investing innovation, that is the formula for making sure that we're going to see a return to the economy that we had before COVID.
So, thank you for that response. You know, I'd like to hone in a little bit, though. You, you mentioned 98% of our, our businesses are, are small businesses. I'm not sure exactly what you'll define as small businesses. I'll, I'll, I'll use 100 or less employees. But the, you know, the Regional Economic Development Councils, which I'm, I'm supportive of, you know, but they leave out small businesses. I mean, they, they, you know, small businesses aren't at the table, for the most part. They're not included in the decision-making processes, generally speaking. And, and frankly, I'm, I'm not sure if relying on that program and, and some of the historical programs are really going to get to the need for a full recovery of small businesses. How, how do you see REDC and, and, you know, downtown, downtown utilization and some of the other programs? How do you see them actually having a direct impact on these small businesses?
Right. So, you know, two, two parts to your question. I, I will come back to, on, on the REDC very quickly because if I understood correctly, you also asked about other programs. And, you know, we're also putting forward a $130 million pandemic recovery program that, you know, $50 million for restaurants, $50 million for small businesses, and $30 million for musical and theatrical tax credits. You know, those also are a means by which we will continue to help the, the economy recover. There's money coming from the federal government as well. You know, in terms of, you know, the REDCs, you know, as we, and, and through those programs, investing in the, you know, regional, regional projects, those are with those who are on the ground, who are identifying, you know, the best, most effective projects. And businesses, small businesses, help in any number of, of ways. Even if it's focused on a much larger project, there are construction jobs. There are, you know, contracts related to that. There's investments in small businesses as well. There's any number of ways that allow us to rely on these, on, on, on these REDCs who are focusing on, you know, what, what they feel is best for, for their regions. Of cour-, you know, and, and that's why the success of it as, as a bottoms-up economic development strategy.
Yeah, I, I, I respect that. I, I do think, though, we have to acknowledge that a lot of the small businesses in our communities throughout these regions aren't, aren't fully participating in that process, and we need to correct that. So thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Before we go to the Senate, I just wanted to acknowledge we're joined by Assemblymembers Gallagher, Barron, and Fahy. So now to the Senate.
Thank you very much. I'm looking quickly. I think we've been joined by Senator Martucci and Senator Sanders. I think I mentioned him earlier. If there are other senators here, you know, let me know, and I'll introduce you a little later. Our next test questioner is the Chair of Internet and Technology, Diane Savino.
Thank you, Senator Kruger. Good morning, Commissioner. Nice to see you.
Good morning.
I also want to echo the comments made by Senator Kaplan and Chair Bronson with respect to the CATs and the Co's. I love that. Sounds great, CATs and Co's. I want to talk a bit about the economy. As you know, we, we watched it shut down, literally, during the pandemic. No one ever thought we'd see New York City, let alone New York State, come to a grinding halt. But we did. It was necessary to achieve what we had to do, which was reduce the spread, getting people to work from home, getting children to remote learning. And none of it would have been possible had it not been for the internet. We wouldn't have been able to do anything. Businesses literally would have come to a grinding halt. But we were able to shift people to remote learning, remote work because of the internet, and thank God for that. But one of the things we're still failing at across the state is broadband, broadband access. You know, the FCC, a couple of years ago, awarded $20 billion to fully fund broadband across rural regions. As you know, originally, New York did not, was not eligible for that because we had faulty data analysis that said that we had 98% broadband coverage across the state, when we really didn't. I know the Governor is proposing in his budget that there will be a $15 a month broadband service applied. By the way, that already exists, in case people don't know that. The large internet service providers already provide a discounted rate for people. People don't seem to know that. But so, but I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, what can we do to actually achieve 100% broadband across the state, including in the rural regions, because we're failing at that? And until we achieve that, we're really not going to be able to, you know, close that gap for so many people.
So, you know, thank, thank, thank you for that. You know, let me, let me say at the onset that, as you rightfully pointed out, when we had to close down this economy to deal with a public health crisis, that was truly heartbreaking. You know, we're a, we're an agency focused on job growth. We're an agency focused on business attraction. We're an agency focused on infrastructure building, helping provide increased skills to individuals. So I, I, I can tell you, both as an agency and personally, and someone who, you know, has been an entrepreneur, that closing down the economy and not letting these businesses thrive has been, was, was, was very difficult. And, and we know that many have, have, have struggled over, over the last year. You know, broadband, as, as you rightfully point out, is, is critical. It's even more critical today. That has been the way by which people have had to, you know, engage at school. It's been a way that people have had to work. And as we're learning, it's a way that we're now doing some of our public, public hearings. The, the, the positive part and the fortunate part for New Yorkers is that the Governor started to look and look at initiatives to expand our broadband access about four, four to five years ago with creating the broadband office, which is here at ESD. And with, you know, with that, was really way ahead of the curve and, you know, enabled New Yorkers to have much better access than, you know, than many other parts of, of, of this country, if not all, all parts of the country. And, you know, at a time of crisis, when you have so many people on the same network, obviously, there, there can be, be some issues. But, but let me, let me respond to, to, to your numbers. At, at present, we have a commitment to 99.9% availability of broadband throughout the state. You know, that represents, of that, 99% of that is critical fiber, you know, in, in, infrastructure. We have committed, we, we, we have completed 98% of, of the work to date in terms of our, our broadband access. And, you know, even in places where, in, in, in rural areas, where it's been hard to reach, or, you know, parties, third parties have not wanted to provide access, we have done two things. We have ensured that there's satellite access, so at least there's 25 megabits per second access to broadband. And we've also worked with the federal government to get $100 million to deploy for rural, rural access. And then, and then lastly, you know, you're, you're correct. We, we are putting forward a program for $15 a month to low-income families. Everybody should have access. You know, based on our numbers, we think now, and based on the efforts of our, of, of our team, we, we really have, you know, gotten to the point where it's not so much about access and availability more. It's now about affordability. And we need to make sure that there's not the continuing divide. And that's why we want to make sure that low-income families can also access broadband.
Well, I, I think we all agree with that. But if you would, if you would speak to Altice, too, which is Optimum, if you'd speak to Spectrum and Verizon, they will tell you they have a low-income option. For some reason or other, there's not enough widespread information about it. And many, what we found during the pandemic is many people were getting access to the internet through their phones, through their phone carriers. And, and so they didn't think that they needed to purchase additional coverage. But that's a, that's a discussion for a different day. I want to shift to a different topic in the few minutes I've left with respect to the hospitality industry. I'm, you know, as we all know, that the restaurant and hospitality industry has been crippled by this pandemic, and many of them are never going to recover. There are many restaurants that will never come back. And I know that you've spoken about a, you know, a loan program and a, and a, what is it, a $50 million loan program? Many of the restaurants, they, they don't need more loans. What they need are grants. So what can we do to provide direct relief to restaurants? I have a piece of legislation that I've introduced that would create a grant program funded through a fee placed upon the commercial, the commercial general liability coverage carriers, who, quite frankly, have not paid out a single claim of business interruption insurance on any of these restaurants. We also are very concerned about the excessive fines that have been placed on many of the restaurants by the state liquor authority. So with the one hand, the government will give a grant, and with the other hand, they'll issue a fine. So what can we do to help these restaurants get back up on their feet? And also our seasonal industries? You know, I represent Coney Island. The Governor has only just last week announced that Coney Island will be able to reopen on April 9th. It has been closed for 19 months. And they could not really qualify for some of the federal assistance because of the seasonal nature of their workforce. They didn't qualify for the full PPP money. So what can we do to help these types of industries that have really been so devastatingly affected by the pandemic?
Right. Well, you know, let me first echo your, your, your comment. We, we have seen, you know, many small businesses, certainly these restaurants, that have absolutely struggled over the, the past year. And, you know, our heart goes out to these businesses, to the workers. And, you know, as you know, the restaurants are not just places of work. They also add to the culture and the life and the diversity of, of, of what we offer in New York State and what makes New York State so special. So, so you're right. We do need to help restaurants get back to work. And we, we have a number of different programs. You know, first of all, I, I, I might add, before discussing one of the programs, is that the Governor has announced over the last number of weeks, you know, the reopening of, of restaurants, you know, indoor dining, some of the amusement parks now are starting to open still at limited capacity because we still need to balance what is a public health crisis with an economic, you know, recovery. So one, one program which we are proposing is what we call a Restaurant Return to Work Tax Credit. And this is focused on those restaurants that faced additional restrictions during the COVID crisis. These are the restaurants in New York City that were closed down, or those in orange or, or red zones. And in this case, these are tax credits so that we can help these restaurants bring their workers back. There's a, there's a formula that can be used that shows the difference between their low point and when they're hiring people. But essentially, what it is, is that it's a $5,000 credit per employee, up to 10, so up to $50,000 for each of these restaurants. There's a way to fast-track that because we do want to get these restaurants, you know, back on, on, online. You know, it's, it, it, it really is, you know, it really is critical. And, look, I also hope that, you know, as the weather gets better, you know, people will also go to these restaurants as the vaccines increase and people maintain social distances. They can do so in a safe way because we still do have a public health crisis ongoing.
Thank you. Perfect timing.
Thank you. Perfect timing, indeed. Assembly.
Let's, Assemblyman Starby, do you have a question? So we'll go to Assemblyman Starby for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Helene. Good morning, Commissioner. How you doing?
Good morning, sir. How are you this morning?
Okay. As Chair of the Small Business Committee, I really appreciate your previous statement that New York really needs to focus on small business. And just a couple of comments. My previous Chair of Economic Development, Harry, had asked some questions about the REDC. And I asked some of those questions last year, and I was told that 70% of loans and grants and things go to small businesses. I'm not real sure what that, how you categorize those small businesses because I know most of the businesses in central New York that got those kinds of grants, they're companies usually called mid-sized companies. You know, there's hundreds of employees, et cetera, that, that are there. So, you know, my question about that, or my- So, uh, you know, my question about that or my comment is, I know the people who make up the R A D C, uh, you know, committees. And they're usually captains of industry. There's a few labor representatives, um, because there's construction involved and stuff like that. But if you could tell me, how many, um, members of our E D C commissions are successful coffee shop owners or, um, daycare providers or people like that that may have more insight into real small businesses? And how, um, we can help them and what projects would make them more successful?
Sure. Sure, and I'm, um, I'm, I'm going to, um, give you some context. Then I'm going to have, um, our Chief Operating Officer, Kevin Yunus, um, add to that. But, uh, you know, as you, as you point out, um, and I've said before, I don't want to spend, you know, a lot of time. Small businesses are absolutely critical. We know that over fifty percent of people, uh, workers in New York work in, in small businesses. So it is a, uh, it is a critical part of, of, uh, our economic development strategy. And, um, uh, you know, and, and with the R A D Cs, I've met with a lot of the R A D Cs. You have individuals there that work in all sorts of, of different businesses with different focus. Uh, you know, a care for, you know, manufacturing, uh, small businesses. You will see all of those individuals, uh, around the state, um, um, in the different R A D Cs. But, um, perhaps Kevin Yunus, um, our Chief Operating Officer, can add more dimension to that, please.
Sure.
Hey, thanks, Eric. Apologies, Assemblyman, I ran down the hall real quick, so I missed half your question.
The, the question was, um, it, you know, as far as the makeups of the R A D C, you know, committees and commissions, how, how many, like I said, how many coffee shop owners are, are members of those boards? How many daycare center owners are members of those boards? How many of those types of business people who have more insight into the really small business community?
Sure. You know, the, I think the, the place where we see that participation is, uh, there's a ton of subcommittees, right? So we have a, each region typically has a childcare subcommittee. They might have a, uh, Main Street Subcommittee. So there's, uh, I think you will see those guys on the actual R A D Cs. But then you will see them a lot more heavily in the, in the subcommittees, which really inform the work of the R A D C. So, you know, if we're talking about childcare, we look to the Finger Lakes or the Central New York, uh, childcare Subcommittee. They meet, they, they talk to folks and they get recommendations. So I think there's a, there's a good representation.
Okay, okay, thanks. You know, Commissioner, uh, we talked about broadband and there's been this ongoing dispute. You know, the governor saying ninety eight percent have access to broad, you know, high speed broadband and everybody else says doesn't. Last year, uh, former Assemblyman Sean Ryan had, uh, a bill that set out to form a commission and do a mapping of high speed broadband. So we know where it is and how much it is and, and things like that. I think it was a six, six, seven, nine. This year, we're going to put it in the budget. And the reason and the message, of course, for the veto was that it was a fiscal, had fiscal implications and should be in the budget. This year, it is going to be in our one house budget again. I'm sure it'll be in the Senate one house budget also. Is there any reason that it won't end up in the budget? And any reason why we don't want to know exactly, uh, who has high speed broadband and who doesn't and where it is?
Um, you, you know, absolutely no reason not to. We, um, in terms of our, uh, absolutely no reason not to know all the, all of the data. Our, uh, our programs have always used the best available data to ensure that, uh, we are, uh, following up and implementing what, what we say we're going to do to make sure that we have the right, um, uh, you know, the, the, the right access and available for, availability for, um, for, for New Yorkers. We work with, um, we work with third parties to make sure that we're, um, reaching, you know, every possible place that, um, you know, that, uh, that, that we can. And, you know, in, in, in large, in large ways, which I said this earlier, it's now less about sort of availability, it's now about affordability. But, um, the, the reason why, um, uh, we feel that, um, uh, or, or let me put it in another way, Congress passed what was the Broadband Data Act in 2020. That will provide the data that's needed, um, and provide, uh, and generate granular broadband data so that we can have it. So it seemed that, um, that that would be, um, in a sense duplicating efforts when we be, um, uh, when, when the federal, uh, uh, when, when Congress, um, has instructed the FCC to provide that. I, I mean, there is no dispute that we want to make sure that we have the best possible data. We believe we do use the best possible data. And, uh, you know, where there's no dispute in terms of making sure that we have the most complete broadband, uh, availability.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about workforce, I'll call it redevelopment. It, it's pretty well known that probably a third or more of the restaurants and hospitality businesses will never reopen. They've closed permanently. So there are thousands, tens of thousands of people who work in those businesses. A lot of them are relatively low skilled people. But there are lots of jobs that are going to be around in, in New York State. You know, I know that there were estimates, there were ninety thousand unfilled jobs in, in New York State, uh, over the past year or so. So I'm just wondering, what is the administration's, uh, plan to retrain these workers to fit into the jobs that will be available?
Um, you know, let me, let, let me say, first of all, I, I, I agree with you. You, you know, even beyond having the pandemic, we're living through, uh, an economy where we're seeing a lot of changes. It's becoming a more and more knowledge economy. We want to make sure that, um, you know, we have the right, uh, workforce. That's only been exacerbated by COVID. That has, uh, you know, made sure that we've got to even focus even more on workforce development. Disparate effect of COVID on many of those who are unskilled and in, uh, low income, uh, low income areas. So, um, so critically important issue. The governor, uh, put forward in 2019, a large workforce development initiative. We've already seen hundreds of, of, uh, projects, uh, supporting training and development and employment, you know, coming out of that. Workforce is, um, and the focus on workforce goes across, um, uh, many, uh, many agencies. It's, uh, it's an effort that is, uh, multi-agency. Go back to your point on the R A D Cs. The R A D Cs also focus on, on, um, uh, workforce development. And then, and then lastly, um, you know, E S D, my agency, is on many of the workforce committees. We have also, um, put forward and expanded, um, the, uh, the E T I P, uh, program, to provide, uh, training that, um, that's focused to more sectors. We're providing more, uh, more marketing, um, uh, you know, more marketing dollars. But, but that is exactly what you're talking about. We are looking to, uh, you know, upskill people, uh, train people who, um, uh, don't have the skills and also provide more internship programs, uh, which is, um, uh, you know, which is, uh, which is critical. And I'm sorry, I, I, I actually, um, used, I, I, I tried not to use acronyms. But, you know, E T I P is the Employee Training Incentive Program.
Yeah. And let me just state that I, I think community colleges will have, play a pretty big role in a lot of these retrainings. And I noticed the governor is, you know, there's a cut to community colleges. So I just hope he'd reconsider that because it's going to be an important piece in, in getting people upskilled. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, over to the Senate.
Thank you very much. Our next questioner is Senator John Lu.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome, Commissioner Gertler, once again. Last year, we congratulated you. Not sure how you feel now, but, uh, anyway. As you can tell, many of my colleagues, uh, in both houses are very concerned about our small businesses. And in fact, we always, everybody says, including the governor, says that small businesses are the fabric or the engine behind our entire state's economy. And yet, uh, your testimony highlighting the assistance for small businesses during the pandemic, our numbers are just seen paltry compared to some of the economic development deals that have been given in recent years to major corporations. So my question for you is, um, what's, what's going on with the, the job creation targets for all of those deals? Have they been put on pause this past year? Or is, uh, is your agency still holding those corporations accountable?
So a, a, a number, number of different, um, um, points there to, to, to address. I think, you know, first of all, we're proud of the work that we've done, uh, for small business. We've made sure during a very difficult year that we've, um, increased, uh, capital to these small businesses in many different ways. We've had, uh, a number of different programs. I've talked about them already.
Yes, you have, so you don't have to talk about them again, you know.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to get in, you know, um, uh, and, and I know that you're referring to, you know, many of the deals we have particularly, you know, up, upstate. I can tell you that, um, uh, you know, certainly prior to, to COVID, all of those deals were on track to meet their, meet their numbers. You know, this year, we did face, um, you know, pandemic that, uh, uh, created a lot of hardship for these businesses. What we did do is businesses that, um, were facing milestones, they could apply for a one year administrative relief on their milestones, on their job numbers, on their loans.
So they could get a one year pause?
It's a one year pause. And, you, you know, it really was, um, and that was something that was available to all of our, all of our grantees.
So all of like, for example, if somebody had an April deadline, then April twenty twenty deadline, it would have been extended to April twenty twenty one. And your agency.
Yes, sir. It would have been, it would have been extended by, by one year. We did that across, across the board.
All right. And what about the, that database that, uh, a half a million dollars was allocated towards for development? The database of all the economic deals in New York State?
Sure. No, no, uh, we, we are, we are moving forward on, on, on that. And look, as, as, um, as, as you know, we're, as, as an agency, we've also been, um, uh, you know, stretched. We've, we've, we've had a team that's worked very hard. You know, at times we've worked remote.
No timeframe on when that, that database.
No, I'm, I'm, no, sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a timeframe because, um, I, that, that will be coming out, uh, coming out very soon. And I can tell you, as, 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 as you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking to, to, to make an excuse. Something, you know, often with a technology system, there's the, you know, it takes a little bit longer.
It's very soon include a time in twenty twenty one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I would say it's a matter of weeks.
A matter of weeks, excellent. All right, well.
We, we, we are, you know, there are.
For you, what are you gonna do?
No more questions, John, you're past the clock, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Assembly.
We go to Assemblyman Otis, the Chair of our Science and Tech Committee, ten minutes.
Commissioner, welcome. And I think one of the things that, um, difficult things in the last year that you did not mention in your testimony is the work that the folks at E S D had to do with the Department of Health and, and, uh, other agencies in understanding how the pandemic hit individual businesses. And there's a lot of micro work that your folks had to get into to try and, and deal with a very challenging situation. So I just want to recognize, uh, that was a new, a new task for, for E S D, uh, a lot of time put into that.
Thank you.
I'd like to go first to small business issues that you're already hearing, um, some about. We have a lot of small businesses in the, businesses in the state who had, uh, either very temporary or longer term closures because of the pandemic and now are struggling to reopen. They have back rent, they haven't been able to pay, uh, maybe insurance costs, mortgages, situations like that. And so I, I think the request that I would make and would appreciate some comment on is the need for us to, especially with federal dollars coming in, find some models that provide really relief to these businesses that right now are, um, sitting on the ledge of being able to fully reopen and survive or going under. And, uh, and I use the word relief because they may need some money just to pay the, some of that back rent or help negotiate. And I know E S D has been helpful on tools for negotiation. But for them to be able to stay open, and so, uh, as one of the previous questioners indicated, loans aren't always, uh, the ticket. I think the tax credit is helpful. But, uh, what can we do in terms of looking at actual, um, grants to very small businesses? And I note in today's, uh, news, the Biden administration for the PPP program has given a higher priority to businesses who have twenty or fewer employees. And so we should probably be pivoting and trying to create some metrics to identifying these really small, whether they be restaurants, retailers, uh, non-for-profits that are trying to survive and need help. Any additional comments on, on this sort of unique problem?
Well, um, you, you know, as, as, as I said before, we've, we've seen, uh, so many businesses that have, uh, faced unprecedented challenges in the last year. And, uh, let's also, um, and, and we, we, we want to do as much as we can and we intend to do as much as we can. We also need to face the reality of dealing with, uh, you know, the fiscal constraints of, of, uh, you know, the current, the current times. But, um, uh, I, I would, I would respond by a number of different ways. First of all, um, we are working to ensure that we're getting as much federal funding, um, as, as we can. Just to, to, to give you one example, we used seven point five million dollars, uh, to help nonprofits get federal assistance for our small businesses. That turned out to be, uh, roughly, uh, helping sixty four thousand small businesses throughout the state and getting access to about three hundred and eighty million dollars. So those are, uh, those are significant numbers. We also have the Recovery Program whereby we are looking to, uh, as, as I already talked about, the fifty million dollars to, to restaurants, but it's also fifty million dollars, um, to small businesses that have been in those sectors that have been particularly hard hit, like the arts, accommodations, uh, and entertainment. Um, and that's a means by which we're providing tax credits to help, um, uh, to help those businesses, uh, return. Those are, uh, five thousand dollars for up to ten, uh, employees. So it's a total of fifty thousand. That's a fifty million dollar program. And then, um, uh, you know, I will just say that our small business division is focused relentlessly on all of the different ways that we look to support, um, small businesses, particularly those that, and, 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 and you're right, that, that need that capital. We created the New York Forward Loan Fund to provide low interest loans. And, uh, you know, we're proud that in that fund, about sixty five percent of those that are taking those funds are M W B E firms. So we're really trying to make sure that those that have not been able to access capital will be able to, uh, to access capital. I hope that answers your question. There are just so many different things that we're looking to do to help these struggling small businesses.
That is great. And I just think we need, we need to redouble that focus and find, find some new tools would be great. To the internet deployment issue, and I, I would just share what I'm hearing, um, from, uh, some of my upstate colleagues in more rural areas, but even, even folks in urban areas where there are dead zones and situations in New York City where just specific apartment complexes, because there may be not, uh, there, there may be, uh, the, the view of the telecom companies is there are not a lot of people there, they're going to spend money on higher level services. The deployment gaps in this state are primarily geared around where telecom companies don't want to invest in the infrastructure because they don't think they're going to get the money back from, uh, customers who are buying additional services. So, uh, some of this is a public service commission issue, some of the broader issue in terms of what we're going to require of, of them. But where we have gaps, you can map them or not map them, but everyone knows the gaps are where the companies don't want to spend the money. And to the extent that you're communicating with some of those companies as well, we need to provide incentives or, or direction, um, and then we can fill, fill those gaps. And, uh, this is, uh, apart from the good efforts that the administration has been pursuing in the last few years to expand broadband. But that's really where the gaps continue to be. And even with those incentives, the. And even with those incentives, the companies just don't want to go where they don't want to go.
Right. Well, I want to give you, you know, one example where I think, you know, colleagues in my agency with our Washington office worked relentlessly to get $100 million in awards from the FCC's Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. Initially, we were ruled categorically ineligible through their efforts. They went back to the FCC, got $100 million. That money will be used to help to ensure that we are expanding internet access and service to any other areas in rural parts of New York that need, you know, that access. As I said, you know, our program, we've received at this point 99.9% commitment. We're at 98% right now. You know, we certainly want to make sure that there is accessibility, availability for all. But, you know, we believe on those numbers, it's no longer a question of access and availability. It's a question of affordability. We need to make sure that low-income families also have access. Be that as it may, we are continuing to make sure that, you know, those have the highest possible speeds on their broadband. And, you know, and we'll continue to work on, you know, any of the gaps that we see. We have third-party, you know, validators and providers that help us make sure. But suffice it to say that, you know, broadband, and this has been, you know, reinforced during COVID, is absolutely a critical utility for workers, for students, for families in this age.
Thank you for that. And I'd also like to circle back to the arts again. And a special need to focus on the needs of these very small arts organizations around the state of the, whether they be for-profit or not-for-profit, these are the ones that are really going to be going under. And we do not want to lose them. They are also big job creators. They are a part of the economic life of our state. And so as you, I know we'll be hearing from Council of the Arts later, but I think we have to find ways to view those organizations. They are small businesses also, having some relief and keep them going. And with that, I will yield back the last 45 seconds of my time unless you have additional comments about the arts. But thank you for that, all that ESD does. And we are looking forward to a new round from the Regional Economic Development Councils. That will be very helpful.
Thank you. I will just add very quickly that we do need to support employment for artists throughout the state. And we also recognize the importance on a cultural level and the diversity that it adds to New York State. That's one of the reasons, the diversity, you know, in the arts that makes New York State so special. So I agree, we need to help these people get back to work.
Thank you. Before we go to the Senate, I neglected to mention that we were joined by Assemblymembers Gallahan and Gandolfo a while ago. Now we go to the Senate.
Thank you very much. And we've been joined by Senator Pam Palme. And our next questioner is Senator James Sanders from Queens.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning, sir.
Since time is not my friend, I'm going to go straight to questions. The New York Federal Reserve spoke of a 40% loss in black businesses as of August. And by now, I would argue that there's at least a 60% loss and growing. Has anyone done a study of the impact of waiving the MWBE requirement during the COVID crisis, sir?
So, look, first of all, let me share with you that, you know, we understand the difficulty for many small businesses. And particularly, the MWBE firms have been severely impacted during COVID. So, you know, what we've done is a number of different things to improve the process so that we can ensure that more MWBEs can be part of our program.
My question, sir, I was wondering, have we looked at what the impact of waiving the requirement for MWBEs had been? I'm the father of MWBEs, sir, I know it well.
Okay, sir. You know, I'm not sure what requirements would be waived. You know, we need to make sure that it withstands the, you know, constitutional challenges. But perhaps, you know, Kevin Yunus can add to, you know, to that.
Sure. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Senator. It is, you're referring to the requirements that the businesses be owned or controlled by Ms. and Ws?
No, the requirement, in the time of emergency, the requirement for 30% was waived. Let me go from there to something that perhaps you guys do have. The CARES Act allowed for grants to be given to small businesses. Why didn't New York State use this better? In fact, why didn't it use GoForGrants to small businesses?
You know, I'm going to have, you know, Pravina, who runs our, you know, small business. I would just say that I think that that is a, you know, question that, I would say that our Department of Budget would be, you know, more in a position to, you know, to answer that. But, and we certainly did a lot.
Gentlemen, I'm not trying to, my time is not my friend. Can I meet with your new executive director and perhaps, I'm not trying to embarrass you?
Of course. Of course. We're happy to do that.
Can we set this up? I'm Senator James Sanders Jr. I'd like to meet with the new executive, even if we do it under, what is this, Zoom?
We would be, we'd be happy to arrange for that, sir.
I thank you. And I thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
To the Assembly.
Yes, we go Assemblyman Ra, ranker on Ways and Names.
Thank you, Chairs. Commissioner, good morning. Good to see you again. And I'll certainly join my colleagues who thanked you and your staff who were intimately involved in trying to get information out to our businesses throughout this pandemic and reopening and guidance and all of that. So thank you for that. I just wanted to circle back to the CAT and COEs. In particular regarding, you know, stakeholders and companies that work with those entities. I know there was a proposal, not exactly the same as this, but there was a proposal last year to kind of merge the two. I know a lot of those stakeholder organizations express opposition to that. And I believe are doing so again this year. I'm just wondering what kind of outreach there has been in the interim time between last year's budget when that proposal to consolidate this program was made and this current proposal? And whether there, you know, those companies' views on working within these entities have been taken into account in this year's proposal?
Sure. You know, I think it's fair that I have, you know, Pravina Ragavan, who runs our small business and does most of those communications with our centers. Pravina, can you please join?
Sure. Thank you very much, Eric. Assemblymen, we've been actually working with both the stakeholders and the universities. We have been doing outreach with them. Part of this proposal is actually just to ensure that the CATs and COEs can go through that competitive process. And also, as Eric has mentioned before, increase the designation for one year from the COEs to 10. And we continue to keep the same principles that are both in the CATs and COEs, which is working with the private sector. And we have been working with them to, you know, ensure they understand the principles. One of the things coming back from last year's hearing was it wasn't a long time to do the switch over, which is why we've included two years to make sure they're automatically designated and then put into the system that we do with the CATs normally. So we've been working on that.
Well, thank you. I join my colleagues with regard to my concerns. These programs have been great about leveraging private investment. So we want to make sure that we're working with those stakeholders, all of those companies that are working with the universities and make sure that we continue to have that success from an economic development standpoint. I want to move over to a different issue, which there's the funding that's included for the economic development initiatives. I know in the past, there's been funding allocated for things like advertising for, you know, different programs like Startup New York. And I'm just wondering if you could give me any idea in terms of how that funding was utilized last year? And if there's perhaps an opportunity to maybe repurpose or open up some of that funding to, you know, regional or local, you know, chambers of commerce or regional, you know, groups, pro-business groups to just promote the importance of, you know, shopping locally and helping get our local small businesses up and running and thriving again?
So, you know, let me, you know, let me say, and I'll also have Kevin Yunus respond. But, you know, in the past year, we've seen, obviously, tourism be greatly affected by COVID. You know, we had extraordinary numbers of visitors visiting New York prior to COVID. I'm sure, you know, you know the numbers, north of 260 million people annually and incredible, you know, over $100 billion in economic impact. But, and we know that for so many reasons, those industries, many of the industries within tourism have been closed down and, you know, and cut back. We did a number of things in the past year to help create some awareness. We did virtual, you know, virtual tours at some of our high destinations. And I think all of this, and knowing that tourism is so critical to New York is why the governor has announced that we would do a rediscovered New York Tourism Marketing Initiative to help to get the tourism, those tourism numbers back. There are, you know, it, you know, suffice it to say, it's such a critical, you know, industry and adds so much to not just economically, but to the spirit of the state. Kevin, perhaps you can add to some of the other initiatives? I think we were also asked about what we did last year.
Yeah, thanks, Assemblyman. Quickly to your question about what we did with the funding, the EDI funding. Frankly, we didn't use a lot of it, given the limitations around travel and what have you. But this year, we have included once again the Market New York funding. And, you know, that's a $15 million fund that is both available for capital investments and marketing, local marketing. So that goes through the regional council process. And that's, that's once again available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Senate? Yes.
Senator Kruger, you're on mute.
Thank you. I think it helps when I unmute, doesn't it? Let's try Senator Martucci without my mute on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Kruger. And thank you, Commissioner, for joining us today. My question circles back to a question that was asked by Chair Kaplan just in the beginning of the hearing. And it's with respect to the CATs and the COs. So New York continues to decline when you look at the really important metrics. Our deactivity, patents filed, companies in tech, STEM jobs and degrees. You know, the 2020 Bloomberg Innovation Index took New York and has dropped two spots to 14th. The Milken Institute State Technology and Science Index has us falling from 11th in 2014 to 21st in 2020. And New York continues to decline with respect to these important issues. But places like New Jersey and Connecticut and Massachusetts outperform us again and again. My concern is, why would we continue to cut funding to successful economic development programs like the CATs and the COs? Shouldn't we be increasing the state's investments in these and competing against other states rather than competing against ourselves?
You know, when we look at, you know, our state economy, and I went through some of the statistics earlier, you know, pre-COVID, we had seen some of the best metrics in our state economy in the history of the state. We saw private sector jobs at an all-time high, unemployment at low. I don't think there's any other state that invests and champions innovation like New York State does. You know, we do have the innovation centers throughout the state. But what we're doing here is, at a time when we're in an increasingly competitive, knowledge-based economy, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're aligning the resources in a better way, providing the predictability and the stability that these centers need to be able to be even more innovative and respond to exactly, you know, some of the things that you talked about, but being more competitive, ensuring that there's a better technology that industries can ultimately use. And when you have this 10-year window, you're adding more stability for these centers to be able to respond to critical needs. You know, we've seen, you know, other statistics that I, you know, when we look at the number of workforce that have STEM degrees, I talk to businesses all the time. Businesses want to be in New York State because of our talented, because of our talented workforce. We continue to have strong venture capital that want to invest in New York State. The NIH money that comes to the state is among the highest in the nation. So I think that there are so many different statistics, you know, as one famous, you know, author said, there's lies, damn lies in statistics. The statistics that I look at show a very positive economy, certainly pre-COVID. $1.7 trillion, thereabouts GDP economy. Look, our economy, like all others, faced challenges over the last year. You know, given the talent of our workforce, the leadership that we have in this government stemming from the governor, all the different programs that we have, the innovative, the innovations that we're seeing, the technology companies, the health companies. But I do strongly believe that this state will, as the governor likes to say, build back better.
Thank you, Commissioner. I certainly appreciate your time today. And, you know, again, I would just, I would just reiterate that certainly from my perspective, I would prefer to see a model that, again, didn't have these CATs and COs competing against each other, but rather, you know, utilizing the resources that we have to be more competitive with our nearby neighbors in Connecticut and Massachusetts. But again, thank you for your time and thank you, Chair Kruger, for allowing me to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Assembly.
Yes, we go to Assemblyman Friend, the ranker on economic development.
Thank you, Chairwoman. And I'd just like to start with that, like the CATs and COs, and say that I am concerned with the possibility of elimination of the COs and the possibility that some of those COs may not actually receive that 10-year standing. I mean, I understand that that would be, provide more certainty for them to operate. But they have differences in the way that the two operate. I mean, the CATs go ahead and they leverage that private interaction with businesses and the COs rely on the university support. So they are similar, but not exactly the similar, the same way. And during my time at the University of Buffalo, I saw advantages to both models. So I think that going forward, we're eliminating one of the avenues that we have for our research development within our universities to be brought to market. But I don't want to really hang on that issue. I appreciate everything that you've talked about with trying to support our workforce development. We see that happening a lot in our community colleges and I'd like to see that that would continue. They need an awful lot of help going forward. We definitely need a lot of support getting our education K through 12 back up and running to full five-day-a-week classes. We're going on a year now where our students have not been in school and have not had that opportunity for the interaction and the learning, the stimulation that's going on there. And that's going to have a massive input, impact on our community colleges later on and our universities going forward as well as economic development currently. With the impact of COVID and everything that ESD has had and the governor has done with his executive orders to allow businesses to be able to. with executive orders to allow businesses to be able to operate under the the current climate, what regulations might you think that the governor suspended should remain permanently eliminated?
I'm sorry, what? I I missed the.
I was just asking, during during COVID, the governor has suspended by executive orders several regulations within New York State. Are there any of those that you would recommend that New York, that we would go ahead and pass a law to eliminate those regulations?
So, you know, you know, first of all, with, you know, I agree with you, that, you know, these businesses have, you know, faced enormous, enormous challenges over the, over the last year. I think first and foremost, you know, what what we need to do is, and again, the state the obvious, we're dealing with a public health crisis, and we need to defeat, you know, COVID-19. We need to ensure that, to continue with our program of vaccination, we need to continue to ensure that we're adhering to all of the health guidelines that have been put forward by Department of Health. And, you know, in doing so, that will enable us, as the governor has done over the last few weeks, is to open up more and more businesses. We need to get to the point where people are able to go into, you know, into congregant settings. We need to be able to support more dining, more of these settings, you know, in terms of, so, so that's first and first and foremost. You can't have, you know, over a long period of time, you know, our businesses subject to these reduced restrictions. The governor is is right in the sense of we've had to maintain these guidelines to protect the health and safety of of New Yorkers. But, you know, our hope, and exactly what the governor has been doing over the last few weeks, is opening up more and more of the economy. Let's, let's get to that point. And, you know, in the interim, in terms of any specific questions, I would defer to the, to the, to the governor's counsel on, on, you know, on regulatory issues. You know, we're, we're focused on making sure that, you know, the businesses, as they open up more and more, have what they need in terms of capital access, support, the technical assistance, and so on.
All right. Since my time is running short, I'll just make some comments, recommendations. It was recently suggested possibly that the MWBE 30% was put on hold. I'm not quite sure that I've heard anything about that, but even so, given the possibility of still COVID transmission, we have a bill that would have the MWBE set by the region that it's currently that you're in. So in the southern tier, we don't have 30% MWBEs available for many of our businesses. So we end up having to go and bring people out of Syracuse, New York City, or even out of the state to come in and fulfill those MWBE requirements. And it would make more sense to spur more MWBEs with a read within the region and to have the MWBE requirement be similar to what you actually have within that region. My other comment goes to broadband, and a lot of people have talked about affordability or availability. Within the second tier, availability is still a huge issue, and it has been. And I appreciate everything that the governor has done to try to bring up more availability. But I just have a recent report from the Ithaca Area Economic Development Board that says the PERM 75, a New York State Department of Transportation permitting requirement that became effective in November of 2020, authorizes DOT to enact a use and occupancy on fiber optic cable that runs along state right-of-ways. This requirement, on average, is $15,000 per mile to the cable company, and it's 26 to 80 cent per foot per year on an annual rental fee.
Assemblyman, your, 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 your time is, time is up. Do you want to just conclude?
Yeah. So basically, the PERM 75 is yet another one of those things that's holding us back from having more broadband within the southern tier, within rural parts of the country, rural parts of the state. And I'd appreciate if you would help to support the removal of that that fee. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to the Senate.
Thank you. Senator Jim Scoobis.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for your testimony. And I certainly appreciate the enormity of the the work that you've been a part of over the past year and moving forward. I I want to circle back to an issue that I think one of my Assembly colleagues very briefly touched on, but I didn't quite get the the full answer that that he perhaps, and I certainly, were looking for. And that is, you know, I've I've had concerns for quite some time about the operations of these regional economic development councils, REDCs. But specifically, I want to ask about these so-called recovery plans that the councils have been working on. It's my understanding that in an effort to come out of this pandemic and retool, if you will, the money that's appropriated to these REDCs, in lieu of the traditional awards that they that they dispense, they're developing these recovery plans. Our Senate staff has been asking your team, perhaps you personally, I don't know, but certainly your office, for for these recovery plans throughout the state for at least the past four months. And to date, on February 23rd, we still do not have what these recovery plans are, what they look like, the details, et cetera. So I'm asking you today, if you can please make a commitment that, let's say, this week, your office will share with the legislature, who appropriates these hundreds of millions of dollars for the REDCs, that you will share these recovery plans with us this week.
So, you know, thank you for your, for your comments upfront in in terms of all the great work that this agency has done. And I can only tell you that it's been a privilege to be able to lead this agency during these difficult times. So, so thank you for that. To get to your, to get get to your question, I mean, we rely on the REDCs in so many different ways, and we've spent a lot of time discussing, planning, you know, thinking, and we rely on the work that they do and the reports that they provide in order to guide our thinking in terms of of how we think about our broad economic development plans. And, you know, the work that that they had done in in working with us, you know, that work had had never been, you know, finalized.
If I could just interject, so just to cut to the chase here with 30 seconds, when can the legislature expect you will share these plans with us?
So, you know, let's, let, you know, let me do this, and, you know, and to your point, cut to the chase. You know, let me follow up after, you know, this hearing and figure out a timing of what we can do about those reports and 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 see how we can share those. So, that should be, that should be soon. I, so we can follow up on that.
Okay. My time's expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Assembly?
Yes, so I think we are now going on to members for three minutes. Assemblywoman Rajkumar.
I'm sorry, I can't hear anything if anybody's talking. I apologize.
No, we're looking.
We're looking for her. If she's not here, why don't we go to Assemblyman Stern?
She's here. She's coming on, ideally.
Hi. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner Gertler, and thank you for your efforts to help the New York economy rebound from this pandemic. I have three questions. I'll ask them all quickly. First is on ESD's issuing of cash grants. Given our enormous budget challenges right now and so many health and human services needs, I'm curious why ESD still gives cash grants to some private businesses? Wouldn't it be better, instead of cash grants, to offer job tax credits, which I know you call Excelsior job credits? Cash is tight right now, and needs are great, and Excelsior tax credits are pay-for-performance, so don't drain cash in the short term. I'm curious to hear your expert thinking on the matter. My second question is on the representation of South Asian Americans in the MWBE programs. South Asians comprise a large chunk of my constituency. They include people from the Indian subcontinent, as well as IndoCaribians from Guyana and Trinidad. Is ESD committed to ensuring that MWBE programs are available across the spectrum of minority communities, including for the South Asian communities that make up such a vital part of my district? And finally, does ESD have any role in supporting any community college workforce development initiatives in Queens? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'm just running down those questions. I'm going to also turn to my my colleague, you know, Kevin Yunus, to also focus on some of those questions. So, so let me start first, you know, with your your first question, which is, and and an important part of what we do in terms of economic development. Clearly, we use the Excelsior tax credits as, in multiple ways, that 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 is an important part of our program when we look to attract businesses, you know, to to New York, for example. And and those are performance-based. When we do, when we do grants, those grants, don't forget, also have clawbacks. We we make sure, and and I think this is the key to which we do, in which we do business development, that, and and by the way, those grants also go to, you know, nonprofits, they're they're performance-based. If the grants do not, if 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 those that are awarded the grants do not do what they're supposed to do, they get clawed back. The same thing with the Excelsior tax credits. They only get awarded once they achieve the perform, you know, it's tied to the performance. And that's, and, you know, and that is absolutely critical. I think in in the in the interest of of time, what I can do is follow up on the other two questions. I certainly don't want to not answer those, but what I will do is I'll have my my office come back to respond to the other two for you. I apologize.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Senate. Thank you. We've been joined by Senator Roxanne Purceau and Senator Sean Ryan, but the next questioner is Senator Borello. There you are, Judge.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Commissioner, thanks for being here today. Let me start off by saying thank you for, during the beginning of the pandemic, when we had the lockdown, I can tell you that I worked closely with Empire State Development in the Western New York region, and they did a fantastic job helping businesses to figure out, you know, their reopening and if they qualify. As County Executive of Tocco County, I was also a member of the REDC, and I appreciate the work that's done there, which leads me to my question. You know, I think that, and I don't know if anybody asked this before, I don't think so, we're looking at the CFAs and what the status is right now. I know it's basically has been more or less on pause. I have many businesses and many organizations asking me about the CFAs, so if you could give us an update on what the status is.
Great. Thank you. I I will say very quickly, I'm going to turn this over to Kevin Yunus, but, you know, I'm proud of the work that our team in Western New York continues to do and and continue to, the the work they continue to focus on there. But in the interest of time, Kevin Yunus, can you please respond to the CFA question?
I sure can. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Assemblyman. I think pretty simply, we expected to have the the round of REDCs open this year again, with the, you know, with the full 750, that's what we typically do.
Okay. So in in the similar timing, similar time, you know, timeframes, do we have an idea when?
Yeah, I, I, you know, obviously, given COVID, any, anything can change, but I think our expectation is somewhere similar to the same process we've done in past years. Timing and and.
All right. Well, that's.
Clearly, the focus will be a lot more on the, you know, COVID recovery, we would expect, in terms of available resources, but yes.
Yeah, well, absolutely. Certainly, I think we all know that the hospitality industry has been hard hit, and that would certainly be a, an important focus. You know, and I do, I will, just in my remaining time here, Commissioner, I will take you to task on one thing. You mentioned that the reason that broadband is not expanding is because businesses don't want to do it, and I would strongly encourage you to look at and speak with broadband providers. The tax on fiber has has dramatically decreased and even killed some projects. We've got the DOT that's charging a fee to, or requiring companies to resurvey the same areas just to run fiber on existing poles. So I would, I would ask you, and I've brought this up many times before, ask you to look at what New York State is doing to unfortunately, you know, hamper the expansion of broadband, particularly in rural areas. You know, right now, in my opinion, the expansion of broadband in our rural areas are self-inflicted wounds, and I would strongly encourage you to to help look at how we can solve that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Assembly.
We go to Assemblyman Stern.
Yes. Thank you. There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Like many of of my colleagues from both the Assembly and Senate, I'm very concerned about the cats and and COEs. The, so currently, the cats are awarded a 10-year designation, and in two years, under the governor's proposal, there would be 14 10-year contracts awarded to the new cats. So I understand the balance that we're trying to strike between competition and continuity under this proposal. But is there a concern that if these awards are going to be made at substantially the same time for a 10-year period, that we might actually be reducing competition? I'd like to get your thoughts on that, Commissioner, and then also lend my my voice again to my colleagues in support of the cats and and COEs, seeing that this is a demonstrably, quantifiably successful program, exactly the kind of program that we should be supporting, not cutting, as we come out of the pandemic to build back better. Thank you.
Sure. No, I I I appreciate that. And given I've, you know, talked quite a bit about the cats, you know, COE discussion, I'm going to have Pravina Ragavan, who heads our small business, I'm going to have her address that comment in terms of how we do the competitive nature after the two-year, after the two-year designation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Assemblyman. Understand the concern. We do not look to eliminate COEs or the numbers, so I just want to make sure. We also know that those are areas that we need to focus on from a technology perspective. And so the competition, as we do for the cats, many get re-designated easily because it is areas that we are creating jobs and thriving in the economy. We do not expect that to be a problem in the two years, but it also gives us time to sit there and see if there's a different pace and work with them to see the competition process. So it would be similar to what we do, which is an RFP. We don't have all the cats compete at the exact same time as well. There is a rotation to make sure that they were evenly distributed between two to four per year, usually, in in non-COVID years.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Back to the Senate. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Senator Sean Ryan, Buffalo.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. I would, I would echo the comments of other people from Western New York. The ESD did a great job early in the pandemic. You're really being clear and concise with local businesses, especially in the manufacturing field, to make sure those essential supply chain businesses stayed open. So, you know, kudos on that.
Thank you.
I'm also going to, you know, echo the the other comments, Commissioner, is that, you know, I know we rely on the the REDCs, which I think is a good idea, to get these regionally-flavored economic plans. But it kind of, you know, that that theory flies in face, the face of getting rid of the cats and the co's, because those are specifically regionally based. And I bet that the REDCs really weren't consulted about whether they think we should get, consolidate, you know, lop a lot of them off, because I think they're a vital part of each different region's economic development plan. So did you consult with all the REDCs before we made these, this proposal?
So, you know, again, as, you know, earlier in the in the hearing, and I'm going to have Pravina talk in, you know, Pravina discussed all the different ways that we had outreach to to members of the community regarding the cats and and COEs. And as, as, as I said, last year, this was a proposal that we brought up. There was, there was, you know, some, you know, some feedback, which is why we changed it to. as, as, as I said, last year, this was a proposal that we brought up. There was, there was, you know, some, you know, some feedback, which is why we changed it to a two-year designation. But Pravina, perhaps you can also discuss some, you know, some of the discussions you've had with the REDCs and some of the other community members on the reasons for the change.
Yeah. And first, I'd like to just say that we are not getting rid of any CATS or series or in eliminating any. It would be the exact same number. I, I understand that we're moving one program into another, so there is a confusion, but there will be none getting rid of. And we're not reducing the number either. So we have done outreach, both with the communities, as well as the universities as private stakeholders who use the network to ensure that we had a seamless transition. Once again, the reason we're doing this is to ensure that we have the upcoming, supporting the right technology to increase both jobs regionally, but also across the state, as well as making sure that we have a long tail to make some of this technology prevail. And as I said, the CATS are 10 years, and so that is what we've been doing. But we have been working with the communities when we've been looking at these proposals as requested last year.
Sure. Well, I hope to keep open ears to the feedback that you're getting today, which is pretty uniform. And as I'm running out of time, I would like at some point to get an update on the Tesla Gigafactory in Buffalo and how that is recovering from the pandemic and how we're going to, you know, put the new job measurement rules in place now, post-pandemic. So Commissioner, if we can do that offline, I would appreciate it.
I, I will make sure that we follow up with you, sir, after this, after this hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Assembly.
Yes, so we go to Assemblyman Byrne. Three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sorry I had to jump on and off because we have a separate committee meeting, so I don't want to be overly redundant with some of my colleagues' questions. I think were already asked. But I do have another question, or at least a follow-up regarding the Restaurant Return to Work Tax Credit. My understanding is it's restricted to places that had orange and red zone declarations. My question would be, you know, these restaurants all throughout our state have been hit hard by the state shutdowns. And the state was the sole real decider in determining who could operate, what phases they could open for outdoor and indoor dining, et cetera. So why are we having this distinction for this tax credit for orange and red zone areas only?
Yeah. You know, we, you know, I certainly understand that restaurants throughout the state, businesses throughout the state were affected by, you know, by COVID. You know, it wasn't the, you know, the, the state made the decisions in terms of, you know, the, the, the numbers and the percentages, but we didn't make the decision to have a global pandemic hit, hit New York State. And so you know, this has been a crisis that has been a global and public health crisis coincided with an economic crisis. And we've had to make sure that we are protecting the safety and health of, of, of New Yorkers. Now, because it's also been an economic crisis, it's also been, you know, there's also fiscal challenges. And so we, we've had to think about what are the most, you know, perhaps the, the best focus in terms of, of restarting the restaurant industry. We know, I've talked to restaurant owners around the state. We know that, you know, restaurants have hurt. What we've been trying to do is, is, is given the fiscal constraints, is, is focus on those that had the additional restrictions imposed on them. The restaurants that were closed down, like in New York City, or those that were in origin and, and red zones. And so it's, you know, it's a $50 million fund. And, you know, to, to ensure that that, you know, that money was, you know, that we were able to provide to restaurants, we are looking at those that had those additional restrictions. Now.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm running, I'm running out of time. I have less than 30 seconds left, so I, I'm not, you know, attributing a global pandemic to your department, so I hope you don't interpret my question that way. And I understand the state had to make restrictions, but, you know, often in state government, we get in this mode of picking winners and losers. And unfortunately, this has kind of highlighted that. And you know, there's been negative effects on people throughout the state, not just in those areas. We want to help everybody, so I just wanted to highlight that distinction. So I hope we get some more assistance to those restaurants as well. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go, before we go to the Senate, Assemblyman Santa Barbara has actually been with us for quite a while, and I neglected to announce him. Now we go to the Senate.
Nice to see you, Assemblymember Santa Barbara. Now, the squares are so small, your best friend can be staring at you, and you're not sure who's on the screen with you today. I'm going to take this time for myself. Thank you. So we had a little conversation before today, and I asked you how the program where the governor took $175 million from various parts of the state budget and merged them into one to cover worker retraining and employment programs. You were going to get me the master list, I think, of how that $175 million has been being spent annually. I don't know whether you had a chance to put that together yet. I looked online. I could not find that anywhere.
I, I have some of the information here in our office. We'll send you that, that information.
Great. And we'll share it with everyone, because I think everyone's very interested. Sometimes we forget, we start new programs, and then nobody ever goes and takes a look and sees how they're doing. And certainly, this is a time where we need to be smartly investing our funds that are for specific mandated purposes, such as getting people ready to enter the labor market or the new labor market that will be evolving out of this pandemic munch, bush we are in. On that note, can you also explain to me, it's part AA in the Teddy bill, and it reopens the Brownfields, Brownfields Development Grants for companies who applied back either in 2010 or earlier than 2010. So it's been over 11 years. It's been companies who already got the first part of the grant, which was money for the remediation of the actual brownfields pollution, but have not gotten the economic development portion, I guess because they never built or completed building something. But we realized many years ago, this was too generous a program, and we changed the rules of the road. So why suddenly would we in 2021 be reopening this program to people who had applied before 2010, I believe, of the year? And so I love a list of who's going to be eligible and how much money you think that's going to cost the state.
Okay. You, you know, first, for, as, as I understand, on the, on the proposed Brownfield Tax Credit Extension, it's to, to extend those where their, their period was set to expire from March 30th, 2020 through the end, end of this year. And it was a two-year extension. That being the case, we will provide to your office answers to the questions that you want on the, the Brownfield Tax Credits. Kevin Yunus, is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, thanks, Eric. Senator, this was solely related, the intent was solely related to COVID. So in many instances, folks were in the middle of the projects where they would have qualified for work and expenditures during, and had to stop. And so this was just in recognition of getting, for folks who otherwise would have been eligible for expenditures and work, had COVID not stopped their project. And this allows them to really to be eligible for what they would have been for.
So, so Kevin, is it normal that under this program, it can be 10 years later and it's still not completed?
I think so, yeah. It's, that is the current timeframe that, that, at least that, for those getting into the program, you know, 10 years ago, they were, they had that amount of time to do the projects.
Okay. So yes, I'd be very interested in seeing that. Then, really growing out of much of the conversation today, with people asking about different programs, some that got delayed for last year and are being asked to be restarted, some that seem like they're not going to have enough money to keep going, even though people are raving about them. Do we ever take a look and say, we've tried an awful lot of different models of economic development in New York State. Here are the ones that work and here are the ones that didn't work. Do we have a list of our, like our 10 best and our 10 worst? I think we could learn a lot from them.
You, you, you know, we, it's a, you know, it's, it's, it's a great, it's a great question, Chairwoman. We, we certainly go through our programs on a regular basis. You know, we go through and, and continuously look at, you know, our programs. We're looking at the, the effectiveness of, of them. You know, we will, as I said, in, in, in a matter of weeks, we will release our database of incentives. You'll be able to track, you know, those, you know, those, those programs. You know, that'll be searchable, downloadable. We'll be updating that quarterly. Certainly on the REDC, we provide, you know, the statistics of how those programs are doing. So we're constantly, you know, measuring it. We're, we're certainly accountable to all the public dollars. So you know, that is an important part of what, you know, what we do. I, I can tell you that certainly 90% of our projects meet the performance levels that we've, that we've set. We do cost benefit analysis on, on every single, you know, on, on every single program. You know, Kevin, do you want to, you know, add to anything that I've said?
No, Eric, the only thing I would add, Senator, is I, I think you, the, the challenge, right, we do, we want to make sure we're doing, focusing on the best programs. The nature of, of what we do, as you, as you know very well, is what is economic development and what is the, what is success? And so different programs do different things. And there's just so many, from MWBs to Film to Excelsior. You know, it's just different programs have different measures. And it's hard sometimes to put them all in one bucket and say which, just different metrics, right? And so it's hard sometimes that this one's better than that, because they just, their goals are different.
I would agree, although then I would probably modify my question. Give me the top five goals, and then give me the top 10 best and worst within, with each parameter. Because you're right, there are different goals for different programs, but surely it shouldn't be that hard for us to be able to come up with, particularly because you're talking about having metrics, the list of the best and the worst, because I can certainly think of a few of the worst. But I'm not sure we ever do look at them that way. And I think it's really valuable each year to be taking a look at what we did put our money into and say, you know, we tried, that was worth a try. It's not a good model versus, wow, look at what we got out of this one. We should be replicating that. We should be, you know, celebrating that one and encouraging that. So it's just a suggestion, but I think it would be really valuable.
Well, you, you know, and, and thank you for that suggestion. I can just assure you that with every program that we have, we are going back, we're measuring ourselves against the, you know, against the, the, the performance of each of those, against those goals. And as, as Kevin rightly pointed out, you know, it's just different if part of an economic development program is an MWBE program versus a job attraction versus a park related to something. So, but, you know, we're happy to, and I'm certainly happy to have that conversation with you after the hearing and show you some of the different metrics that we use as part of all of those different types of programs.
And I appreciate that. And I know, you know, we're all New York strong. We think we do the best ever of anyone. But I know that in national studies, we come up pretty low on how much money we spend on economic development without getting return for our money. So I really do think it's not just a hypothetical. It's worth a serious look in New York State as to how much of our taxpayer dollars we're putting into programs that we claim exist so that we can create new economic activity and new job opportunities for the state of New York. And I'm, I'm just not sure that if we take a hard look, we're going to be so happy with the results. But the fact is, if we don't take a hard look, we're not going to learn from the mistakes we've made either. And on that note, opportunity zones, a Trump administration model that has been written up almost on a national level as what will prove to be a very expensive and useless program. It's a federal program, I get it. And we were told, come up with, I guess, geo-coded maps of what areas would fit the qualifications. And I'm not sure what's happened since, but I'm very worried about the state of New York using up its tax dollars on this program, which pretty much everyone, I believe in, in economics thinks was a scandal waiting to have the story written. So what do we know about opportunity zones right now?
Yeah, just, you know, very quickly, ESD's role was to, in, in partnership with their sister agency HCL, HCR, we designated the, you know, the, the zones. It is a federal program. Actually, Pravina led those efforts at ESD, so you know, she can, she, she can provide even more detail.
And yes, she will have to do so by reaching out to me after this hearing, because my clock is at zero. So I'm not allowed to let her answer now. But you'll follow up with me, right?
We, we absolutely, we absolutely will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assembly. Next, we have Assemblywoman Button. Sean, three minutes.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for being here today. I want to support the comments of Chair Sterpi regarding small business needs and including those owners on our REDC teams, as well as Chair Otis's comments of the importance of reviewing innovative thinking that may come from other states. I want to thank your regional staff for the support with CRE and currently with Remington Arms and the new Roundhill Company, as we see in Illyon, New York. This is so important. And I'll talk further off line with you. As ESD provides assistance and guidance to build back and reopen our businesses, the Governor makes information public through press conferences. And then it appears there's a lag of when your office actually has this information to bring to our businesses. Our businesses are eager to open and want clarity on this. I wanted to know if you're aware of this and if you see a way to remedy it. My second question, many of my colleagues discuss broadband concerns, and I do concur with them. However, you did mention the $15 a month program. And I'm wondering if there's any compensation for our small internet businesses, is they will be offering a reduction to their customers and who will be able to pick up that difference? And finally, I am still hearing from our minority and women-owned businesses that would to put in timely applications, and they find that the process is still quite lengthy and the turnaround is still very slow. I wanted to know if you're aware of it and if you have any remedies for this. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for those, for those questions. Let me see, let me start with the, the last question first on the MWBs. And we're certainly you know, constantly, constantly in touch with, with all of our applicants. We have emphasized streamlining the application and making it much easier to complete. In fact, we've streamlined it by 30%. What we've, what we've also done is we've also done outreach with third parties to help to complete that application so that when it comes in, there's much less back and forth of, of, of going through that. You know, clearly, that program has had, you know, a great deal of success. I've cited the numbers.
Thank you for that information, but I want to say that I'm still hearing that there's problems. So thank you.
Okay. Okay. Well, you know, we, we, you know, continue to look for, for ways to improve the process. We've done a number of different things recently to improve it, as I said, streamlining it, you know, adding staff, using third parties. It's, it's an important part of, of what we do. It's, we emphasize the work that we do at MWE, and we'll continue to look for ways to respond. I apologize. I'm out of time. I'm happy to talk to you afterwards about the information flow and about the broadband. Thank you.
Thank you. Senate, do you have any more?
Looking, and I do not think we do. So I think Assembly, you should just make a run for it here.
We will. We have about a dozen members, so we'll just go through the list. And Senator Kroger, you can stretch your legs for a few minutes. So next, we have Assemblyman Rodriguez.
Great.
Yep, can you hear me? Great, thank you, President. So I'm going to focus on a couple of questions. Of the $100 million New York loan program, New York Forward Loan Program, how much of that has been deployed and how much is left at this point?
All right, so the, the New York Forward Loan Fund was, was put together during the height of COVID. So let's, let's just provide some context. That was at a time when many of the small businesses and many of the M W B E businesses were unable to, you know, to access any sorts of, any, any sorts of funds. And so that we put together was a $100 million fund and, you know, which the state had $20 million in loan loss reserves. At, at this point, I would say that it's about just slightly under $40 million has gone out the door. There's about $60 million still to be deployed. What I, what I might also note, and, and this has been a, you know, this was a goal of the fund and one of the reasons for developing this fund. Almost 66, two-thirds of the money have gone to M W B E firms. And, and that was critical because the whole point of that was to help companies, particularly M W Bs, that were having trouble accessing traditional capital sources. So we're, you know, we're very pleased with the percentage of money that's going to M W B E firms.
Okay, well, I certainly echo my colleagues' concerns about the cut to the M W B E resources, but I don't want to spend any more time on that issue. I think you've gotten the message on that. I want to focus the rest of my time on the restaurants initiatives and speaking specifically about a program that I've brought forward to the executive that I think is an important model, going on the Senator's comments about models that work. We have seen in places like East Harlem, The Five Boroughs, that things like the World Central Kitchen, where we're able to support restaurants to deal with food insecurity, actually is a model that helps the restaurants be able to ramp up capacity, provide meals for places that are food insecure. You know, that coupled with, on February 2nd, President Biden passed an executive order to allow the FEMA cost share for those programs to deal with food insecurity and restaurants to allow them to support to cover 100% of the costs associated with this program. So I think there's an opportunity. We've made the ask of, you know, that $25 million be allocated to help our restaurants be able to get back on their feet, hire and deal with the food insecurity that's occurring here, separate from the tax credit program. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and hopefully it's something that you can pursue immediately, knowing that there's an opportunity for FEMA support through SNAP to help this program, you know, help restaurants today.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Now we go to Assemblywoman Griffin. Is Judy there?
She may be having a little trouble, we can probably come back to her.
Okay, so I know a number of people have committee meetings also, so we could go to Assemblywoman Gallagher.
Okay, can you see me and hear me?
No, I can.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for taking my question. I know you've had quite a few questions on commercial rent debt and the crisis confronting small businesses, but I do want to drill down on it since it's a crucial part of restoring our local economies. Even before the pandemic, commercial rents in New York City were astronomical, artificially inflated by commercial mortgages that require minimum rents and which are then further distorted by those mortgages that are securitized and traded by financial institutions. The result is high rent blight, and you can see it in vacant storefronts all across the city even before the shutdown last year. Here in the 50th Assembly District, we've lost more than 100 small storefront businesses, and many more are hanging on by a thread. I continue to be concerned that there's nothing that's been laid out here today or in the governor's executive budget to propose to meet the scale of this crisis. But there are some ideas out there that I think could help and that I'm hoping you can respond to. Would Empire State Development support legislation or policies that would void minimum rent terms in existing future commercial mortgages? And would your department support the imposition of graduated vacancy taxes for landlords that sit on vacant storefronts for extended periods of time?
You know, thank you for those questions. Let me tell you what, what we have been focused on at, you know, at E S D. I think the, the question of that you bring up of, in a sense, mortgage regulation, I think that's, you know, you know, a question that, you know, my colleagues at Department of Financial Services are more expert at, at responding to. I will tell you that, you know, we have put forth a number of different important, you know, proposals and, and programs to help in this, in this case. As you know, the governor extended the commercial eviction moratorium. That's been, that's been critical at a time when we know so many businesses are struggling. We also had the, the New York Forward Small Business Lease Assistance Program, where that helps small businesses and landlords work out a mutually beneficial agreement. And we've also had the New York Forward Loan Fund, which works with both small businesses, and it also works with small landlords and nonprofits to help in, in that situation. I've also been heartened to see that, you know, a lot of landlords throughout the city and the state, you know, understand and recognize the issues here and, you know, the crisis that we're facing, the way many of their tenants have struggled, and they have independently worked on resolutions with their, with their tenants to keep them. So I think there's a lot going on here, and I think that there's other questions that are probably better for other agencies that can give you the detail that you're looking for. But thank you for those questions. Thank you.
Is Assemblywoman Griffin back?
Yes, she is here.
Okay, great.
Hello?
Assemblywoman, we can't hear you. Try talking while you're muted. No, we still can't hear you.
It says you're muted. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't hear her.
Judy, we can't, we can't, we can't hear you, so must be, give you a second if you could figure it out. Otherwise, we'll move on, and we have quite a few members that will come back to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, okay, I don't know why that took so long. Thank you, Chairs, thank you for your patience. Good morning, Commissioner Gertler. I represent Southwestern Nassau County, which is full of struggling businesses, which are under 25 and 50 people. Many are restaurants, bars, florists, small clothing stores, delis, bakeries, ice cream shops, salons, bowling alleys, gyms, fitness centers, dance studios and theaters. They, these businesses are the heart of each community I represent, and they really seem to have been left, left out of support and assistance. And, you know, I always hear of the bigger businesses getting assistance. And so my question is, like, now I'll just give you all the questions and see if you have time to answer them. Can I expect to see any awards given out to them in 2021? You know, from either the, you know, from any of the programs? Or is it more likely that I, like, from the R E D C awards? Or is it more likely the pandemic recovery and restart program would support them? I'm also wondering, will any funding be allocated to the Small Business Development Center in Homme d'Or and around these centers across the state? So you could have more regional look at this and more regional help for these businesses in every community on Long Island and across the state. So those are my questions. One more, if you have time, would be, I'm really excited about the Baldwin D R I, it's almost complete. I'm just wondering what the update is when we're going to hear the final selection of projects. So if you can answer any of those questions, I'd greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Where do, where to begin? But let me, let me start with our emphasis on, on, on small business. You know, that's, that's critical. I've, I've said it multiple times during this, this hearing, but, but it's worth repeating. You know, small businesses are the backbone of this economy. And that is why we have implemented and have, you know, many different programs to help small businesses. So, you know, we know that small businesses across the state have struggled during COVID. One of the programs that we have put forward for small businesses is one that is a $50 million recovery program that's focused on, you know, those that are in the hardest-hit industries. You mentioned some of those, so arts and, you know, and entertainment and recreation, you know, tourism. And, you know, those, those businesses are eligible up to, it's a $50 million program, and they're eligible up to $50,000, $5,000 credits for 10 employees. In the time, what I will just say is that as part of our, you know, program where we, we, we've used $7.5 million to help small businesses, you know, we've supported the S P D Cs through. I think that's a critical, you know, part of the ways that we're helping. And what I'll do in the interest of time is I'll have our Small Business Division follow up with you with the many different programs that we have, and, and we'd be happy to do so. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We go to Assemblyman Jones.
Yes. Hello, hi, Commissioner, how are you? It's great to be with you today. Good, I only have a short time, so I'm going to get right in it, get my questions off and my comments, and hopefully you can answer them. Broadband, I know it's been brought up, I apologize, I've been, I've been in and out of Zoom meetings and committee meetings myself. You know, we talk about all the, you know, the obstacles in getting broadband to our rural areas and actually to everywhere in New York State. I heard you say something about it's no longer a question of accessibility, it's now affordability. I tend to be on the, you know, I, I will respectfully disagree with you, and I can, I can bring you up to the North Country and take you to some places where we don't have that accessibility. There's many reasons for that. I would like to see this program expanded, extended. You know, our small companies up here are trying to get our customers hooked up, but we have many obstacles that New York State keeps putting in their way. I heard the DOT tax mentioned in that. My question is, I like the idea of $15 broadband and $15 internet service, how are we going to pay for it? What, how is, who's going to pay for that? I don't see anything, you know, in the budget that can pay for this expansive program on that. My second, I know, M W Bs were mentioned. I'm sorry, this program is not working. It's not getting our minority and women-owned businesses certified. It's just not. I can tell you horror stories about people that I know that women own these businesses, and they can't prove to your agency that they own these businesses, and it's heartbreaking. I've heard of, of couples actually going to get as far, going to get divorced to try to prove that the woman owns the company. Something has to be done. I have one case in particular, and I know we can't talk about individual cases here, but where they, they've called for three years to the agency. We, they get ahold of my office, we call them, they say, oh, well, it's, we're still investigating it. They don't get a call back for six months. I don't know, this program has to be, there has to be something done. I can talk to Kevin about it offline, I'm not a grandstander, I'm just, we're very frustrated with some of these things. So if you can just, you know, comment, answer my first question, comment on my second. I respectfully do this, we can talk about it offline, but we need some answers for some of these, some of these women-owned businesses.
Sure. And again, I, I would be happy in the interest of time to also talk to you offline. You know, with respect to the M W B E program, you know, I have to say that, you know, let's look at the statistics. We really truly have a nation-leading program, 29 and 1/2% participation rate, over $3 billion annually. And let's go through all the ways that we've improved that program. On broadband, we continue to look for ways to, to ensure that, that we have accessibility, but we have a 99.9% commitment on broadband, we're at 98% right now. And even still, the team is relentless in finding other ways to continue to ensure that we have the very best broadband for the peoples of New York. The example that I cite is that even though New York State was ruled to be categorically ineligible for the FCC's World Digital Opportunity Fund, the team at E S D with our Washington office was able to secure $100 million to continue our efforts to ensure that we've got the critical fiber infrastructure in rural areas around New York State. So, you know, I want to make sure that you realize that, that we are continuing, notwithstanding the levels of success that we believe that we've had and the foresight that the governor had four or five years ago to invest $500 million to ensure that we had nation-leading broadband. We are still continuing to make sure that we deliver the very best broadband that we can to all the peoples of New York and at an affordable rate.
Okay, thank you, I'd love to speak with you offline on a few of those issues.
Of course, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
We go to Assemblyman Conrad.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for being here. I know it's a long day, and we're all hopping around. I want to speak, first of all, I appreciate your comments early on about your, the approach of bottom-up economic development. I'm a firm believer in that and making New York State resilient. I'm a big fan of the 43 North startup in Western New York, as well as I want to speak about the advocacy for small businesses my peers have here today. But, and I, right now, I believe that we're in a transformational economy. You know, the COVID crisis has, you know, rapidly pushed things that were maybe going to be five or 10 years away from internet sales and so on. But I want to talk particularly about small business, particularly what we call gazelles or Tier 2 companies. I don't know if you know if I'm referring to these, I think about 3%, 5% of small businesses, and they are companies that are producing things that are scalable and unique that are going to be exported. And I know you spoke on that earlier. My question is, what is, what are we doing right now? I know that the G R E in Rochester has a pretty impressive program of economic gardening, targeting these companies, recruiting them, identifying the assets, creating resource partners for them, and putting together a delivery system to a targeted audience. My question is, you know, and I know that COVID has certainly put, you know, other things on your, on your priority plate. But where are we in maybe scaling out that type of program and focusing on these companies and getting away from what I call these Tier 3 companies, these big, large companies, where we kind of do that trickle-down approach? And where they come in, but they, they tend to commoditize wages, you know, they try to pay as little as they can. Where are we from shifting from the Tier 3 to a Tier 2 emphasis?
Well, first, let me say that I had not heard of the concept gazelles. I have heard of the concept unicorns, so I hope you don't mind if I actually start to use that concept.
Not a problem.
So, 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 thank you.
Mine's not mythical, though, mine's not mythical, okay?
Well, we, we like to then, I'd like to ensure that we see more gazelles and more unicorns in, in New York State. But, but, you know, be that, be that as it may, just, you know, a few things. We, and, and, and you're absolutely right, COVID accelerated many of, many aspects of our economy, whether it's been the inequities that, and, and the disparate effects that it's had on small businesses, or it's forced companies to deal with the digital realities of, that, that they face as a business. So, you know, in, in, in no, you know, priority, there are so many things that, that, that we do in this area, so many different resources. During COVID, we did initiate a program called Empire State Digital, which is a series of partners to help small businesses be able to start to be more digital fluent, be able to do more, you know, online, have a digital presence. And then very quickly, in the interest of time, we use many of our centers around the state that help small and medium and even large businesses. We have our manufacturing extension partnerships, and certainly we use economic incentives. So there's a whole range of tools that, that we use. But happy to talk to you off, you know, offline about that as well. And thank you for sharing expression gazelles.
You're welcome.
So we go to Assemblywoman Jillio.
Yes, hi. I just have a question about the, there's a bill that's being proposed right now. It is bill number A3190, which has $500 million is what I'm being told, so that commercial property owners that have small businesses that rent from them can access some of that funding to offset the rental costs or the rental lease dollar amount. So I'm wondering if that's funded, the 500 million in support of this bill? To keep our main streets alive?
I apologize, I'm not familiar, that may not be an ESD initiative. So I, Kevin, are you familiar with this? I apologize, I'm just not sure about what you're referring to.
No, I'm not either.
Sorry. We're happy to look into it and come back to you, but I apologize. I don't have any background on that.
Yeah, that would be great. And then my second question is about tip credits for, the hospitality industry was, is eligible still for the tip credits or was through 2020? And in 2021, it was taken away for the car washes and for the nail salons. And I'm just wondering, those are small businesses also that are struggling through this pandemic and what we can do about getting those tip credits back to those small business owners? So that it's not just the hospitality industry.
Yeah, you know, Pravina, do you want to provide some insight on that, please?
We could look into it, we will work with your company. At the moment, we haven't been looking through the legislation to figure out which industries yet. We're still doing the analysis to see which have been most impacted by COVID, but we will get back to you on that.
Okay, and then having a former.
Sorry.
Having a former Grumman facility in my district in the town of Riverhead, they have a buyer for a $40 million contract for a 10 million square foot build out. And they seem to be held up in the New York State DEC and other regulatory agencies where they can't get the subdivision map approved. What is ESD doing to help them to try and get that subdivision map approved so that the sale can occur and we can start creating the jobs that we lost when Grumman left?
You know, it sounds like this is an issue right now that DEC is, you know, is addressing. We're happy to, after this hearing, to talk to our colleagues at DEC to see if there's, that there's anything that we can do to help. I'm also happy to discuss this with our regional office out there and see what else we can do. And look, obviously, in these times, we, you know, we care about jobs, we're focused on jobs. So let's see what, you know, what help we can provide.
That'd be great. They've had unmanned aerial vehicle companies, they've had offshore wind interested in coming and manufacturing. They have runways and it's been since 2016 that they've been trying to get this subdivision map approved.
Understood, I'm happy to follow up with you and we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We go, oh, thank, we go to Assemblywoman Seirai.
Thank you Chairwoman Weinstein and thank you Commissioner Gertler. We're fortunate to have your vast experience, both in the private and public sector in this important leadership position. I just have two quick questions. I represent Cornell Tech on Roosevelt Island and Marymount Manhattan College on the Upper East Side. So what is being done with our private colleges as well as our publics, CUNY and SUNY? To encourage graduates to go into some kind of a career pipeline with business and with industry as they contribute to the tax base once they graduate? I think it's important to our economy and the vitality of our economics that we include these graduates in some kind of pipeline program.
I agree. You know, first of all, thank you for those kind remarks. All I can say is that it's been a privilege leading ESD and I'm backed by an incredibly talented and hardworking team at the agency who have worked tirelessly over the, you know, over the past year. You know, certainly as part of the Governor's Workforce Development Initiative, that's been a program that goes across agencies. SUNY and CUNY play a critical role in that. You know, there's many, you know, ways specifically they do it, but what is, and obviously all that work needs to continue. We have seen a number of successes coming from that. I know when we're talking to companies, they want to be in New York because of our talented workforce, because of the STEM degrees that they have. And we are seeing that among that younger group, we're seeing increasing number of young in New York, sort of 25 to 34 age, and those that now have college degrees and STEM degrees. So I think that's an indication that, you know, that the work that we're doing on workforce development and the work that are, that SUNY and CUNY are doing to help, you know, enhance that pipeline is also working. It's as critical as ever in a post-COVID world. So thank you for that, for that question.
And I just have a quick second question on MWBEs. What is the plan and the outreach to encourage MWBE firms to have an opportunity to participate in the broadband projects? And I also want to just echo the remarks of Assemblywoman Booten Sean, Assemblyman Billy Jones on, you know, I have constituents calling my office looking for help with their MWBE licenses and it's very frustrating. But it's an important program. It's one that I believe in and I would like to know what the plan is for greater outreach so that MWBE firms can participate in the broadband projects.
Well, thank you. Let me just say very quickly, in the interest of time, that there's been significant outreach and that outreach has not gone unabated during COVID. There's been a number of virtual, you know, outreach, there's been, there's been training. And we had our annual MWBE forum in December, all done virtually 2,200 registrants. So the work that that group does did not stop during COVID. Lots of different outreach, both on a state level and on a regional basis. So, and we'll continue to look for other ways to reach out to this, to this community. So thank you.
Thank you Commissioner.
We go to Assemblywoman Fahey now, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, thank you for being here today. We really appreciate you and so much of your work, so much has been covered. So forgive me if some of this is repetitive as I was dealing with some other committees as well. But I just want to reiterate what you heard so much about small business, small business, small business, right? And including those jobs, it is the lifeblood of the economy. But the work, you know, I am pleased that we're getting through to Washington. We have to really target on our smallest businesses and tie it to bringing back workers. Hearing a lot from the creative economy, from artists and others. So tying this to jobs, so much of it is truly important. Broadband access, it's the affordability is one of my key concerns. I know you've heard a lot about that. So now I want to switch to bigger issues, not small business. Two issues, Wadsworth, I know your agency was a little bit involved in the redo and the proposal to redo and consolidate all the Wadsworth science labs here in Albany. Last year, that was, well, the last few years, it's been a $750 million proposal. Well, it's not in the governor's budget. My understanding is there's still somewhat of a commitment. And so I just need to reiterate to you and to others that that would be the biggest public investment here in the capital region since SUNY Poly or since the investment in Global Foundry. So it's that big, it's that important. So I just want to get that on your radar screen. I know you would be involved, even though the funding was coming through DOH. But it is, it would be the biggest economic driver here. So we are still looking for that. I know it didn't make it in the 30 Day Amendments either. Question now, switching gears again to another big event. There's a lot of talk federally about the highways to boulevards. And I know you have helped lead some of the efforts out in Buffalo. The Skyway proposal there or the reimagining or tearing down some of the Skyway. I know you've been involved somewhat in Syracuse. As you know, I've been talking a lot about reimagining 787 here in Albany. You've helped lead the efforts in Buffalo, just wondering if that is on your screen. As you know, we need to reimagine it and get a serious study first before we can even get in line for the $10 billion, $10 billion that Chuck Schumer is talking about in Washington. So just wondering if you have heard much about this? And again, it would be, I know we overuse the term, but it would be absolutely transformative here in the capital region. And the goal, of course, is to reclaim the waterfront and reunite some communities that were cut off from that waterfront and, as well as the communities themselves. So just wondering if you've been involved or had this and?
So, you know, very, you know, very quickly, I'll just, 20 seconds, Buffalo Skyway involved. You know, that, you know, that challenge started to bring about a lot of inspiration. And, you know, Department, our Department of Transportation is working through those issues. And, you know, and we'll, you know, obviously, there's a lot of work still to be done related to Buffalo, Buffalo Skyway. But that, you know, that challenge really kicked things off and really led to a lot of different ideas. On Wadsworth, you know, huge, hugely important institution in New York. Vital during COVID, you know, doing so much great work that is led by, you know, by DASNY, but obviously critical. And then on your last point, you know, suffice it to say that there's been, you know, no governor that has emphasized infrastructure like Governor Cuomo. $306 billion program on infrastructure. So that obviously, all things infrastructure are a focus of this administration. So, so thank you.
I look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Likewise, thank you so much.
Thank you Chair.
Right, thank you.
Sure, Commissioner, we still have about eight Assembly members. You okay going through or do you need a quick break?
I'm okay, I would, let's continue, that's fine.
Okay, just, you know, just wave if, so we go to Assemblywoman Warner now.
Thank you. Thank you so much Chairwoman and thank you Commissioner for being here and for your comprehensive testimony. I want to quickly just give a shout out to your team at ESD for the great work that they did in the pandemic, managing the essential business process and so forth. Really solid performance, thank you so much. I want to lend my voice to the, to the voices you've already heard about the availability of broadband or rather the lack of availability of broadband throughout the rural communities particularly that I represent, although it's true in some of our suburban communities as well. You know, my question however, is, has to do with whether we are, in your opinion, getting as much for the dollar as we should be. The governor put in $500 million into the broadband program, not a small amount of money. But based on some research I've been doing, since the, since 20, since before 2015, the cost per mile was $3,400. After the broadband program started, that cost per mile rose to $16,000. And prior to 2015, the make ready costs associated with any particular project were about 33% of the total project. After 2015, those make ready costs grew to greater than 50% of the cost of the project. This is important because the broadband companies are taxed based on the cost of construction. So their property tax is based on the cost of construction. And as the net result of all of this additional cost is that where prior to 2015, the break even case for a broadband company was four houses per mile, it's now seven houses per mile. So my question for you is, as you go forward with broadband in this state, and we do need to do more for broadband, what will your agency do to help control the costs of these projects so that the state investment goes as far as it might go?
Sure, first of all, I just want to thank you again for those, for those kind comments about the staff at ESD. I can tell you firsthand that we have some of the most committed public servants at ESD who worked around the clock to help New Yorkers around the state. You know, I know so many people have worked hard, everybody in the legislature and other agencies, and it's just nice to recognize that. And I wanted to provide that shout out for my, for my team here at ESD who have really done extraordinary work, so thank you. I'm going to have Kevin Yunus talk about the cost. But, you know, if you go back to when the governor announced the broadband program and $500 million, at that time, 30%, of New Yorkers lacked access. And almost, some in the neighborhood of, I think, two thirds, but, but a huge number of people upstate didn't have access. So now we have commitments to 99.9%. I mean, that is, you know, a remarkable accomplishment, that is significant improvement. And quite frankly, as I've said this before, had that not started and the governor, had he not had the foresight to be investing in broadband many years ago, we would have had, you know, real, real problems, you know, during COVID. So Kevin, can you please address some of the costs and some of the issues that we saw?
Thanks Eric, thanks Assemblyman. I'll be real quick, there's, there's a lot smarter people than me in our broadband office, but I have had a chance to work closely with a number of them. It's interesting, I think your, your observation, you know, my hunch is because of, these were the hardest to reach places. And before our program, providers were going to areas where it was relatively affordable to do so. Our program was designed to go to harder reached places. And I think that's one of the reasons you might see a higher cost. The other thing you referred to is the make ready.
Excuse me, the cost comparison is actually rural program to rural program. So this was costs in the North Country and then costs in Northern Washington County. So it is a, they are comparable projects.
Yeah, so again, I will, we'll get, certainly have some folks talk to you. And I know as we've looked, particularly as you get further and further into the rural areas, the make ready work becomes more and more expensive. In some cases, you know, we see poles that haven't been replaced in 50 years. And so I know there's a lot of make ready costs on, in those programs. But, you know, I would be happy to get our folks to have a more detailed conversation with you.
Thank you.
We go to Assemblyman Smolin.
Thank you Chair, thank you Commissioner, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I've got four questions, I'll ask them rather quickly and then circle back around to the first question because I know I've got three minutes, we've got lots to discuss. The first question relates to broadband and specifically, what tool does the broadband program office use to measure speed and connectivity to rural areas in New York? The second question has to do with the CFA rounds. Will there be another downtown revitalization initiative in this round? If not, should our municipalities look towards next year to resubmit those applications? The third question is, was Remington Arms considered to be labeled an essential business in this pandemic? And if, if it was not, why wasn't it labeled an essential business? And then the fourth question is, is what is the percentage of women business applications, certifications in upstate New York under the MWBE certification program that have been actually approved? What was approved? So circling back to broadband, I won't echo what my colleagues have said, but I hear from schools to say that their kids cannot be online, they're on the wrong side of the digital divide. I hear from seniors that want to do telehealth, that they can't do it. I hear from people in the Adirondacks that I represent, that they would love to live here, but they can't telecommute to their jobs in a dense urban area or a large suburban area. And I also hear from businesses that really want to have high speed connectivity so they can compete in the global marketplace. So going back to the question is, is how is the broadband program office actually measuring what my citizens in the 118th Assembly District in upstate New York, what you know? Are they using a tool like speedtest.net which does house level data? Or are they still using census level data to get to that question? Because I know you said there's some FCC money out there. I really love to see that FCC money go to get to the bottom of it for these folks. Whether they get the broadband through terrestrial or whether they get most of it through terrestrial and the rest of it through wireless, it doesn't matter, just we need to get it to them. So how are we measuring it for our citizens?
You know, I very much appreciate the specificity of your questions and I want to make sure to, you know, give you, you know, the same specificity. And I want to make sure to, you know, give you, you know, the same specificity on our answers. So, you know, we certainly use a number of third party, you know, resources and, and, and maps to figure that out. Let me get to you the specific ways that, that we do that. You know, we've got pretty granular information on many of these things, but I don't want to, you know, say something inaccurate. So I will, I will come back to you on, on, on that. We'll have our broadband office come, come to you.
I really appreciate that, Commissioner, because I know there are tools out there like Speedtest.net that get down, you know, they've got servers everywhere and they, they can ping your, your mobile phone and tell you right now what you're getting right here in the L O B. So let's, you know, let's double down on getting to the bottom of it for these folks. People in the town of Stratford would appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, we'll do that. And in the interest of time, I'll come back to you on, on your other questions. But very quickly, yes, there will be another D R, D R I round this year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We go to Assemblywoman Kellys now.
Thank you so much for your time. I'm just going to jump right into comments and questions, given the timeframe. I do want to add my voice in concern with respect to broadband. At this point, I do respectfully disagree with that we have 98% coverage. Would love to get that data on how it's collected. And I know there was a bill that was put forward last year that would have had a full assessment, but it was vetoed, which is a bit concerning. And I recommend reviewing Congressman Brindisi's analysis that he did last year that actually shows the lack of coverage in at least the southern tier. And I did with this also want to add my concern about the D O T's perm 75 tax that is significantly hurting broadband expansion. So jumping to my questions, one on childcare, I'm just going to run through the three of them really quickly. One on childcare being so critical for economic recovery. I'd love to see the release right away of the emergency cares aid that was given. It still has not been released. And I'm curious what plan the, the governor has for supporting sufficient subsidies for income qualifying families. That was my first question. My second question, I wanted to ask about the N I S T A R program that uses state monies to leverage big federal science grants and helps to create and keep high tech jobs in New York. I know I saw that the, the budget process cut that funding from 6 million to 5 million. So I just wanted to hear your comments on that. And lastly, the 76 West Business Competition, very important to my district. And up until now, it's been running through N I S C R D A. But I understand that the idea was that E S D was going to fund its continuation through 2023 and get funded through the Upstate Revitalization Fund. Is this still the plan? So those are my questions.
Okay, I think, well, let me start with your, your, your first question. And thank you, those are all, you know, very important questions. And let's, let's get to childcare, because childcare is, you know, is critical. And, you know, if, if anything, COVID exposed the need for even, you know, even better support of childcare across the state. You know, E S D will, will, will be using its, instead of tax credits to be able to support childcare, both in terms of a facility and in terms of an, an ongoing, and in terms of an ongoing program. And that obviously complements the governor's larger program, you know, to, to invest to reduce the burdens of parent subsidy copays and also provide startups in areas where you can't do, do childcare. In the interest of time, in terms of New York Star, you know, Pravina's on, we have lots of information. Let, let, let us come back to you on both, you know, 76 West Competition. I was there, great competition. We want that to, you know, we've, we've loved seeing, you know, all the successes come out of that. So let's come back to you on those other two questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we go to Assemblywoman Onceford. Is Jennifer here?
Hello, thank you so much.
Yes.
I want to pick up on childcare as well. You know, I think that this pandemic has really highlighted for us something that we have long known, which is that childcare is an economic issue. So I'd like to ask if E S D has any programs, either existing or in the works, to help promote access to childcare and to support businesses that are providing childcare access as a benefit? To that end, I also want to ask about whether access to childcare is a criterion in the R E D C project assessment process in each region? And then I have a second C F A question, which is whether you are evaluating sustainability and environmental justice as part of that evaluation process?
Sure, you know, I just responded to some of the ways that childcare is being handled by E S D. I'm going to have Kevin Yunus come and provide more, more color on, on that. But suffice to say, I agree with you. We've, we've seen some of the, the issues with respect to childcare. Just to, you know, you know, repeat the, we're going to use some of our Excelsior tax credits to ensure that we can support businesses as they build, you know, childcare facilities or support programs. This is also an area where there's other agencies and other programs that are, are, are working on this. And then last year, this was, last year or two years, two years ago, Kevin, Kevin will remind me, will, will share, childcare was an important focus of, of, of the R E D Cs. So Kevin, perhaps you can add some more flavor to that. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Eric, thanks, Assemblywoman. To Eric's point, the proposal this year is to include Excelsior credits, make credits available for childcare provision. So, you know, currently the Excelsior program does jobs, investment. We'd also include, I may have the numbers backwards, maybe 5% refundable tax credit on capital investments related to childcare and then 6% related to operating costs for childcare. And I, maybe I got the six and the five backwards, but, so yeah, we're, we're doing that. And I think clearly the regional councils always talk about childcare. It's something that they've been focused on for years. A number of projects have been advanced through that process. And I would expect, you know, given all the things we've heard over the last year, to see that to be a pretty strong priority in the regional councils this year.
Thank you. And can you also speak to the sustainability and environmental justice component of C F A, of C F As, whether that's being considered?
Eric, I can jump in a little bit on that one if you want. I would, our focus this, there's two things that, that I think we've been very involved in. You know, the ongoing C L C P A, bringing that up online. But E S D, last year, we advanced a, what we call the green tax credit. So essentially a much more generous tax credit, it's kind of like Excelsior again, but much more generous associated with green investments. And then, as you know, there's a lot of these facilities, electricity generation facilities that have closed down and the impacts on communities. We had a fund we've been administering for a number of years and that has, I think, significant new funding added this year to continue helping communities transition to, to, you know, green energy production. Maybe they lost a facility that was a strong economic development provider in their, in their region.
Great, thank you, Kevin.
Is Assemblyman Durso still here? I know he had to go to a committee meeting. I think I skipped him by error.
I'm still here.
Actually, as ranker, you get five minutes. You don't have to use it all.
Thank you, Chairperson, and I'm sorry, Commissioner, they gave me five full minutes, but I'll, I'll try and make it as quick as possible.
Thank you.
So I'd really just more, a, a couple of comments, I'll just roll through in regards to a couple of issues everybody else spoke about. One was being broadband. Obviously, I think, I think it's a very important initiative, even here on Long Island. We still have areas that don't receive it properly. They may actually count as saying that they receive broadband access, but whether it's through satellite or, or means that they, they don't have a proper connection. So obviously, when you're doing work like that, where you need broadband access for it and then not having the proper connections, it makes it a little harder on them. And, and also in certain areas that don't have access to more than one company. There, we have two major carriers here on the island for broadband. And some areas, even specifically talking about Babylon or even Brookhaven areas, only have access to one company. So therefore, the competition level as far as pricing goes through the roof for them. So I think obviously pushing to get access to both companies in those areas would be helpful, not only for businesses, but for students that would be home or people that are working from home going forward. Also speaking about other things everybody else have touched on, obviously, Ms. Luntzer was just talking about childcare, facilitated childcare here on Long Island. We want to be including that, obviously, any monies that go forward. I believe Assemblywoman Kimberly Jean-Pierre had sent a letter to the governor asking for funding for those childcare initiatives here on Long Island. Obviously, small businesses here need help. You know, here on, in, in Massapeacon Park where I'm from, we were actually stuck in a yellow zone for a number of months and a lot of our small businesses suffered. So obviously, anything we could do going forward to help them, I think, would be huge. Going to a couple of issues, tourism here on Long Island. I know that there was a small cut, and well, any cuts not good, but I hate to say small. But looking around, 1.36 million for the local tourism matching grants. You know, obviously, again, talking about small businesses here on Long Island, whether it's hotels, motels, some of our businesses out east and local businesses, we count, believe it or not, a lot on tourism here on Long Island. Whether it's in the Bay Area, where we go and visit Teddy Roosevelt's home or onto Fire Islands or, I mean, Long Island, we have a lot to offer. So being able to have those tourism matching funds going forward, I think would be helpful to the small businesses and the tourism businesses in general here on the island. And I know I'm just throwing a lot at you, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I get it all in.
Understood.
Obviously, and then just speaking about it, and I know it's, it's, it's kind of an all encompassing thing, but you, you spoke about the governor's workforce, workforce initiative. Obviously, going forward, here on Long Island, New York State, New York City, obviously, infrastructure, having skilled labor is helpful. And, and that goes along with everything, whether it's, we need broadband access for students and businesses, whether we need, you know, and that obviously includes internet and computers and these small businesses and having these skilled labors going forward. Some of the cuts to some of our B O C's programs here in New York State, the consolidation of the funds, I think is only going to hurt students and people going forward, learning those skilled labors, skilled trades, excuse me. And trades doesn't mean anymore as so much as someone like myself who went to carpentry school and learned to bang a hammer and nails. Now it goes into computer technology. You know, as, as we were speaking about before, whether it's robotics, whether all the way down to some of our small businesses with, like, my daughter wants to be a baker. So being, having those minority and women owned businesses opening up in the future, we need to train them going forward. And what better way to do it early in their careers than in high school? And showing them that there is other programs available to them going forward. It's not just about, you know, not, I, I wasn't going to school to be a doctor. It wasn't happening for me. But I would like some of our students going forward to have those options and realize that those options are available to them. But putting the onus on the school districts and making them make up that difference in funding going forward is only going to hurt our students and give them less access to those programs. So I think to build that government, the, the workforce initiative, we could start in those programs in the schools and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go to Assemblyman Santa Barbara.
Okay, I think, I think I'm on, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. You're okay, Angel.
Great, thank you to both chairs and thank you, Commissioner, for your testimony responding to all these questions today. I know there's been, I've been, I've been, I've had my hand up for quite some time, but people ahead of me have also talked about the broadband issue and I wanted to bring that up again. I know my colleague, Carrie Warner, and Billy Jones, and a number of other members have brought up the issue of broadband. The, you know, I, I have to also respectfully disagree with the 98% number. We spoke to the broadband office about the way this is calculated. And I don't know if it's a mapping issue or if it's just other calculation. But I can tell you, in my district, I represent Montgomery County, Albany County, Burnin' Oaks, those, I just got a letter from the supervisor talking about the lack of broadband there and why so much money was invested in New York, new New York broadband. And they still waiting, they're still waiting for service. But in addition to that, there are pockets in these rural communities that are still, you know, not able to do online learning. Businesses that weren't able to make the transition during this time to online, sell their products online, and they've had to close their doors because of that. So it's a real issue. I'd like to, going forward, I'd like you to explore options of funding and, funding another round of broadband that could address these rural communities. So my first question is, the broadband mapping, I think, is key. And I understand that's going to be in the budget. Do we have your support to keep that in the budget? Because if it doesn't end up in there, we're going to be back to square one. And I know I only have three minutes, so I'm going to move on to a couple of other topics. In 2019, upstate cellular gap coverage, Task Force was formed by the governor. There was a lot of gaps in cell phone coverage in these rural communities, a lot of them in upstate New York. There was an effort to identify how we're going to address those gaps, very key to economic development as well, being able to have a lot, almost everybody uses cell phones at this point, and these gaps in, in service really cause a lot of problems. Do, do you have, are you have any plans to continue that or push for that in this year's budget as well? And then overall, rural resources in general, you know, our rural communities have provided us quite a bit, an adequate food supply, energy. They also are going to be key to, to rebuilding our economy. I'd like to know what your efforts are to support these rural communities when it comes to farming, food, energy, water, recreation. These are all key components that have made our state thrive in the past. It will be very important and to, to our success in rebuilding our economy. I'd like to know what your efforts are to support them as far as economic development.
In eight seconds.
You know, thank you for those important questions. I think in the interest of time, probably best that we follow up with you. But, but in, in terms of your reference to the broadband numbers, I mean, you know, we, we have everything validated by third party providers. We're happy to go through, through with you. They validate our 98% success to date and our 99.9% commitment on the, that, on that program is a product of the work that the group has done over the last five years. But again, given the interest of time, I'm happy to come back and talk to you about it, sir.
Great, so we go to Assemblyman Bronstein. Is, is Ed here?
I'm trying to connect. It looks like he is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, my question is, hold on. We're currently operating on doing eviction moratorium in the state. Do we have plans for how we're going to address the fallout when that eviction moratorium expires and businesses are asked to pay back rent? Is there a plan in place for that?
So, you know, yes, there's the, the commercial eviction moratorium that's in place right now. Let's, you know, and, and that has been done, you know, given all the challenges that businesses have been done and to, you know, enable businesses to at least, as they're trying to build back their businesses, to at least know that they can do so from the locations that, that they're in. You know, we at, at E S D have done a number of different things to support the, you know, to, to, to support that. You know, we know with our lease assistance program, it's, it's enabled small businesses to work with their landlords to figure out a mutual resolution. You know, to that, we, we understand. We understand that when, you know, there's a balance and there's larger implications to the economy when, you know, somewhere along, somewhere along that chain, someone's not getting paid, there's an effect on that. And so we've used our resources to help figure out how to reach amicable resolutions in those situations. We've also used our New York Forward Loan Fund to be able to help small businesses and help small landlords getting through this. But, you know, you raise, you know, a very good question. I think ultimately, federal assistance, you know, will be, you know, will be, you know, will be critical. And, you know, some of the complexities of dealing with those issues are certainly outside the scope of what ESD does, so I think there's other agencies will help to, you know, help to look at that, that issue. But, you know, no doubt, COVID has created many new challenges that we will need to face as an economy, and that will be, that certainly will be one of the challenges that we'll have to address.
Okay, so, yeah, I just wanted to bring it up because I think it's going to be a problem sooner rather than later, and we need to engage the federal government about stimulus funding, and we need to be ready to have a plan in place for when that moratorium expires, that we can provide support for those businesses so they're not just immediately evicted for months of background. So my time is up, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, I have a question on behalf of our higher education chair, Deborah Glick wasn't, had to leave for committee meeting. So in terms of the Regional Economic Development Councils, there, if we're correct, that there were nine rounds totaling over, you know, just under $7 billion, 6.9 billion, how much of that, if you know, has gone to institutions of higher learning, higher education institutions in our state?
So I'm not sure, but I can give you the info, you know, we can come back and provide the information, you know, for that. I mean, $7 billion have gone through the REDCs, we're talking about 8,000 programs, a net return of $18 billion, so clearly highly successful, but I'd have to go back with, you know, given the specifics of 8,000 programs, I know many supported academic initiatives, but, you know, instead of, you know, spending the time now, let us go back and provide some of that, you know, 8,000 programs is a lot.
Sure, sure. No, that's fine. I would have been surprised if you actually knew the number. And when you share that, we'll share that with the committee meetings, the committee members in the Senate. So now I just, so now I'm gonna, that was it for me. You've had a lot of questions. We're going to go to Assemblyman Bronson for his second round, and we'll see if any of the other chairs need a second round after Assemblyman Bronson.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner.
For five, excuse me, Harry, just one second, for five minutes on the clock for the Assemblymen.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner. Thank you for sticking with us for all morning and into the afternoon, we do appreciate it. You know, a number of colleagues have talked about the small businesses and in particular, as we often refer to as our Main Street retail and stores. And these, one of my colleagues just brought up rents. And first of all, have you seen any analysis or has your department looked at, you know, what commercial rents are in arrears at this point? And then, second of all, I'm very concerned that the proposal doesn't really seem to address that. We have a moratorium. You know, you've mentioned a couple of times about the 50 million recovery program, but those are, those are tax credits. Those will kick in next year when they're filing their taxes. It's not going to help them survive over the next two, three, six months to a year. And then I'm also concerned that the New York Forward Loans Fund, $100 million program, and only 40 million of it is out the door. So my question is this, is what plans can we come up with? I know it's somewhat dependent on federal stimulus dollars, but we have got to get rent relief to commercial businesses. And the programs that are out there, the various recovery loans, the recurring loans that were in the programs in the past, the tax credits that are being suggested, that's not going to help these small businesses survive. What can we look for in the future from your department on how we're going to address these arrears?
You know, I'm also going to turn to Pravina Ragavan, who heads our small business. And, you know, thank you for that question. It is undoubtedly a very, you know, important question and important area that we need to stay attuned to. You know, on a high level, you know, we've discussed the Lease Assistance Partnership Program, New York Forward Loan Fund. We've also talked about, we also did raise the, you know, Raise the Bar Recovery Fund for restaurants, we have the recovery funds for restaurants and small businesses, you know, we have a whole host of programs. Pravina, maybe you want to also talk about the way our programs complement, you know, some of the questions that are being asked.
Well, if I may just interrupt, though, I mean, those funds relate to tax credits. They are not going to be the relief that our small businesses need now. And then I'm also concerned that the New York Forward Loans Fund, less than 50% of it's been released. So where do we stand on getting the other $60 million out? Not that I think loans are going to be the way to address this, because I think we really have to have grants out there for the relief. So, you know, the tax credits thing, with all due respect, I just don't think that's going to help our businesses survive over the next months.
Yeah, no, I hear you. Look, in the case of restaurants, those tax credits are fast-tracked, so it, you know, it helps to get the, helps get money out the door. The raising the New York State Bar, that was $3 million, that, you know, went pretty quickly. So those are examples of the way we're getting money out the door. On the New York Loan Fund, you know, again, this was created at a time when business couldn't access a lot of the PPP monies. What we've done is we've continued to expand eligibility, you know, for that. It used to be if you had PPP funds, you couldn't access it, now you can. It used to be, you know, smaller limitation on employees, we've expanded that as well. So, you know, I hear you, we are looking at different ways that we can get capital into these, you know, into these small businesses. The Lease Assistance Program, you know, it helps. So it's not just one program, it's a multifaceted approach with both loans, with, you know, with technical assistance, with partnerships, with tax credit. So, you know, this is, you know, an economic crisis that's been unprecedented. So we're, you know, using as many of the different tools that we have to try and address this situation.
All right, I appreciate that, Commissioner. I think we need to throw in the mix grant funds available for our small mom-and-pop stores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that is, there are no more questions from the assemblies, I'm going to throw it back to Senator Kruger, I'm not sure if there's any Senate questions left.
I see no hands, I'm not even giving people a chance to raise their hand. I want to thank our guests from ESBC, ESD, oh, you have too many names, you have ESD, you have ESBC, you have Urban, whatever. Thank you for being with us today. I think you have a number of homework assignments from a number of us, so if you can just get those back to both Alina and I, we will make sure to put them up for everyone to take a look at and to learn more, even after this hearing is over for you. With that, I'm going to call up our next testifier, Rowan Distino, Commissioner, New York State Office of General Services, and I see her with us already. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good morning, Rowan. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Chairwoman Kruger, thank you, Chairwoman Weinstein, thank you so much.
Thank you. You have 10 minutes on the clock.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairs Kruger and Weinstein, and ranking members Omar and Rah, and distinguished members of the committees. I'm pleased to be here today to provide testimony about the Office of General Services. As all of us know, the past year has been challenging for all residents of New York State as well as the world. COVID-19 has changed the way we live, work, and interact with one another. At OGS, the pandemic has presented unprecedented demands on our services and our time. I would like to offer you some details on the efforts of OGS that we employed to support the state's ongoing response to the pandemic. Competing in a global market where essential supplies suddenly became scarce, OGS was able to focus the full weight of our expertise to get New York State to the front of the line. OGS facilitated the sourcing, ordering, tracking, delivery coordination, and reconciliation of more than 200 million items of durable medical equipment and PPE. We partnered in multi-agent, agency efforts to contract for products and services for test sites, alternative care facilities, agency PPE and vaccines, while supporting local government sourcing through statewide contracts. OGS was also responsible for the financial processing required to secure the state's PPE and hospital build-out inventory. We worked with docs to support the New York State Clean Hand Sanitizer Program. OGS managed warehouse operations for storage, distribution, inventory, and delivery of New York State Clean Hand Sanitizer, PPE, and other supplies. We accepted the responsibility for three alternative care facilities from the Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA, and they continue to be operationally maintained by OGS. We also provided real estate services to establish laboratory, warehouse call center, and COVID-19 testing and vaccination sites. OGS also delivered mailing and printing support for the Department of Labor and the Office of Temporary Disability Assistance, provided contracting support for the Javits Center operations, as well as broadcast support for daily COVID briefings. We were also responsible for the development and maintenance of New York Forward and COVID-19 websites in conjunction with ITS. We created return-to-work plans for state office buildings to ensure employees were aware of and following the COVID protocols, and we established enhanced cleaning procedures and air filtration. My agency staff also participated in many COVID-related volunteer efforts and continued to do so. As New York implemented its phased reopening and employees began returning to work at OGS-owned and managed buildings, including the Legislative Office Building, our facilities team increased the frequency of cleaning and disinfection of high-density and high-touch areas. We installed signage, reminding people of COVID protocols. In addition to our COVID-related activities, OGS continues delivering the services and support our customers depend on us to provide. OGS provides enterprise-wide operational services and programs that allow other state agencies, local governments, not-for-profits, businesses, and citizens to focus on and fulfill their own diverse missions. We maintain and manage 20 million square feet of state-owned space and leases of 11.8 million square feet of office, warehouse, and other required space throughout the state. OGS provides architectural engineering, contracting, and construction management services to over 50 state-agency clients. Additionally, OGS provides vital emergency response and recovery support following floods, fires, weather disasters, and more, and we do this 24/7, 365 days a year. We manage a portfolio of approximately 1,500 centralized contracts for commodity services and technology, and that represents over 1.6 billion in spend for state agencies alone. We also provide transactional back-office administration services for nearly all the executive agencies for finance and human resources, and administer the Service Disabled Veteran-Owned Business Program. In addition, OGS delivers support services for agencies including fleet management, printing and mail services, food distribution, warehousing, and surplus property disposition. We aggregate and manage the purchase of energy resources and insurance. We also administer the visitor experience at the State Capitol and Empire State Plaza, and we issue easements and grant licenses and permits for the use of uplands and lands underwater. Our procurement services group continues to lead the way in new and innovative procurements. We maintain the largest information technology catalog contracts in the country. OGS trains government employees on contracts and businesses and how to do business with the state. We maintain an electronic catalog of over 10 million items available for purchase and facilitate the employment of individuals with disabilities. OGS is responsible for the administration and daily operations of 176 state-owned buildings and structures. Since the beginning of this administration, the agency has performed more than 1,200 capital projects and over 3,200 preventive maintenance and rehabilitation improvement projects. Continuing our pledge from previous years to meet the governor's clean energy goals, NIPA and OGS have begun projects to replace old and obsolete equipment at the Sheridan-Hollow Steam Plant and the Empire State Plaza Chill Plant. We are also in the process of establishing a 38-megawatt solar photovoltaic project at the former Ariskini Airport, which the state now owns. This project would generate over 50% of the electricity used at the Empire State Plaza. In conjunction with other agency partners, OGS continues to employ the Employee Zero Emissions Vehicle Charging Pilot Program in targeted OGS parking facilities throughout downtown Albany and the Hiram and campus. In addition to managing space, we also build it and conduct project permitting with the OGS Design and Construction Team, which serves state agencies including docs, OMH, state police, DMNA, and Ag and Markets. Design and construction typically responds to 300 vital agency construction emergency declarations each year. OGS is also participating in the Governor's Ready Program on Lake Ontario. In addition to serving on the Ready Committee and advancing multiple projects for the initiative, OGS is directly managing the 15 million, excuse me, 15 million navigation dredging initiative at up to 20 navigation channels and harbors. Also, we do an excellent job growing businesses. We are very proud to say that we have exceeded the governor's MWBE utilization goal of 30%. Since 2011, MWBEs have received an excess of 842 million from contracts associated with our design and construction group alone. Our success in implementing the Service Disabled Veteran-Owned Business Act continues. We now have approximately 855 certified businesses in a wide range of categories from construction and financial services to commodities, providing an exceptional visitor experience is a source of pride for the OGS team. Since 2011, OGS has managed nearly 10,000 events and more than half a million people have taken tours of the Capitol, the Executive Mansion, and visited the Corning Tower Observation Deck. Efforts to prevent the spread of COVID required us to pivot to a successful virtual visit online, and we provided majestic tours of the halls of our Capitol in both the Empire State Plaza and Harlem Art Collections. Instead of our usual Martin Luther King Junior Day observance at the Empire State Plaza, we honored Dr. King with a one-hour pre-produced broadcast that for the first time aired on PBS stations statewide. We also reopened the Plaza's Visitor Center, we began selling New York tough face masks to help stop the spread. As Commissioner, I am honored to lead the hard-working and dedicated team at the Office of General Services. Their service to the people of New York State never wavers and be counted on at all times. Thank you for listening to my testimony, and I'm happy to take all of your questions.
Thank you very much. And Assembly, I do not think the Senate has any questions, so I'm going to pass it over to you.
So let's go first to Assemblyman Zabrowski.
Thanks, Chair Weinstein, and good afternoon, Commissioner, great to see you. I only have three minutes, so I'm going to just jump into one area that falls under my purview of Governmental Operations Committee, the Public Protection and General Government Budget, Part BB, the New York Medical Supply Act. Three questions with that. Is this intended to supersede any of our current programs, Preferred Source, MWBE, Service to Disabled Veterans, or anything with corrections industries?
We will continue, Assemblymen, and it's good to see you, too. We will continue to work at providing the Preferred Source as well. work at providing the Preferred Source as well as all of our MWBE and SDVOB. We are in process of putting many of the new state-supported vendors on contract. We would like to do business with people in the state of New York and make sure that this does not supersede the Preferred Source Program or any other program that we have in place.
Thanks. So purchases under this program, if it becomes law, will they be noted or highlighted within the current sort of procurement disclosures that are done?
The Medical Supply Act is a partnership with ESD, and we will be working with them. They incentivized a number of businesses in New York State, and we will be working with them to put them on our state contracts so that whenever our centralized contracts are used by state agencies or any of our authorized users, those products will be there for people to purchase from New York State incentivized companies.
Okay.
And again, Assemblymen, it will be in concert with the Preferred Sources and all of our MWB and SDVOB.
Right. Okay, and so lastly, what is the process? There's a process within the language that allows an agency, if it's not in the, I think it's the best interest of the public or, you know, some standard like that, that they don't have to follow that Medical Supply Act.
It's form, function, and utility determines whether a Preferred Source partner can meet their requirements.
I meant with the New York Medical Supply, with that sort of purchasing, there's like a section in that that says an agency head, you know, if it's not in the best interest. There's some broad language there, and I was just trying to get a sense of like, what would be the process for that? Do you envision?
It would be an internal process, and it would be documented as to how they made their decision.
Okay, so you do envision some sort of documented, like something filed with it?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
My time's expired. Thanks Commissioner.
Thank you, Assemblymen.
So we go to Assemblyman Byrne has a question.
Yes, thank you Commissioner, and my question is a bit similar to my colleague, so this may be a short question about the Medical Supplies Act. And it seems pretty clear in the language in the budget that there is some flexibility if a state agency is unable to get the supply needed from within the United States, that there is for the department head or agency head to pass a waiver. And I think the intent behind this is very good, but I just want to get that on the record and confirm, because obviously I think some of the reason we're doing this is because of the supply chain issue. We want to incentivize more products that are made here in the United States and in New York State. But should there be a massive need that goes beyond the available supply, we should be able to have everything available to us. And there is, you know, I know some concern's been expressed to me about the in-whole or in-part portions, if certain medical supplies are in part made by, you know, entities outside of the country or outside of the state, would they be able to have that waiver as well?
We, flexibility without limiting the ability to respond, we will, the whole idea in working with ESD on this issue is that we will be incentivizing more people in New York State, more vendors in New York State, to be able to provide these products and manufacture these products in New York State. But that will not limit our ability to go out and get what we need as we did during the COVID pandemic.
Perfect. That's my, that was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do we see any other hands up, Colleen?
No, we do not have anyone else.
Okay, thank you. Well then Commissioner, thank you so much for being with us. Don't take it personally, you're not nearly as controversial as the prior Commissioner. You've just run an agency that seems to do its job, so we appreciate that very much, and we'll check in with you sometime soon.
You sure can. Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, bye-bye.
All right. Our next speaker is the New York State Council on the Arts, Mara Manis, Executive Director. And I think I see her in a box. And you're welcome to start, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you so much. Chairs Kruger and Weinstein and members of the committee, thank you for the invitation to address you today. I am Mara Manis, the Executive Director of NISC, on behalf of our Chair, Catherine Nichols, our board members, our board members, our staff, and our field, we are deeply grateful for the governor and legislature's continued support and recognition of NISC's critical role in our state's vital arts sector. In a year of unprecedented devastation to our sector, our grantees' unyielding dedication to their work ensures the survival of the arts as we confront the dual pandemics of COVID-19 and systemic racism together. Pre-COVID, the state's arts sector constituted 7.5% of our economy and generated $120 billion employing over 460,000 workers. The arts are a significant driver of tourism, as we all know, and pre-COVID, our grantees reported 150 million visitors. Every dollar that supports the arts is a critical investment in the health of our economy and a significant driver of our state's recovery. NISC is immensely grateful to the governor for his decision to preserve our FY21 grant-making budget at level funding. As an agency, we have pivoted over the last year to meet the increasingly dire needs of our grantees, and I will provide further detail shortly. NISC's core focus is grant-making to nonprofit organizations and artists. For FY2021, we prioritize flexible general operating expenses as well as support for small and medium-sized organizations and underrepresented communities. We moved quickly to bring all of our FY21 grant recommendations to NISC Council Meeting in February. The applicants receive notification letters on February 12. In this round, NISC awarded 1,900 grants totaling $40 million to 1,200 organizations and 150 artists. Of that amount, $28 million went to organizations with budgets less than $3 million. Our FY21 application deadline was 4:00 p.m. on March 12, which was the same week that everything shut down. We immediately gathered responses from our grantees through survey and were able to develop and execute FY20 contract flexibilities, including extensions and modifications. To date, we have approved over 200 of those requests and are allowing the same modifications for FY21 contracts. So those FY2020 contracts started on January 1, FYI. In April, NISC received NEA CARES funding, and we executed two funding opportunities in under three months, providing $10,000 grants to 49 organizations and $1,000 grants to 40 non-New York City-based artists to our partnership with NIPA. NISC held all of our review panels virtually in August and September, and the panelists were charged with evaluating the applicant's ability to deliver on their mission. NISC also led three reorgs of our website, the first to identify timely emergency resources, the second to create a space for arts online, and the third to showcase grantee reopenings and resources. We also created the NISC Presents webinar series in May, and we've held six webinars reaching over 3,500 people and covering such topics as fundraising the time of COVID and moving your mission online. As of February 2021, the total financial impact of COVID on the New York State arts sectors estimated a loss of more than $338 million. Additionally, the estimated loss in attendance totals 13 million people, and employee reductions total 47,000 full-time arts workers. This does not include contract workers, which we all know are the bedrock of our, of the arts workforce. The state's reopening guidelines for low-wit's arts were released on June 23, and some museums began reopening over the summer. However, many are operating in a much lower capacity than the 25% requirement set by the state. We recognize that a majority of the art sector is still shut down, and that performing arts are contending with a minimum of 18 months of revenue loss. While a hybrid model of virtual and person programming may be viable in the future, there's no current data to suggest that digital programming is creating a significant revenue to contend with the COVID-related losses. Here are a few examples of grantees that have pivoted to embrace the challenges of last year. MOC, also called the Museum of Chinese in the Americas, in Manhattan was severely damaged in a devastating fire in January. When faced with both COVID and the fire recovery, MOC launched a virtual new exhibition, Trial by Fire, and also a crowdsourced social media storytelling project. To date, MOC's digital programming has been viewed by over 65,000 people. Bel Air Hispanico is the nation's renowned Latinx dance organization, and in 2020, they launched a wildly successful BU Nigos virtual program featuring dance classes and watch parties with company members, and so far, these have been viewed by over 160,000 people to date. Moving to the western part of our state, Art Park Niagara is a 150-acre park and cultural institution, and that was one of the first to reopen. They held 80 socially-distanced events, including artist-led tour and a parking lot mural project. It's worth noting, while they are reporting an 80%, that they're reporting an 80% loss in revenue due to cancellation of their regular large-scale events. Many grantees reimagine their mission through non-art support as well, such as Jack Arts in Brooklyn, which provided 120 individuals and families with food assistance weekly, and Dream Yard in the Bronx, which served over 100,000 free meals, bag groceries, and produce. I'm pleased to share updates on our vital cross-sector partnerships, which I've mentioned in previous testimonies. We relaunched our Creative Aging Initiative and partnered with NiSOFa on February 22 after being delayed due to COVID. The programming will now be offered virtually, enabling a much broader reach across the state. Our partnership with Docs, also called Creativity Works NYAS, continues to create, to support creative programming for justice-involved youth through hands-on art-making. So this was initially launched in Hudson and the Adronic Facilities. Those have been converted back to adult facilities, and we are relaunching the program at Brookwood and Columbia, which are sites that are now under the purview of OCSF. Arts programming will also continue at the Ulster Facility, Adult Facility, and we are talking, and talked with Docs about expanding arts programming to other facilities. Our joint arts calendar in partnership with I Love New York, which has reached 300,000 visitors with a single submission, this year we modified that to include digital events as well. Thank you again for the opportunity to share the impact and reach of the arts in New York State and NISC's role in supporting the transformative work of our grantees. We are so privileged to represent the tens of thousands of New York artists and cultural workers from the nonprofit sector. The investment we make in arts delivers an incredible return as a driver of health of our workforce, our economy, and our people, all while maintaining our state's position as a global leader in arts and culture, attracting millions of tourists each year from around the world. Arts funding is so vital to our recovery, and the arts remain determined to reimagine, rebuild, and renew New York. I now welcome your questions.
I think we're going to go to Assemblyman Carroll.
Yes.
Thank you Chair Weinstein.
Yeah.
And thank you Executive Director Manis for speaking to us in that presentation. I wonder if you have any information on those art organizations, especially small and medium-sized, that applied for grants last year prior to COVID, and whether those organizations still are functioning and operational today?
So the small and medium-sized organizations that we have provided grants to are a couple things to mention, two points to mention here. One is that if they have closed down, they're required to let us know. We've had very, very few notifications of permanent closures so far. I think this, obviously, the story is still unraveling. However, we have granted to every organization the ability to extend and modify their grants, and we have, and that is, those modification requests are continuing to come in. And so, and those encompass anything from moving your programming online to extending the deadline, obviously, of work that was going to be presented in person. But so far, we don't have any data on complete permanent closures.
Two quick follow-ups. Does NISC, has it or doesn't have any opinions on converting former office space in Manhattan or other areas that may be now unused or underutilized to convert that to studio space, performance space? And in addition to that, has NISC been able to help arts organizations work through insurance claims? Many arts organizations have called my office, talking about being rejected for business interruption insurance or other insurance that they have had. They had paid premiums for years and years and years, and of course, if they were able to get those claims paid out, it would make it much easier for them to begin operations again when it is safe.
So one of the wonderful benefits of being a NISC grantee is that we offer technical assistance actually through Nikon, the New York Council for Arts Nonprofit, or for nonprofits. And so that technical assistance is available to any one of our grantees, whether you get general operating support or project support, and they are helping, they're able to provide assistance and guidance to anyone facing this kind of situation, any entity, and they're also providing a lot of guidance around, let's, for instance, the PPP application. And in terms of your question about storefront spaces, so there are a couple of our grantees that are actually, one of them's called Chisama, and they actually do activate storefront spaces for artists' work and both exhibition and work. We, of course, are in support of any kind of construct that's going to support the return of the arts in a healthy way to the state and after this devastating year. I think we have to acknowledge that the devastation of this year is still not over.
Thank you.
Thank you Assemblymen. We're going to send it back to the Senate now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you Executive Director. So when I reviewed the governor's proposal, and there were a number of new, I guess, grant programs for the arts, or at least one particularly, but it was for fairly large companies of spending at least $1 million of production. Now, I'm from New York City, so when I see those kinds of numbers, I say, oh, they're going to underwrite Broadway shows at the major Broadway theaters and at the major musical, you know, sites we have, Lincoln Center, Carnegie Hall. And yet, the groups that we don't know whether they will survive and be able to come back are the smaller groups. And certainly, the history of the arts in New York City has been smaller community-based groups off Broadway, the public theater, you know, all these different venues, but it didn't appear that we were offering them anything. When I raised it with the ESDC Commissioner, not at the hearing this morning, but at a previous conversation the other day, he said, well, that program is set up so that if money is repaid or they hit a certain mark, then that money will go to you for further distribution to smaller groups. So can you help me understand that? Because I was a little confused.
So I think that Eric and I are in discussion about how we can further collaborate, and there hasn't been a long history of that, I think historically, but we are looking forward to working together this year, most specifically. I don't have the detail on the program you're talking about, but I'm happy to revert after, when I get more information. I will say that, to your point, there are 300, we know that there are 300 small nonprofit theaters in New York City, for instance, and that they, and the small organizations are really the bedrock of our, of our sector, and NISC does everything we can to support those, including the kind of pivots we made this year with our funding, specifically how 28 million of our 40-plus million went to organizations with budgets of less than $3 million, and many of those are much, much, much smaller, you know, budgets of half a million dollars.
But is it a surprise to you when I say, he said that some of this money actually is supposed to head to you and your universe of groups, when the companies, I guess, that are larger, are more successful with their productions because of the money they got from the state? It almost sounds like it's a, you know, we're, we become shareholding producers of those shows, and the ones that do well, we get money back except it goes to you, which I'm not opposed to at all, but I didn't see that language anywhere in the budget. So I wanted to just double-check that I was not in the budget. So I wanted to just double check that I was not obscuring him.
Yes, I haven't been a part of that conversation, but I'm looking forward to to that.
Please, and please let me know what you learn, because I would hate to think that, I'm not saying he would intentionally mislead me, but I would hate to imagine that I heard it wrong, because that's what I heard.
Sure, we'll get back to you, Robert. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Helene, from the Assembly?
Yes, we do. We have our Chair of Science and Technology, so Assemblyman Otis for five minutes. Actually, he can have ten minutes if he needs it, because he's the chair.
Five minutes.
He'll only use five. He's very concise.
I'll be less than five, but thank you for all the good work at the Council of the Arts and, you know, you've heard from some of the other questions. We're very concerned about the small arts organizations that may or may not survive. Just curious, what did we do last year with the decentralization grants? Did they not go out the door? What, what money flowed and didn't flow last year?
So last year, you mean beginning January first of the last year?
Or beginning April, April first to, you know, the current, the current year?
Yeah. So all of our deck sites have been receiving funding. As you know, our, the budgets were on pause this year. And so we're able to distribute all of those grants and notifications by February, and those contracts are dated January first. So there has been, there, there's no break in commitment from NISC to our deck, to our deck sites.
Good. So the money's still going to be spent, is what you're saying, even though we had a pause period?
Absolutely.
Okay. So then I would just say, in terms of how you're figuring out your priorities in the upcoming year, I would just ask attention be given to these small arts organizations that that are, again, on the ledge of whether they're going to survive or not, and it may be some state help will allow them to do it. They may need emergency help, not for performance, but to pay, pay some rent or some survival costs. And, and so if you could look at your criteria and maybe look at possible adjustments to deal with the unusual situations we're in, so we don't lose those entities, what they offer and the jobs that they offer. And, and I'm going to yield back my three minutes left. And, but thank you, you're a very important agency, not just for the culture of the state, but for the economy of the state.
Thank you so much. I just, I just want to add that we will be, we are rethinking in probably the most major way our opportunities for FY twenty two, they will be posted in late spring. And we are taking all of these points, including yours, into consideration in developing those new guidelines.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Oh, Helene, you have more?
Yes, I believe Assemblyman O'Donnell was going to be logging in, but I had a question before we check on that. I was just wondering, in terms of the Arts and Cultural Facilities Improvement Program, the status of the program and has, has prior funding improved the renovation, construction, energy efficiency or technology? And do you believe that a competitive process is the most effective way to ensure funding is optimally, regionally distributed?
So just to clarify, are you speaking about the capital support that we got in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen? Great. Okay, so we did receive a total of thirty million dollars, as you well know. And that was allocated and distributed to eighty eight projects. About half of those projects have been completed or near completion at this point. And we expect the rest to be completed next two years. In terms of, you know, we do, we have been hearing from the field that probably the, you know, one of the priority capital needs will be the air filtration systems and upgrade of their HVAC due to the new requirements and the need for more safe reopenings.
Okay, thank you very much. We could just pause for a moment. I was told that Assemblyman O'Donnell was here, so he might just be having some problem logging on. Let me just.
He's currently entering the room.
Okay. So let's.
Aha. He's spotted.
Okay, is he here?
Yes.
Oh, there I see him. Okay. Perfect timing, Danny. The why don't you put five minutes on the clock for Assemblyman O'Donnell to sit here to committee? Danny, go ahead. We're up to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Manus, for being here. I apologize for being late. I wasn't invited to this hearing and therefore I was never sent a link. But now that I'm here, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the importance of the economic impact of the arts. In all my twenty years I've been here, I've been told it's a multiplier. And that if you spend a dollar in state spending, the tax revenue the state receives is seven times that amount of money. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, in fact, I have a, what I hope is a somewhat of an elusive, enlightening example. So first of all, we don't have complete statewide data on the economic impact other than the high level data. But I, we know that the regions are producing their own reports. And I just wanted to read from a report that was developed a few years ago in Mid Hudson. Just a quick home to five hundred organizations generates four hundred and sixty eight million in total economic impact. This was around two thousand and fifteen. It created five thousand jobs. The region reports three point six million cultural visitors, adding almost five hundred million to the area's economy, spending forty million on lodging, one hundred and sixty million on food and beverage, one hundred and thirty four million on retail and one hundred and nineteen million on transportation. Some of NISC's grantees in the region include the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, Storm King and the Boys and Girls Club of Newburgh, as an example.
Thank you, which brings me to the problem that we're in, which is that there are great many needs in this pandemic. And the reality is, if we don't fix the arts funding problem, we won't be able to have the resources going forward to fix the other problems. On a given night, I think there are over ten thousand seats in Lincoln Center. And if the productions are successful, that's ten thousand human beings coming into the west side of Manhattan. They're buying coffee, they're eating dinner, they're having drinks, they're doing all those things. And some of them, in fact, because of the international importance of Metropolitan Opera, are staying in hotels. And those are the big organizations, but the small organizations do the same thing. Glens Falls, New York, my sister and brother-in-law saved Glens Falls by putting in the theater in an old Woolworths in downtown Glens Falls. It was a sleepy, dead town that is now thriving with, with restaurants and bars and everything, all because the Woolworths was converted into a theater. And so in the past, your budget has been miniscule and the attention to the arts has been neglected because people don't think of it as being important. And so we may had a maintenance style budget. We don't need to maintain the arts. We have to rebuild them. And if we don't rebuild them, the economy of the state of New York will not rebuild either. Can you comment on that?
The arts are a critical to recovery. I mean, we, I shared numbers at the top of my presentation about just the, how much they actually exceed, the economy of the arts exceeds the retail, construction and transportation sectors. And, and the employment of workers, you know, in the, is, you know, cannot be understated, you know, almost five hundred thousand. And that definitely include the contract workers, which we all know are just in the tens of thousands or perhaps hundreds, who knows? We don't really know. But I agree, I mean, what we have from all of our grantees is a profound sense of the extent to which they hold up their local economies. And while it's very clear in a place like New York City and the, you know, great numbers of global tourists it attracts, what you said about Glen Falls holds true in almost every, every small town and village that we support, where there's an organization that we support. I mean, if you look at, for instance, Serenac Lake, Pendragon Theater, it's been there for forty years. It's about a hundred and fifty seat theater. They're now going to be the cornerstone of the DRI project in, in Serenac Lake. And they are taking over a former grocery store, abandoned grocery store space. And if you go up to the north country and visit any, visit the Lake Placid, Serenac Lake area, what you see is a high concentration of arts artists as well as arts organizations. And you also see a thriving economy and in a place that perhaps one wouldn't expect it. And what you have, what is clear across all the cities that were born by the Erie, the birth of the Erie Canal, whether it's in Syracuse, Rochester or Buffalo, is while they're no longer perhaps the corporations that there once was, the arts are still a tent pole and a tent pole of the economy in those places. And I believe are really contributing to securing the populations that are, that are there and are attracting and serve also as, as places to attract, you know, new residents. And it's, it's heartening to see that, but it's also, as you said, attention must be paid, to quote Arthur Miller, to what is such a critical part of our sector and, and it's going to be, it's such a giant part of its recovery. But but we, without attention, it's, it's, we are all concerned.
My last question, Ms. Fahey's not present, so in her absence, I'm going to ask a question on her behalf. She has proposed WPA like project for the arts. You and I have talked about workforce development. What do you have to say about how do we get the people who have been employed for the last, unemployed for the last year?
Assemblyman Pat Fahey is here. She has a hand up, so she'll be asking her question, but.
Okay, could you please answer the question?
As the Director could answer the question, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so my, the question about workforce development and it's, and it's critical. Okay, great. So workforce development. So I think the headlines for the art sector this year are income loss by individuals and revenue loss by organizations. And, and in terms of workforce, you know, that is where if we don't get our people back into the jobs, whether they're full time or contract jobs, we're not going to get the organizations open. And let's face it, we all have recognized that there's a longer runway than just getting a vaccine at this point in terms of rebuilding the arts and getting the organizations to be at a state that they were pre-COVID. So in terms of the workforce, you know, we are, we have prioritized workforce investment in our RDC programs. And as I said, I don't know if you heard, but we are going to be completely overhauling our two thousand and twenty two opportunities. And the goals of those are to be streamlined, create greater access and be responsive to a field that we know has been devastated. Workforce is going to be, I believe, a priority. And it's hard, it's hard to say that we're going to be responsive without attending to workforce investment.
Thank you. Senator, do you have anybody? Because we still have.
No, nope. We're giving it to you, the Assembly.
Okay. Does I know we have Pat Fahey, but Assemblywoman Gillio, I know, had, was trying to get her raise her hand. I don't know if she's available.
Yes, I am available and trying to start my video. There you are, having some technical glitches here. But I just have a few questions. And one of them is about the funding for New York State Council of the Arts. You know, the art councils in downtown Riverhead and in the historic districts in my district are struggling. And they are agents of the community and they bring many people to Main Streets with the various events that they have. And the cuts for the funding for the New York State Council of Arts has really put a damper on the Main Street functions that they normally do, not during COVID, but for this year. So I have a question about that, about the New York State Council of Arts and why that funding and was not restored and what we are doing to get it.
Could you, I could use, I'm not aware of the funding that you're speaking of. Do you have any detail on that?
Yes, I heard it from the East End Arts Association in downtown Riverhead. It's New York State Council of the Arts funding.
Yeah. So, so our, our funding is a competitive process. And my understanding is that they, their score did not warrant funding this year.
Okay, so that's just out and they're not going to get it. You can have a seat, try and fix that for me, please. And then there was also the question about hotel tax and if that can be appropriated to any of the arts and tourism.
We would welcome that. I know that that's in place in New Jersey and, and perhaps other states. And obviously, any further dollars to support the arts in this incredibly critical time is, would be, I think we would rejoice.
Yeah. So has there been any requests for some of that hotel tax? Seeing as my, the Chair of my Committee on Tourism just brought that up and saying that the hotels fill up when there are arts, art events that are happening on the Main Streets. So I'm just wondering how we could go about that, pursuing getting some of that hotel tax.
I'm happy to engage in any conversation that anyone wants to have. I haven't been privy to any to date.
Okay, so I will call you after this then. And I'm also curious as to whether or not there's any money for maintenance of trails within the parks. We have a state funded recreation trail that's a ten mile contiguous trail in the former Grumman facility. And I'm just wondering if there is any funding for the maintenance of those trails.
There wouldn't be funding from us, but I believe that's a great question for parks.
Okay, so it had to do with tourism, because we get people from all over New York State and from all over the United States, actually, that come and stay in the hotels and ride this trail. So you're saying that the funding should come from parks and that tourism wouldn't entertain it?
Right. We don't have any, the only time we've had real capital funding is those two years that I mentioned, eighteen and nineteen. We are, we do have an ongoing small facilities capital program, so fifty thousand dollars or lower or less grants that we do offer every year, but that does, it really is, it's really focused on buildings.
Yeah, the capital projects, not for maintenance.
Right, right.
Okay, and then the historic barns.
I'm sorry.
I'm out of time.
Yeah. You can always call us, please.
Thank you for your time. I will. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, and we're going to go, thank you, Senator. We're going to go to Assemblywoman Fahey now, three minutes.
Thank you. And thank you to our colleague Chairman O'Donnell. I, I was listening and I really appreciated him bringing up my temporary jobs bill for, for short term jobs, like modeled after the WPA. I just want to go a little bit further. I also, I also want to echo the concerns of needing from the previous speaker, the need for capital dollars. So thank you, Director Manus. We definitely need to restore those capital dollars that I know were so hard fought for by Chairman O'Donnell and others a couple of years ago. We need to restore that. But can I ask you, the Governor did put out a pop ups initiative. And I understand that that's met with some dismay or disenchantment, if you will, of concerns that that's really not drilling down. And where some of the highest numbers of unemployment, and I've seen numbers as high as fifty percent of of artists and dancers are out of work, but then the gig workers in the artist community, it's, I, again, seeing numbers as high as sixty percent. How do we get at the gig workers and what more than the pop ups? Yes, I have the WPA bill. Yes, I want to see short term jobs, but what, what can we do? And, and then also, if you could, so in addition to, to how we do this, what can we do by the summer? I mean, there, there is a real growing sense of desperation out there.
What can we do by the summer? Is that what your question is?
No, by the summer, yeah, by, you know, to get at this desperation. So if not the pop ups, if that's how do we get it down to, you know, it's not, it's proctors in our area. It's not just re employing the full time staff. It's these gig workers that are, you know, sixty percent unemployed.
Yes, I think the gig worker is incredibly important. And I just want to mention that while we don't have a lot of detail on it, that the Mellon Foundation is, is going to be launching a project initiative called Creatives Rebuild New York. It's going to bring, it's going to bring employment to artists and support for organizations who employ those artists. And it's also, I believe, going to provide other kinds of income support for artists. So those details are forthcoming. And so stay tuned. And as soon as we have those, we obviously will be sharing those widely. That is one thing, you know, we operate on a, we provide grants on a annual cycle, NISC. So our grant portal usually opens in January. It's going to be opening in the spring. We make our grants through the year, but the contracts start the following year. And what we have, what we are going to do, which we haven't finalized, but we're going to be offering a small recovery fund. And we should be announcing that in the next month, about, about a million point four. And we should be announcing that in the next month, about about a million point four. And and we're going to probably prioritize small organizations, but we haven't finalized those guidelines yet. And we're going to model it very much on our NEA cares opportunity, which we would have gotten actually out in a couple of months, and that was just a four question, you know, four-part questionnaire, super short, super accessible, prioritize small organizations. In terms of the artists, you know, NISC is not, I'm going to ask your question about artists, which is.
I see we're out of time. I I will follow up with you to really.
Okay, follow up with me, but I just.
And short-time jobs for the summer that are, you know, there's just addressed the desperation. Thank you so much to the Chair.
Thank you. And also, I did, I did want to just finish my response to you, which is that NISC does not, is not in a position to be able to provide grants to individuals. And so we do that through New York Foundation for the Arts, for instance, and support 80 to 100 artists a year through that partnership, for instance. But let's let's follow up afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Senate, do you have?
No, the Senate would actually like to thank this guest for being with us. And to say thank you for very, very much from all of us and to move the hearing forward. Is that all right? Okay.
Please.
So just for people to understand, it's 1:47, this hearing was scheduled to be done 45 minutes ago to to move on to a second hearing. Helen, we may be past the point in history where we can pull off two hearings in one day. We'll have to have discussion for next year. So much greater interest in so many issues, which is a very good thing. It's just a little overwhelming from a time perspective. So our first panel, and now we move to the rules where the each person gets three minutes to testify and a questioner also gets three minutes for the question and the answers from whoever on the panel. So it's, I like to describe it as it's the speed dating part of our public hearings.
Senator Kruger. Yes. I just wanted to clarify, just for some members who may have not participated in prior hearing, it's three minutes to ask a question of the panel, not each member of the panel.
Thank you. Yes, three minutes for the panel with their answers. So it's the speed dating part. So our first panel, the League of Independent Theaters, Christina Perry, the National Association of Theater Owners, owners of New York State, NATO, that's funny, I know this other group who thinks their name is NATO. And that's Joseph Macher, who's the President. He's incorrectly identified as the Treasurer on the printed list, but he is the President. Theater local, Theater Teamsters Local 817, Thomas O'Donnell, President. And the New York State Hospitality and Tourism Association, Mac Door, President. Welcome to you all. I guess we'll go straight down the list. Christine Perry? You with us?
I am. Hello, well, thank you so much for having me and allowing me this this time. I'm Christina Perry, and I am with the League of Independent Theater. We represent over 300 theater venues with 99 seats or less. And we are also part of the United for Small Business and Save Our Storefronts Coalition. In addition, I am also a theater venue operator and I help to operate the chain theater. We have two spaces in Midtown Manhattan here. So I'm here representing the league and also giving a personal account of the effects of this pandemic as a venue operator. Our biggest need right now is rent relief for commercial tenants. I'm sure that's a surprise to no one. It's been almost a year since the mandated closure. And while we appreciate all the moratoriums that have been in place, we feel this is not really a solution. To give an example, the not-for-profit I work for is currently looking at over $100,000 in back rent. And that is just continuing to mount, and that's something even the best economy, we just would not be able to make up. So I can also tell you from personal experience that rent accounts for 60% of our yearly operating budget. And this statistic is true for hundreds in our, in my industry with similar spaces. Rent is and always has been our greatest expense. Prior to the pandemic, we at the chain theater were always paying in full and on time. We were even able to reopen after the devastating effects of Hurricane Sandy, when there was sewage literally pouring into our basements. And we even survived the real estate boom in Long Island City that led us to our current space in Midtown. And I share that just kind of as an example of our tenacity. And when we're open, how we can make it work. But this is just something beyond any of us have ever been able to encounter. And that's why the survival of small businesses like mine is so dependent on rent relief. We're positive fixtures in your community, as so many of you know. We serve local residents on each block where we live. We provide positive foot traffic. We bring people to the mom-and-pop restaurants, local hotels, stores, public transportation. And of course, thousands of students apply each year to the state of New York because they know what kind of opportunities there are upon graduation at theaters like mine, and it's so exciting. And I can't, it's one of our highlights every year is to work with them. So also, I'm sure you may know that there was a study done in 2019 that tells you that our industry alone collectively accounts for $1.3 billion. And taxes from these activities then go on to support the state. There's been some wonderful proposals put in place, such as S3349, bill led by Senator Hoilman and Assemblymember Epstein. And we want to thank them and Senator Serrano and Senator Salazar. We believe this bill is a really strong example on how commercial rent relief might be implemented. As a proposal shares the burden between the renters and landlords. I see I'm running out of time, so I just want to close by saying thank you once again. And we really hope that we can find a way to find rent relief for commercial tenants such as myself because our survival depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Joseph Macher.
Good afternoon, everybody. Chairs Kruger and Weinstein. I also wanted to thank specifically Senator Savino and Assemblywoman Fahey for their unwavering support in this effort. I'm Joe Macher, President of the National Association of Theater Owners of New York State. NATO was the largest exhibition trade organization in the world, representing over 32,000 movie screens in all 50 states and additional cinemas in 82 countries worldwide. I'm also the Chief Operating Officer of Votai Cinemas. We have two locations in the Capital District, one in Westchester and one in Manhattan. I'm here today to urge your support for the provision in the Governor's budget to allow movie theaters to apply for a liquor license using the same process as a similar business. Alcohol is already offered in places such as Chuck E. Cheese's Sporting Events and Family Restaurants across the state. Even Disney World in Florida has a liquor license. Presently, New York does permit limited alcohol sales in movie theaters, but only in conjunction with a full restaurant license, which includes a kitchen and a significant menu. Several theaters offer alcohol sales under this exception. The other way you can do alcohol in movie theaters right now is to license your lobby as a tavern, but then people have to slam their drinks in the lobby before going into their movie. The legal change in this proposal is most urgent, given the current state of the movie theater industry. As a result of the pandemic, movie theaters were completely shut down across the state until this past October. And in New York City, we'll finally be allowed to reopen starting on March 5. Theaters that have reopened are doing so at capacity that is safe for consumers. And the industry, I'm proud to say, has had zero cases of COVID transmission traced to a movie theater. Our capacity limits are dangerously low for volume business and profitability. And in order to pay rent, we need other sources of revenue. Many major theater circuits are facing bankruptcy, and many independents and small chains have already been forced to close permanently. The economic impact is really upsetting to hear, let alone to experience. In New York State, our box office revenues alone are down 98%. We've lost over $105 million in revenue, including concessions and screen advertising. Further, 10,000 jobs in the state have either been lost or still on furlough, including 6,000 in New York City alone. Contrary to popular impression, theaters carry many full-time adult employees on their payroll. Widespread closures have devastated devastated our industry that was already imperiled by streaming technology prior to the pandemic. In 2020, some studios began sending their new movies directly to streaming, skipping the theatrical window entirely. That means zeroing out any revenue these films would have made for theaters. But we're determined to bring audiences back to the big screen. Theaters are taking the initiative to create a more enjoyable movie-going experience that can compete with streaming in the new normal. The proposal will create a much-needed income for an industry that just lost an entire year of revenue. And beyond that, we're committed to working with Taste New York to bring New York State craft beverages into our systems. Small theaters will benefit most from this proposal because while they're often the backbone of downtowns, they're also the least able to afford the renovations necessary to apply for a restaurant license. This provision also builds inadequate protections and restrictions for movie theaters to apply for a license, including ID requirements, one alcoholic beverage per purchase. Purchase is limited to one hour before the first movie showing and cease at the end of the last movie showing. Food typically found in theater must be kept readily available. And any municipality may object to a license, and the liquor authority may use that as a good cause to deny the license. So we're urging your support for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas O'Dowell.
You need to unmute.
Thank you, Chairwoman, Chairwoman Kruger. My name is Tom O'Donnell. I'm President of Theatrical Teams as Local 817. I present this testimony on behalf of the entire film production labor community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony to describe unparalleled success of Empire State Film Production Tax Credit and for your long-term support of film and television production community. In the 2021 Legislative Session, Union's top priority is ensuring the continuity stability of the tax credit. We thus testify in today, in support of the Governor's proposed extension of the program in the state budget. On Friday, the 13th, March 2020, we were at record employment and still growing. I got a phone call that day from the Commissioner of the New York City Office of Media Entertainment that the city just had their first COVID-related death, and they were shutting everything down. That day, we went from 100% employment to less than 1% employment for the next five months. Over those five months, entertainment unions negotiated with the studios and producers some of the most thoughtful and rigid safety protocols of any industry in the country. Testing up to three times a week, the best PPE available, social distancing. Today, we've we've returned to near pandemic, pre-pandemic employment levels, keeping not only our cast and crew safe, but only, but also the communities and neighborhoods that we live and work in. This, I just want to emphasize that this is first and foremost a union program. We fight to ensure high wages, the excellent health and pension benefits, even a scholarship fund for our dependent children. Since the inception of the tax credit, Local 817 has more than tripled its membership. And our gross wages and contributions have gone from 70 million to almost 400 million. And we're just a very small slice of the employment pie. Lastly, in last year's state budget, the tax credit was reduced from a 30% to a 25% rebate. These reforms, no doubt, will further increase the state's return from tax dollars invested in the program. However, we are always monitoring the calibration of the tax credit to maximize its job-creating impact. In summation, this extension does not impact this year's fiscal plan. It will, however, give confidence to producers and employers that New York remains committed to the film and television production incentive for the long haul. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to answering any questions the panel may have.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker on the panel, Mark Dorr.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Name is Mark Dorr, President with the New York State Hospitality and Tourism Association. We represent 1,000 members throughout New York State, including hotels, amusement parks, destination marketing organizations, those charged with marketing and promoting our great state. So we're currently the third-largest industry in the state, tourism overall. We represent a million jobs, $19 billion in tax revenue. And we welcomed in 2019, I'll take 2020 out of the mix, but we welcomed 250 million visitors. And we hope to get back to somewhere, and I was just reading this morning, I think we're going to get back to a very robust summer travel vacation schedule here in New York State. My main topic this morning is really to thank the economic development folks for recognizing the need to provide a mechanism for collecting of sales tax for the unregulated short-term rental industry. In the executive budget this year, there's a portion in there to level the playing field that allows for state-local collection of sales tax on those short-term rentals. And obviously, that's going to immediately boost the economy by doing that. And for example, $18 million probably in sales tax over the last decade has been left on the table. I'd like to thank Assemblymember Fahey especially, she's been a champion of this for us for the last five to six years. And this is one part of a three-part puzzle that we have, collecting that sales tax. The occupancy tax is another part of that for later on, but there's probably, we've done a study with our folks at Smith Travel Research. Probably in New York State, another $90 million in occupancy taxes are not being collected from those short-term rental units. So as we heard earlier from Assemblyman O'Donnell, there's, you know, a segment of the industry out there that is not collecting occupancy tax. However, they're benefiting from the arts, they're benefiting from overnight stays and the marketing and promotion of our Convention and Visitors Bureau. So but mostly, I'd just like to thank everybody for the mechanism to collect that sales tax, and we hope that makes it all the way into the final budget. Last couple of things, I love New York, is is a very important part of the tourism industry and marketing statewide, bringing people in. Again, this year, this summer is probably going to be more critical than ever to bring people back to traveling into New York. They're set at $2.5 million. We hope to keep that level there. And matching grants, which is our Convention and Visitors bureaus, our tourism promotion agencies. One thing to keep in mind is, in the Governor's budget, was $2.4 million. Last year was 3.8. In a very tough year, we hope to get back to 3.8 million. We'll be asking for that because it's a match, dollar for dollar. If the local community spends a dollar, the state matches it based on a marketing program. And we hope to accomplish great things this summer. Thank you very much.
All right, who might have a question for any of our guests?
We have Assemblywoman Pat Fahey, three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. And I really think this is my last question, but great panel. Thank you for for all you have said and done. The numbers, going back to what Joe Macher said with theaters. We talk so much about the industries that have been so devastated because of COVID. But there are a few that I can, that can point to the absolute devastation of what happened with the with the movie theaters. So regarding the employment, a question there, and then I want to get to John Dorr as well, within my, within my three minutes. A question there on what will help? I'm actually surprised there are any independent theaters, movie theaters left. So on one hand, kudos to the movie theaters that have stayed and are trying to survive this. Huge kudos. But if you can tell us about those that expect to leave and what it's going to take to make them reemploy people. And then, before I stop, I want to, then secondly, I want to get to Mark Dorr to see if the sales tax on, again, if you could, please, take a few more seconds to explain the difference that this could make to some of our upstate counties. The fact, the reason I have supported the ups, in some ways, it's an upstate Airbnb bill because they're already doing that more in the city. It's to level the playing field. Because when when you are not paying your taxes, you are indirectly hurting hotels and motels. So if you would start with Joe Macher on what it's going to take to get the theaters back. Got a minute and a half here and or less, and and then Mark Dorr, please.
So thank you again for your support, Assemblywoman Fahey. A big step was happened yesterday when the Governor announced that New York City theaters can reopen. Without New York City and LA, studios have not released big movies exclusively into theaters. So it's limited our chances where we are open to gain an audience. We have done so, as I said, very, very safely with zero cases. So, you know, the theaters that have managed to hang on, and there are many that just won't reopen, really need extra amenities such as alcohol to lure patrons back. It's it's not a place where people come and get drunk. It's not a place where people are coming to buy multiple drinks. It's an amenity, and we need amenities to keep people coming back to theaters. We're excited to get reopened in New York City next Friday, and we hope that you'll support this to get us the amenities that we need to continue.
I've carried the bill for a few years. I assure you, I will support it.
You and everybody, yeah.
I'm trying to, trying to make sure that bill extends beyond the executive orders. And then Mark Dorr, if you could please respond to the.
Sales tax portion for many years, the sales tax collecting that's in the executive budget provides for state and local county sales tax to go on those short-term rentals, your Airbnbs, your VRBOs. $18 million throughout the whole state just on the sales tax. The one thing, if I, if I may, the second component that Assemblyman Fahey carries a bill for us is the occupancy tax. And I was so glad to be included on sort of the theater panel here because one of the biggest disparities is the hotels, and hotels are not against short-term rentals. They just like a level playing field so that they're all doing the same thing. Real quickly, on the occupancy tax goes into marketing and promoting those regions. If you have theaters that are full, that spills over into the hotels. That segment of our industry is not collecting the occupancy tax, which goes into draw more people in. So if we can get there as a second part, that would help promote and bring people to the theaters as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the chairs. Really work forward, look forward to working with both of you and. Thank you. Thank you to the chairs. Really work forward, look forward to working with both of you and more. Thank you.
Lea, I have a question, if you don't mind. Thank you. Hi, from Mr. Doerr. So following up on the hotel tax question. Actually, Pat Fahey is in current, New York City does not use the property taxes for this kind of model at all.
My mistake. Thank you. Yes, my mistake. Let's, thank you, Chair.
But the concern that's been brought out in many places all around the country is that if you're going to collect the sales tax, it needs to be done correctly so that the government knows who exactly is paying the sales tax at what's location. And this bill is not written the way the governor hasn't written, that it would be in violation of actually our tax laws and the country's tax laws. So would you agree that a tax that is provided through a third party vendor without the government knowing who's paying the tax or on what business would be a problem?
They're going to need to report who that, who their hosts are in order to make sure the tax is being collected. There's a lot of county sort of tax agreements where they just send in a check and say, this is what we, you know, there's no way to check and make sure. But as I understand it, we would want them to put in there when they're putting the tax in, they have to register the host and the money comes through the third party.
Well, my understanding is that they don't want to actually have to register who the host is or the address is, where this is taking place. Because once you get into occupancy taxes or other collections of fees, you also have to look into, are they in violation of other laws? So we have stricter laws for hotels than for private residences for good reasons. So if somebody's going to suddenly go into the business, and it would be a business because it's paying hotel and occupancy taxes, then make sure that they are following the correct building codes and fire codes and electric codes, which will be a serious problem for many of these people who might think it's simply a question of, you know, renting out for a few days. So it's a lot more complicated than sometimes it comes across. But I don't want to take any more time up today's hearing, but I'm happy to discuss it further with anyone. And I am going to move us along unless somebody tells me we need to let you ask more questions of this panel. And no one's saying, yes.
We have no further hands raised, Senator, so we can move on.
Thank you very much. So moving on on our schedule, Panel B. I'll just read off the names first. Post New York Alliance, Yana Collins Lehman. New York City Artist Collective, Olympia Kazee. Long Island Progressive Coalition, Lisa Tyson. And Chachaia, I think it's Chaiyan CDC. Jose Miranda, although there might be a note that we might not have found him. So let's see who was showing up.
I guess they didn't show up.
Okay, the first three are here though, right?
Correct.
Fine, let's start with Yana. Hello, Yana, can you?
Hello.
Oh, good, there you are. Hi.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairwoman Kruger. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Kruger, Chairwoman Weinstein, and distinguished members of the New York State Senate Finance Committee and the Assembly Ways and Means Committee. I am Yana Collins Lehman, and I thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of the Post New York Alliance, PNYA, the Association of Film and Television Post Production Facilities and Labor Unions Operating in New York. The PNYA is made up of over sixty five companies from all over the state of New York with over six hundred individual post production professionals working in film and television. It is the mission of the PNYA to incentivize film and television projects to finish in New York, to market the services provided by New York's post production industry, and to create avenues for talent to enter into this fast growing sector of the economy. To that end, we testify today in support of the governor's proposed extension of the post production tax credit in the state budget. The post production credit is a twenty five million dollar suballocation of the four hundred and twenty million dollar Empire State Film Production Credit. This framework divides the overall post production program into two components. A production tax credit that provides an incentive for productions that shoot in New York, including subsequent in state expenses on post production, and a post production tax credit that incentivizes additional productions which shoot outside New York to bring the projects to New York for their post production work. The success of the program is unparalleled, with the post production sector seeing explosive growth since enactment of the separate post production incentive, allowing domestic productions to bring scores of editorial work to New York. By enhancing the credit, it allowed New York to compete with Canada, which has a forty eight percent visual effects labor credit and the UK, which credits thirty percent on a hundred percent of a spend of eighty percent of the spend that happens in the UK. We've succeeded in repatriating high paying vis effects jobs that were based in China and India because producers prefer having talent in the same time zone and they offset the New York labor cost increase with the credit. The PNYA commissioned a two thousand nineteen report from HRNA advisors illustrating the post production program's role as both a jobs creator and an economic stimulus for New York's economy. The report indicated that over ten thousand eight hundred people, including thirty five hundred freelancers, worked in the post production ecosystem, all jobs in the traditionally defined post production industry, as well as all post production jobs in adjacent industries with an average income of eighty three thousand dollars. In contrast, prior to the post production incentive, it was a rare occurrence for productions that didn't shoot in New York to opt to engage their editorial work in New York. And in fact, after the credit spurred the growth of our sector, thirty five percent more people worked in New York's post production ecosystem in two thousand nineteen than in two thousand four. Over forty percent of traditionally defined post production jobs in New York do not require a bachelor's degree and a diverse talent development pipeline breaks down barriers to opportunity. In addition, approximately thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty jobs are supported by this growing post production ecosystem with average wages of eighty six thousand dollars. Altogether, these twenty four thousand middle class jobs across the state can be attributed to the post production credit, with our sector's continued growth and stability likewise tied to its long term extension. All this job growth and investment buoyed by the post production credit ripples across New York state economy. Direct investment tied to the credit in two thousand seventeen led to six point nine billion dollars in spending, two billion in wages paid, and a hundred and forty two million in state tax revenues back to the state and localities. The credits have helped New York become a national leader in post production, and twenty percent of US based post production firms call New York home. However, like all industries, post production has been highly impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. The post production credit insists that seventy five percent of eligible spend occur within the state. However, our physical offices worked with skeleton crews to adhere to state COVID nineteen protocols. As a result, much of our editorial work has occurred directly in individual workers' homes, in many cases out of state. This has led to significant confusion regarding how to accurately determine eligibility for the incentive, where the primary office is in New York, but the individual is telecommuting from their home state. This is not an academic question. Already, a few large film productions and at least two repeat TV series, not sure whether they would still qualify for the credit with much of their labor having to move out of state, left New York for good and gave up the credit. To clarify this matter, we are proposing language be added to the governor's proposed extension that will explicitly qualify the costs of out of state telecommuting workers of New York's post production businesses for the tax credits rebate. Such language is thematically consistent with the Department of Taxation and Finance's guidelines, which subject state taxes to wages paid to non state residents who telecommute to a primary office within New York. Given these workers pay New York state taxes, we believe their work should also be eligible for New York's tax incentive. In summation, the Empire State Film Post Production Tax Credit has supported the creation of thousands of jobs and billions of dollars in wages and economic activity. The PNYA respectfully urges your support for the governor's proposed one year extension of the post production tax credit and asks for your support in clarifying that the spend on out of state telecommuters will be eligible for the post production incentive. This proposed extension and technical clarification will ensure a continuation of the growth, vibrancy, and vitality of the post production industry throughout the state. I thank you for this opportunity to testify on behalf of our industry, and I look forward to answering any questions the panel may have.
Thank you. Next. We have Olympia, I'm so sorry. Yes, Olympia.
Don't worry. My name is Olympia Kazee. Can you hear me?
Yes, can. Thank you.
Great. So thank you for holding this hearing and for asking great questions all day today. My name is Olympia Kazee, and I'm a founding member of the Music Workers Alliance, a group of independent musicians and DJs who fight against unfair treatment and the New York City Artist Coalition, not collective. Our claim to fame was that we were the leading group in repealing the cabaret law. And as a result of that work, I also serve as the vice chair of the New York City Nightlife Advisory Board. The New York City Artist Coalition advocates for the safety and preservation of grassroots cultural spaces and is also a member of the United for Small Business NYC. First of all, I'd like to counter a remark made earlier today by Commissioner Eric Jettler, who said that New York State was thriving before the pandemic. The truth is that markets were thriving, but the majority of working people of our state were left behind, struggling with housing costs and unfair employment situations. So this year, we need to pass the budget that puts us in a more equitable path forward. Today, I'll ask you to fund two very important items for the recovery of the people of our state. Commercial rent relief with at least five hundred million, as it is asked by the Save Our Storefronts, and a WPA style program as outlined by Assemblymembers Fahis Bill for all workers need with two billion dollars. To fully fund these initiatives, we'll need to enact the taxes proposed by the Investing in New York Act. These long term revenue raises will be critical, not just for the short term recovery, but also for ongoing future investment in our communities. So rent is really the elephant in the room for small businesses. Arts and cultural venues are commercial tenants. So we face the same issues as the the small businesses, and we have very little, if any, protections. It takes years to establish a cultural space with our community of artists, employees, suppliers, and of course, audience. And very often, they're shattered overnight with exorbitant rents. The few that are surviving right now, they they face the pack rate when they will have to pay it, and they accrued in the meanwhile crazy debt. So we really need to invest, especially in the small grassroots cultural spaces that's low income minority and marginalized communities. Also, you know, the the important thing is what is happening with our workers. We know that unemployment rate is huge. And especially for the performing arts, they've been shattered since last March, so a year now. And the broken and piecemeal unemployment system has left many workers out, basically struggling to survive. So we need to pass a WPA bill for the next three years when we're hoping to be able within three years to get back to the two thousand nineteen level of productions. But long term, there can be no recovery for New York if we don't invest in our arts and culture and in our people. So please pass a good budget and stop the scarcity mentality that our governor has imposed during a pandemic in a cruel way, frankly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our next, Lisa Tyson. Hello.
Hello, how are you? How are you? Thank you. My name is Lisa Tyson, Director of the Long Island Progressive Coalition. Really appreciate speaking and having this opportunity to speak at this hearing. I'm a resident of Belmore, Long Island. Long Island Progressive Coalition fights for structural change at the local, state, and national levels to attain racial justice, build community wealth, and realize a just transition to a hundred percent renewable energy future. Today, I'm outside, actually, earlier today, I was outside Senator, Senator Thomas's office to drop off seventeen hundred postcards from Long Islanders across the island who believe in legalizing marijuana. All across Long Island, people believe it. It is not a fringe issue. There is huge public support for legalization from moms like me, veterans, seniors. We were out today, and we really need your support in moving this forward. So we're here to really to talk about legalization, but any proposal worth passing much center on equity, community reinvestment, remove criminal penalties, and repair the past harms caused by the failed war on drugs. Cannabis prohibition has been a racist endeavor since the beginning. Decades of criminalization has disproportionately affected black and brown communities despite the fact that white people consume and sell marijuana at the same rate. Outside of New York City, Long Island has some of the biggest disparities. Nassau and Suffolk Counties had the highest arrest rates for low level marijuana offenses in the state from two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, with people of color being arrested and prosecuted at a significantly higher rate than white people. Many of the arrests on Long Island are the result of the stop and frisk traffic stops, where officers stop drivers if they have a reasonable suspicion of criminal activity. Officers routinely use without evidence the odor of marijuana as a pretext for these instances. These racially biased stop and frisk traffic stops are pervasive throughout Long Island. A recent news day analysis found that Suffolk County police officers pulled over black drivers almost four times more than white drivers and Hispanic drivers twice as often. More tellingly, after stopping drivers, police searched blacks over three times more frequently than whites and Hispanics one point seven more times. Virginia has banned police searches based on the smell of marijuana. And in July two thousand twenty, Maryland's highest court affirmed that police cannot use the smell of marijuana to search and arrest a person. A Pennsylvania appeals court ruled in October two thousand twenty that marijuana smell alone cannot form the basis for a vehicle search. New York should follow suit, in tandem with the passage of a legalization proposal rooted in racial economic justice. So those most harmed by disproportionate enforcement of misguided prohibition policies are in a position to benefit most from our state's new well regulated cannabis industry, which will generate fifty thousand eight hundred and six jobs, two point two billion dollars in employee compensation, four point seven billion dollars in value added, and six point one billion dollars in total economic output, according to the new study by economist James Parrott and the labor market consultant Michelle Mattingly. Beyond restorative justice and economic conditions, legalizing cannabis has multiple other benefits. Marijuana use among teens has decreased in states where it's legal, and that's because legalizing and regulating recreational cannabis makes it difficult for kids to obtain. Multiple studies show that access to legal cannabis leads to reductions in opioid deaths by forty percent. There is broad support on Long Island for legalization, and we are ready to build a new industry on Long Island with our farms. We're ready to have our multitude of supportive businesses and ready to open dispensaries owned by the communities most harmed by the drug wars. The, this is the new, this is the year New York should legalize cannabis, but we must do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone with any questions for this very diverse panel? Well, then, we appreciate your being with us today. Thank you very much. And it was quite a diverse group of proposals. Thank you. Our next panel will be New York Centers for Excellence in Bioinformatics, excuse me, New York State Center for Excellence in Bioinformatics and Life Sciences. Norman Nowak, Associated Medical Schools of New York. Jonathan Tayen, the Business Incubator Association of New York. Mark Alisi, and the United for Small Businesses, New York City. Karen Narafsky. You see how diverse economic development topics are, even just by the names of the organizations. So let's start with Norma. Are you here, Norma?
I am.
Hi.
Thank you to the chairs and committee members for the opportunity to testify today. I am Dr. Norman Nowak, and I lead University at Buffalo's Center of Excellence in Bioinformatics and Life Sciences, as well as the Center for Advanced Technology in Big Data and Health Sciences. The COEs and CATs are among the highest performing economic development programs in the state. Under the executive budget proposal, the COEs would be eliminated and consolidated into the CAT program through competition. Funding for the fourteen COEs and fifteen CATs would also be reduced by nineteen percent from twenty three and a half million dollars to nineteen million dollars. On behalf of all twenty nine CATs and COEs, we are asking the state legislature to once again reject their proposal to consolidate the centers as well as to restore the center's funding levels. The COEs were established to take advantage of regional strengths and talent, while the CATs are designated for their ability to address specific emerging technologies identified as state priorities. The COEs provide an environment to foster collaboration between academia and industry. These facilities provide academic experts, staff, student talent, and state of the art technology that are critical to the success of our industry partners. The CAT program cuts across many technology sectors and provides project based funding for collaborative applied research with industry partners and capitalizes on matching funds from industry, unlike the COEs, which require a match from the university. The industry matching funds required are more challenging for startup and early stage companies, as well as our small businesses during the pandemic. According to the two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen Empire State Development Annual Reports, the centers combined for approximately two point five billion dollars in economic impact and helped to create or retain ten thousand jobs. Centers typically receive a million dollars annually, which has translated into an astonishing twenty five to one on up to a forty five to one return on investment. which has translated into an astonishing 25 to 1, on up to a 45 to 1 return on investment. The impact of the COEs extends beyond their home regions. For example, Buffalo's COE Anchor Tenet and former Yogi Startup of Phoenix is now a global oncology-focused biopharmaceutical firm with 606 employees worldwide, with 205 in Western New York. Their new $210 million pharmaceutical manufacturing facility in Dunkirk, New York is opening later this spring and is recruiting 450 new employees, bringing up the region. In addition to their proven record of job creation, the COEs and CATs played a critical role in the state's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The centers have collaborated on over 80 COVID-related projects with industry. These collaborations include diagnostic testing, PPE, HVAC, vaccine development, and more. The Buffalo Centers and the COE at RIT in Advanced and Sustainable Manufacturing work together to advance U First Services' sterispace air sterilization technology, which eliminates airborne pathogens such as COVID-19 from the environment when attached to an HVAC system. The rapid response to the sudden and unexpected demands of the pandemic demonstrates how valuable the COEs and CATs have been for addressing the public health crisis of our time, as well as rebuilding our economy. Let us not divest in them and turn back the progress we have achieved. As I have shown, it is critical for the state legislature to again reject the executive budget proposal to eliminate the Centers of Excellence, as well as restore funding, continuing the center's progress to drive an innovation economy throughout New York. Thank you.
Wow, perfect timing. Well done. Next. Sorry. Let's see, who's our next speaker? Is that Marka Lisi? Or Jonathan?
Yes, I believe it's me.
Thank you, Jonathan.
So thank you, Chairs Kruger and Weinstein, for the opportunity to testify. And good afternoon to all the distinguished members. My name is Jonathan Tayen. I'm the COO of the Associated Medical Schools of New York. We are the consortium of the 17 medical schools in the state. We have more medical schools in New York than any other state in the nation. We also have an embarrassment of riches in some of the, you know, best academic research institutions in the world and some really high concentration of biopharma companies. I really wanted to take this opportunity to underscore the importance of biomedical research and the life sciences. They're vital components of what the medical schools do, but they're also vital to the state's economy. Really, New York is a leader in so many areas within the life sciences. And just to give a very broad overview, in 2020, we brought in $3.2 billion in NIH funding to New York, much of which, most of which, went to the medical schools and supported more than 6,000 research projects. One thing I really just would take a moment to highlight and echo some of Dr. Nowak's comments. You know, when COVID arrived, really much of our research community pivoted to understanding and treating COVID. And I think it really underscores the need to maintain a life sciences infrastructure and a robust scientific workforce. And that dovetails, actually, leads into the two programs that I would really like to highlight this afternoon, which are the New York First Program and NICESTEM, the stem cell program. So firstly, the New York First Program. As a reminder, this was a $20 million investment included in the 2018 Life Sciences Initiative. It supports the recruitment and retention of star scientists to the medical schools. It has worked extraordinarily well. There have been three cycles of RFAs since it was first launched in 2018. The first one was made official, the first set of awards made official in 2019. Three recruits from outside New York came here and basically set up their labs, which function as small businesses within the medical schools. They have, we project, created 100 jobs in the first three years, and their institutions have matched with another $17.5 million in their own investments. So we really like to see this program continue and that the unappropriated, the unspent funds get re-appropriated in the upcoming budget. And just quickly, since I am running out of time, the NICESTEM program has really been a, has been the flagship life sciences investment in New York for the past decade. It was envisioned as a $600 million investment to make New York a leader in stem cell science. It has done that and more. It actually has generated quite a lot of economic activity. We spun out some very large companies that have attracted hundreds of millions of dollars in VC investment. And unfortunately, the executive budget proposal would terminate the program with no new funding for that research after April 1st of this year. Again, we think it's an extraordinarily successful program that has both major health implications, major economic implications, and the science really has reached maturity. We're launching clinical trials, actually, trials have been launched in Parkinson's disease, sickle cell disease, leukemia, many other areas. And, you know, just in closing, I would say that at a time when COVID has really emphasized how important research is, it seems perplexing to terminate what has, again, been our flagship investment in life sciences in New York for the past decade. So I'll leave it there since I am over time, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next is Marka Lisi, Business Incubator Association of New York State.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity, Chairwoman, for me to give testimony on behalf of the incubators of New York State. I'm the executive director for the incubator association. We are a member-led trade association of over 100 incubators and accelerators across New York State that house over 3,000 startup companies. In addition to this role, I'm also a startup entrepreneur myself with a company that is housed in Stony Brook's incubators on Long Island. And I'm a former state assemblyman, so I think I have a unique perspective on the macro end of what you are looking for out of economic development programs for the people of New York State. And at the micro end, as an entrepreneur, that's on the receiving end of some of the services provided on this maturing innovation ecosystem. The importance of incubation cannot be overstated. Many of you may have heard how 90% of startups fail. And when you look at startups, that could be anything from a tech startup at an incubator to a local restaurant in our downtown. But incubated startups, 50% of them succeed as a result of the programming that they receive and the mentorship. We're able to de-risk these companies. Incubated startups that succeed have the potential to grow very fast and add hundreds of jobs. And we've seen this across New York State. When I was in the assembly, I was the chair of the Subcommittee on the Emerging Workforce, a Subcommittee of the Labor Committee. And we held hearings to try to figure out how, back then, this is 2008, 2009, the state of Tennessee was commercializing more of their higher ed IP than New York State. And a lot of that had to do with a lack of investment in the innovation and entrepreneurial ecosystem. That has changed over the past 10 to 15 years, and you've made that investment. And we went from falling behind Tennessee to the second-largest innovation ecosystem in the world, pumping out thousands of jobs a year, hundreds of millions in venture capital investment, and billions in economic activity. So I would say during this COVID crisis, it's definitely not time to hit the brakes. It's time to hit the accelerator on these types of programs. And, you know, in terms of the programs that our association offers, incubation education to the incubator managers, we bring them together to share best practices. We are launching this year, thanks to some legislative grant funding we were able to obtain from former Senator Marty Golden, a soft landings program to bring international companies to the United States through New York State, through our incubation programs. And, you know, our pre-incubation program to help Main Street entrepreneurs succeed is a new program launched this year as well. But we need to maintain the funding of the certified incubator programs. The governor has included it in his budget at $2.5 million. And the Hot Spot Regional Incubator Program, which funds regions at $2.5 million for all the incubators in those regions to be able to partake in the program. And the last thing, I know I'm out of time. There's a fix that's needed in the startup New York program. Because of COVID-19, there are companies that have promised job creation. They've created those jobs, but those jobs are supposed to report to the startup New York location. And because of COVID-19 social distancing, those employees are being asked to stay home and remote work. And these companies are now being informed by state tax and finance that they're not going to qualify for the program because of this hiccup. And we need to fix this in the state budget.
Thank you. Thank you. I see ranker from Ways and Means. I was going to make you a senator, but let's leave you in the assembly. Assemblymember Roth for five minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to stay in the assembly. I just had kind of some follow-ups regarding the Centers of Excellence and the CATs and that proposal. But I just wanted to directly to Ms. Nowak. Was your Center for Excellence funded or had funding withheld last year from last year's budget?
Well, we had some money taken back, so the budget was reduced. And there's going to be a holdback of funds, so we'll submit 100% of our costs, but there'll be a 20% holdback.
Assemblymember, I left one of the panels off, so do you mind if I?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, it was totally my fault. I apologize, Karen. So we're going to go, we're going to reset the clock. We're going to go back and have you testify, and then we'll give Assemblymember Roth his five minutes again. Okay, Karen. Narafsky. Are you on mute? Can you come off mute, Karen?
Great, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Lost you.
Can you all hear me?
Now, yes.
Fabulous. Thank you so much to the committee chairs for the opportunity to testify. My name is Karen Narafsky, and I'm the senior organizer for Equitable Economic Development at the Association of Economic Development. One of New York City's leading policy organizations with a membership of over 80 local nonprofits. I'm testifying today on behalf of United for Small Business, New York City, a coalition convened by ANHD. Small Business is a coalition of 15 groups across the city working to protect small businesses and commercial tenants from displacement, especially owner-operated businesses that serve low-income communities and communities of color. So these are really the smallest businesses that so many of the committee members today have mentioned. In 2019, we conducted research on the challenges facing small businesses in immigrant commercial corridors. And we found that high rents were a top concern for 82% of those businesses. Because of the pandemic, what was formerly a concern is now an existential threat. And because of this, I want to urge the legislature to prioritize commercial rent relief as part of a strategy for equitable economic recovery. As several of the committee members have already mentioned today, existing state programs don't address the need for rent relief, and the individual deals that have been worked out are not going to be available forever for tenants or for property owners. With regards to the various eviction restrictions that are in place, they're not truly moratoriums. But even if they were, commercial tenants are not going to wait for an eviction notice if they don't have the money to maintain that property. They're going to close, or they're going to go bankrupt. And as a matter of fact, bankruptcy filings have increased by 40% in New York City last year, and thousands of businesses have already closed. We shouldn't really be asking businesses to reopen at the expense of public health. We know that 25% capacity indoor dining is not profitable for restaurants. But we also know that 100% capacity indoor dining isn't safe. Not to mention, we love restaurants, but we also have many types of businesses across the state, and they all have different needs. What they have in common is the need for a bridge that will help them get from the current crisis to a recovery where they can operate as they did before the pandemic. If we don't provide that bridge, the state will lose millions of jobs, billions of dollars in tax revenue, and the goods and services provided by those businesses, which in many cases are culturally specific to the neighborhood and hard to replace. As I mentioned earlier, our coalition supports a broadly accessible commercial rent relief program. And we'd like the state to devote $500 million to this program in the budget. We support the approach of Senate Bill 3331 and Senate Bill 3190, sponsored by Senator Hoileman and Assemblymember Epstein, under which all commercial tenants who have lost revenue due to COVID and can't pay rent qualify for a partial abatement. It would be required to pay a pro-rated portion of their rent or actual income. Property owners who are tenants get this abatement would be eligible for reimbursement from the state. And we believe that there's a role for ESD to play here in administering that rule. This is a compliment to this initiative mentioned by the commissioner. And we think it's really important for all impacted small businesses to be eligible, to ensure that the smallest businesses get what they need. And finally, I want to share, ANHD also supports the intention of the proposal in the governor's budget to allow residential conversions of 2,000 office buildings to affordable housing. However, we believe that this should exempt land zones for manufacturing, within limited industrial land available and the key economic role of industrial business. So in New York City, there are approximately 45 hotels eligible for conversion that would fall within manufacturing zones. We ask that the legislature also allow the affordable units, the versions funded by city subsidy programs, as well as state programs, and to add additional, which would satisfy the option of paying some roof. So thank you again to the committee chairs and to all the members for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. And now we're going to go back to Assemblymember Roth, give him back five minutes on the clock. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm glad we heard from the last panelist, because she made a number of very important points. So, thank you. So I got the question answered regarding withholding for that particular Center of Excellence. But I just wanted to just go back to that issue with regard to the proposal. And the, you know, last year, there was a proposal in the budget, different from this one in terms of kind of consolidating these programs into one. But I had asked Commissioner Gertler this morning regarding any outreach or dialogue that had taken place in the interim between last year's proposal and it being rejected by the legislature in the enacted budget and this proposal this year. You know, and I'm just wondering if you can shed on any light on any conversations that have taken place, you know, with other co's, other CATs, partners that are involved that may have led us to this proposal being before us?
No, we found out about the impending consolidation and additional cuts when the budget came out. So we had heard rumors that they were going to revisit last year's proposal, and that's what we would be facing again. So last year, we also did not receive the aid to states and municipalities. So our budgets were cut by that amount. Normally, we're brought up to $1 million. And so we didn't get that gap filled, as well as then, you know, going forward now, facing additional cuts. But no, there was not a lot of communication with anyone from ESD regarding this proposal coming back.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, I don't want to belabor the point. I think you presented very well that there are distinct differences between the entities and what they're designed to do and the way they're designed to function. And I think losing that would be a negative. And on top of it, I worry about the way, you know, awarding these 10-year designations. There's this thought out there that it's going to increase competition, but it seems to me like something that could very much stifle competition by making those 10-year designation. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we see any other hands up? All right, well, then I want to thank all of you for your presentations with us today. Appreciate it very much. Our next panel, Asian American Federation, Ayung Kim, Associate Director for Small Business, the New York City Network of Worker Cooperatives Advocacy Council, Catherine Merchek, and the New York Association of Training and Employee Professionals. And it says Evelyn Ordies, but I believe they have been replaced by, one second.
Belinda Mack.
Thank you so much. Great. The female voice of God just comes in and clarifies everything for us. It's excellent. Thank you. Okay, first speaker, Asian American Federation.
Thank you, Chair Kruger and Weinstein, and distinguished members of the state legislature for this opportunity to testify. My name is Ayung Kim, and I am the Associate Director of Small Business Programs at the Asian American Federation. We represent a network of 70 member and partner We represent a network of 70 member and partner agencies, and we are also a member of the USBNYC. I am here today to ask that the state legislature allocate $500 million in this budget to create an equitable and widely accessible commercial rent relief program. In our survey of Asian American small businesses during the early months of the COVID-19 pandemic, 37% of respondents cited rent as a primary concern for the survival of their businesses. 54% of the respondents also said that they faced loss of revenue over 75%, while majority of the respondents said their businesses had to operate in a limited capacity or closed temporarily due to the COVID-19 related restrictions. We thank the legislature for your leadership in sponsoring the recent package of bills, including the COVID-19 Emergency Protect Our Small Businesses Act. However, without rent relief, mass closures of small businesses across the street will be inevitable. In our written testimony, I have elaborated on why current measures and available resources are not enough to avoid mass closures. During the height of the pandemic in early 2020, the growth of Asian New Yorkers filing for unemployment claims outpaced all other groups. Asians in this state went from filing hundreds of claims a month to thousands of claims a month. Failure to support businesses to survive this pandemic will result in a greater spending for the state as the most vulnerable members of our community will be requiring extended assistance while they look for employment in lieu of small businesses offering these jobs. From 2002 to 2012, which overlaps with the latest recession, are repaced. Asian small businesses accounted for about half of net new economic activity and half of net new employment in New York City. New York State cannot afford to lose this economic engine at this time. Without our small businesses, the road to recovery will be extended to a perilous journey for everyone. For immigrant communities, small businesses are more than just business entities. Small businesses owned by immigrants serve their community in ways that that is valued beyond cash transactions. Not only are they job creators, but they also function as training platforms for newcomers to develop their language skills or information and outreach hubs where government agencies are failing. On the contrary, our small business owners are not receiving adequate assistance. Failed outreach and lack of language assistance left immigrant small business owners in the dark as they are still struggling to survive. This funding for commercial rent relief is not an ask for a massive bailout that rewards irresponsible corporate behavior. Instead, we ask the legislature to answer to the dire needs of our small business community and to recognize their contribution to the state of New York. We believe that the commercial rent relief must be a critical component of the statewide economic recovery program, and we ask it to include this to the new budget. Also included in our written testimony is a list of our recommendations on how state can improve access to information and capital for immigrant small business owners. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. And our second speaker, from the Network of Worker Cooperative Advocacy Council.
You hear me okay?
Hello?
Hi, thank you. Good morning or good afternoon. I'd like to thank Committee Chairs Kruger, Weinstein, Kaplan, and Bronson for the work you've been doing to serve New York State and for the opportunity to testify. My name is Catherine Mersick, and I'm a worker-owner at Samam Kaya Yoga Back Care and Scoliosis Collective. We're a worker-owned cooperative or a democratically run and owned business specializing in therapeutic yoga for a variety of ability levels. I'm also an elected member of the Advocacy Council coordinated by the New York City Network of Worker Cooperatives, which supports its members' co-ops through training and education, language access, and resources to help its community of predominantly immigrant, POC, and women of color-led member co-ops thrive. Through workplace democracy and community control, our goal is to protect against wealth extraction, inform and empower workers, reduce income inequality, and promote economic and social justice. Nick Nock is also a member of the United for Small Business NYC Coalition, also known as USBNYC. As a small business owner, it has been an incredibly stressful year, as I'm sure you can imagine, and devastating to watch a whole community of small businesses closing permanently all around me and across the state. We most likely already would have closed too, had it not been for forgivable PPP loan, our online offerings which allow us to scrape by, and our very fortunate rent negotiation with our landlord. However, I understand most other small businesses in my community and across the state have not been so fortunate. Even before the pandemic, exorbitant rents were already a major issue, an impediment to the growth of our small business community. Since the beginning of the state of emergency, the wealth of the wealthiest New Yorkers has increased by $77 billion at a time when thousands of New Yorkers are experiencing loss of jobs, homes, and even their lives. I think we need to honestly ask ourselves, are we okay with that? In an effort to move toward a just recovery, we urge you to do the following. One, pass S3349 or A3190 to create a comprehensive commercial rent relief program for small businesses and nonprofit organizations that were ordered to close and allocate $500 million toward it. The program would create a kind of share the burden model where the landlord reduces the rent a bit, the tenant would pay a portion, and the state would help out as well. Two, support efforts to encourage worker-owned cooperatives and other democratic workplaces. For example, a capital gains tax exemption for business owners who sell their viable business to its workers. Three, pass the Invest in Our New York Act to create necessary revenue that could be put toward these efforts and would save crucial programs and infrastructure to protect the most vulnerable New Yorkers. And four, support the governor's commitment to put $25 million in the Community Development Financial Institution Fund, or CDFI Fund. And go beyond that and enhance it to $100 million to increase access to capital for our marginalized communities. When our small businesses cannot thrive, it creates a ripple effect through our economy affecting jobs, housing, and food security. If the state can mandate a business to close, a change in the structure of commercial rent should also be possible and is necessary if you care about our small business culture and want to prevent New York from becoming one big shopping mall of chain stores. While the efforts made thus far are appreciated, loans and eviction and moratoriums will not be able to sustainably protect our small businesses. We need real assistance with rent, which is by far the biggest reason for small business closures in my community and beyond. I understand these are unprecedented times, and everyone is asking for support. But it's been almost a year, and it's past time to seriously deal with rent in order to ensure a just recovery. Thank you again for hearing my testimony.
Thank you very much. And then our last panelist from this group, the New York Association of Training and Employment Professionals. Hi.
Hi, how are you? It's so nice to see everyone, even though we're remote. I love everyone's backgrounds. I feel like we get to see who likes to be outside and who likes to be inside. My name's Melinda Mack. I run the State's Workforce Development Association, also known as NIATEP, the New York Association of Training and Employment Professionals. And, you know, as I come back every year, I'm here to talk about the need to continue to invest in job training and employment services to get New Yorkers back to work. And as we've learned in the last recession and we're learning in this recession, the economy does not improve for everyone equally. And really, in folks who struggle or individuals with a high school diploma or less, they did not rebound during the last recession, and they're very unlikely to rebound during this recession without some additional support. Before COVID-19, the debate that we had with many of you and many of our elected officials in local communities was about the future of work and automation and the challenges associated with the future of work. But really, ultimately, what we know is that the economy and the labor market is not designed to benefit everyone equally. And really, workforce development and job training is, and education is truly the leveling of the playing field that we need in order to support the economy's recovery. I know we have truly one shot to make sure we don't leave lots of people behind. We're seeing it happening across sectors, across the country and across our own state. And ultimately, this is our chance to really think about and address inequity in the labor market in a meaningful way. So the few things that we'd like to raise, first, the governor had made a commitment in 2018, and in each consecutive year, around $175 million for workforce development. That money has been incredibly slow to go out the door, and the application process has become incredibly burdensome. I think at this point, there's about $33 million that's been spent and 307 projects that have been funded. The majority of those resources outside of NYSERTA, which is a different pot of money, have come out of the State Department of Labor funding that they have for workforce development, as well as the resources that were reprogrammed from the SUNY CUNY 2020 program. Under the 30-day amendments, we've noticed the language for those resources have changed for the paper success funding, which has broadened and opened up those resources to be spent on other things. We get that there's lots of priorities, but consistently, we keep coming back to the legislature and the state to say, and the governor's office to say, like, hey, listen, like, we have lots of people who are unemployed and underemployed. And one of the ways we get people back to work is through education and training, and that funding seems to continue to be diverted to other resources or sources. We also strongly believe that we need to be investing in high-speed broadband services to make broadband more affordable for New Yorkers. So we're really pleased to see the governor including that and really recognize that this is a true equity issue. If you can't work from home, you're going to lose, you're going to lose out on opportunities. And then lastly, we were really pushing for a six-month 100% income disregard for New Yorkers on public assistance or public assistance recipients who are participating in publicly funded workforce programs. People are falling off the cliff really quickly after they get a job, and they're unable to sustain their families. And we need to think about ways to keep people supportive so they can get into good family sustaining wages. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, I had asked the ESBC Commissioner earlier today if he would give me his map, his list of where that $175 million got spent. And he said he would, but I don't have that yet. Obviously, I would love to hear from you, not today, because we're really behind. But hear from you where you think that money went or didn't go or was reprogrammed. Because you can argue you could reprogram to other programs within the rubric of supporting and retraining workers. But we shouldn't see that money leaving the assignment that is desperately needed. I agree with you. So I look forward to talking to you after the hearing sometime. And without any hands up, I'm going to move us to the last panel for this hearing today. And we have Thomas Speaker, Policy Analyst, Reinvent Albany. We have Isaac Jabola Corolos, researcher, City University of New York Graduate Center, and Beth Starks, Chautauqua Lake Childcare Center. Well, I told you this was probably our most diverse hearing, as far as the topics people were bringing with them today. So let's start with Reinvent Albany.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Chairs Kruger and Weinstein and members of the legislature. My name is Tom Speaker. I'm a policy analyst for Reinvent Albany. Reinvent Albany advocates for transparent, accountable New York government. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at this hearing. Here are some highlights of the longer testimony we submitted. First, business subsidies are a waste of taxpayer money that could otherwise be spent on core services. A huge body of independent research by academic experts has found corporate subsidies waste taxpayer money, are vulnerable to page play corruption, and lack transparency and accountability. We urge the legislature to hugely increase transparency and sharply reduce the $10 billion subsidies New York hands out to businesses every year. We suggest taking the following steps. Number one, hold an oversight hearing on business subsidies featuring independent experts. We believe that a hearing would help cast light on the amount being spent on the subsidies, lack of transparency, and the poor return on public investment. Number two, establish a database of deals. Two years after Governor Cuomo directed Empire State Development to create a database tracking state business subsidies, there's still no database. This is basic transparency. It is 2021. Enough waiting and excuses. We believe the legislature should reintroduce S2815 by Senator Comrie and A2334 by the now-retired Assembly Member Schiminger and require the database in law. Number three, pass the Opportunities Zone Tax Break Elimination Act in the budget. Subsidies that often start small will balloon into incredible costs. And this is why the legislature must move to repeal New York's Opportunities Zone Tax Break by passing S1195 by Senator Generis. The bill has support from 19 organizations and six unions, including 1199 SEIU, CWA District One, and the New York State Teachers Union. Number four, and $330 million a year in oil and gas subsidies by passing S4816 by Senator Kruger in the budget. Passing the bill could save more than the state projects to bring in by legalizing marijuana. As we have noted, New York is currently trying to reduce fossil fuel pollution while subsidizing the very companies that contribute to global warming. You think it makes no sense at all to both tax and subsidize fossil fuels. Number five, increase the budget of the Authority's Budget Office, a crucial subsidy watchdog, to over $3 million, as we and other watchdogs requested back in 2018. The ABO oversees 585 state and local authorities that together hold $248 billion in public debt. But as of last year, the office has only 11 employees. The skeleton crew is far from what was imagined when the ABO was first established. And finally, number six, reduce the number of industrial development agencies and local development corporations and make them more accountable. We make specific recommendations for how to address the issue in our testimony. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. I welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is City University of New York Graduate Center. Hi.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Chairperson Kruger, and each of you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Isaac Jabola Corolos, and I'm a PhD candidate in sociology at the CUNY Graduate Center. And my research focuses on New York State's home care workforce, meaning the more than 200,000 home health aides and personal care aides who assist older adults and people with disabilities. I'm here to share a new study that I've authored with CUNY professors Stephanie Luce and Ruth Milkman. We hope it will be useful to you as you consider the proposed budget. We examined an overlooked development strategy, investment in the state's home care workforce. And specifically, we analyzed the economic impacts that would result from a substantial wage increase for home care workers. We found that lifting wages through public investment would create net positive effects both for the home care sector and for the state economy overall. So home care should be viewed not only as a vital healthcare field, but as a potential driver of economic growth. Currently, the median annual income for New York State home care workers is only $22,000. We ask what would happen if the state lifted that number to at least $30,000 per year upstate, $35,000 on Long Island and in Westchester, and $40,000 in New York City. We project that would require a $4 billion investment, but would yield $7.6 billion in new savings, tax revenues, and economic activity, a net gain of over $3.6 billion per year. Higher wages would also attract nearly 20,000 new home care workers per year, which would alleviate the severe labor shortage in this field. And because workers would spend much of their new wages, this investment would create nearly 18,000 jobs in other industries. We know home care is a booming sector. Consumer demand is locked in. Job positions are ready to fill, yet because wages are so low, thousands of jobs go unfilled or are vacated each year, and even more so in this pandemic. This hurts the state's aging population and its wasted economic opportunity. The state can tap that opportunity, not by cutting home care workforce funding, but by expanding such funding through, for instance, Empire State Development and REDCs. What would be most impactful, though, is the type of broad investment examined in our study or proposed by legislation like the Fair Pay for Home Care Bill forthcoming. Yes, challenging unless there's new revenue, but eminently safe as an investment and one that's necessary to meet the needs of aging New Yorkers and their families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, Beth Starks from Chautauqua Lake Childcare Center.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm the founder and executive director of Chautauqua Lake Childcare Center and Assistant Professor and Early Childhood Coordinator at Jamestown Community College. I'm proud to serve on both the Governor's Early Childhood Advisory Council and the Childcare Availability Task Force. I come to you today to speak about childcare as a business, speaking on behalf of my colleagues, childcare providers in centers, in-home facilities, and school age programs. I thank the chairs and members of the respective committees for the opportunity to testify on the budget. I appreciate your recognition that it is imperative that childcare as an industry is included in this hearing as it is foundationally interconnected to business and economic development, especially now. Childcare is a multi-billion dollar industry employing tens of thousands of New Yorkers with a return on investment of $1.86 for every dollar invested. That's more than retail, manufacturing, and construction. Yet childcare is a service industry that is different from others because it also enables other businesses to operate. Childcare was in a crisis situation preventing people from going to work pre-COVID. High-quality childcare is very difficult to find. 64% of New Yorkers live in a childcare desert and prohibitively expensive for nearly all families. On the other side, childcare is an industry with tightly balanced budgets and low pay for employees. The past year, the situation has gotten much worse. With increased expenses and restrictions, many of my colleagues have closed their doors. Record numbers of women have left the workforce, citing childcare as the main factor, resulting in reduced labor force participation and reduced family income. Employers indicate childcare is one of the main problems with employee recruitment, retention, and productivity. And although childcare has remained open throughout the pandemic, it has a crumbling infrastructure and little support. Despite the fact that we received $164 million in New York State specifically for childcare and care funding 10 months ago, only $40 million has actually been spent. Beyond that, there has been no help directly to childcare facilities in New York State. Therefore, I encourage you to follow and implement the New York State Childcare Task Force recommendations, leveraging REDCs and private-public partnerships, and to ensure the 460 and to ensure the $468 million in new childcare stimulus funds is used swiftly and strategically. Further, I urge you to invest in childcare subsidies and maximize affordability and to increase childcare availability by investing in startup grants. Lastly, I urge you to support the increase in employer childcare tax credits and to revise them to ensure that businesses can take advantage. We cannot look at supporting childcare as a subsidy. It is truly an investment in economic development and infrastructure. We cannot rebuild our economy without that investment. We must make decisions based upon what is best for our youngest citizens and therefore our entire population. I offer to you my assistance, and I appreciate the support of my legislators, Senator Borello and Assemblyman Gadel, as well as the leadership of Assemblyman Hevesey and Senator Brisport and their committees as we work together to ensure that families, providers, and businesses are heard. We all need to work together to make New York State the leader in early childhood during this time and in the future.
Thank you. Oh, and I see hands. I haven't seen hands in a while. I see the hand of my finance ranker, Tom O'Mara. Come off mute. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Kruger. I have a question for Beth Starks on childcare. First of all, Senator Borello sends his regards. Apologizes that he...
Everybody else, please. I think it's you, Kevin. Turn your mute on. Okay, so go ahead, Tom.
Okay, sorry about that. George Borello says hello in short. The, he had a couple of questions. He's preparing for session. It couldn't be on this part of the hearing today. So with regards to your position on the Childcare Availability Task Force, there was a report due from that task force in December. You know, we're on Albany time, so it's only February, so it's not really late yet. But when do you expect the work on that report to be completed and that to be available for us in the legislature?
So I was part of the drafting team, and the draft was put forward and has been approved by all members of the task force. We're just waiting for the official release of the report. We were hoping that that release would come in December so that you could use it to look at those recommendations as you put forward the budget. Unfortunately, it hasn't been officially released yet.
Who has the final sign-off on that report?
I believe it's the governor's office.
Okay. You're probably right, and it would be nice to be able to have that useful information for our budget discussions on that. What is your understanding of the status of Federal CARES Act money that has come to the state and hasn't been distributed? And what you expect to get, the state to get in addition to that moving forward from the federal government?
Well, it's been really unfortunate that the money that we received 10 months ago in emergency funding has taken so long to make it into the hands of providers and families. And when asked at the hearing last week, and the answer was that $40 million was the amount that was spent out of $169 million. That was really disheartening. We do know that an additional almost half a billion will be coming for certain into New York State, and we are hopeful that that money will be used more swiftly and will actually make it to providers in a timely manner. We'd love your support on that.
Well, I can tell you that you absolutely have it from myself and from Senator Borello as well. So thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assembly.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to recognize Assemblywoman Lunsford for three minutes. Assemblywoman Lunsford, unmute if you can.
Sometimes it's... There you go.
All right. Sorry. I was waiting for someone to prompt me to get it done. This question's also for Beth Stark. Thank you very much, Beth, for your presentation. Given what you learned as part of the task force drafting team, I know the report's not officially out yet, but if you could guide us through what you think the best use is for some of the federal monies we are going to receive would be to help bolster our childcare system moving forward as well as dealing with the ramifications of COVID?
I think it's really important that we support both families and providers. So we need to get people back to work. So it's really important that we increase the income eligibility for the childcare subsidies so that working families could use those subsidies to make sure that they can keep their employment right now, get back to work if they're not working, and to make sure that we're supporting them. In addition, we need to support the providers. So that means consistent revenue streams, so paying for absences, making sure that we are contributing to helping them to pay their employees more and to also bridging that gap in the... A lot of the childcare centers stayed open this entire time and lost a lot of revenue. So they're really suffering economically right now, and so making sure that they stay open to support people going to work is really important right now as well.
And I've heard that there have been some technological challenges as regards to our childcare centers actually applying for funding. Can you speak to that and what we can do moving forward to help them actually get this money in their hands?
Yeah, so I think it's a combination. There are a lot of in-home providers and centers who lack the ability to be able to access those funds and apply for them and to understand exactly what they needed to do to apply for the funding. In addition, there was definitely, on behalf of the state, it's an arduous process. And so it wasn't made easy for any providers to be able to get that funding. There were a lot of hoops to jump through, and I think that's led to the money taking so long to get out the door. And what was meant to be emergency funding was certainly not timed.
And the kind of the buckets we put the CARES Act funding into, do you think that's the most helpful way we could be boosting our childcare providers right now? The kinds of funding that they can apply for under our current system?
I do, and I do think that it's really important that we listen to the current providers about the struggles that they had at obtaining the funding in the first round and also to see what their immediate needs are moving forward. That step is really integral right now.
Thank you so much, Beth. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I think we are both muted, Kevin, but I think you wanted to call on Sarah Clark next.
I'm muted. You're right, Liz. Sarah Clark for three minutes.
Wonderful. My question is also for Beth. Thank you so much. It's so good to see you again today. And I couldn't agree more with you about the importance of childcare. It is literally the bedrock of any workforce development, any economic development, and any way that we're going to be able to recover from COVID. I also wanted, but I wanted to ask, you know, I had read a report about the subsidy system, particularly around what you sort of went into deserts and how there's not a lot of access everywhere in the state evenly. But what I was looking at was the subsidy report of where subsidies are most used across the state, and I really saw a glaring difference between our cities and our rural areas. I was wondering if you have any thoughts about what the particular challenges are in our rural areas when it comes to childcare and how we could do a better job?
One thing that I know, so here in Chautauqua County, we are not using all of our subsidy dollars. And we brainstormed about the reason or potential reasons for that. And one of the things that I think is really important is letting people know that that assistance exists. And so when you think about HEAP or other forms of assistance, we get the word out and we let people know that it's available. And if we want people to work, and childcare is one of those obstacles, standing their way to working every day, we need to let them know that this is maybe unlike other forms of assistance. It's meant for people who are working and who have, instead of falling off the benefits cliff, that if we could help them a little bit longer with the childcare and then get the word out. In addition, depending on the county that you're in, it's really a complicated process. So here in Chautauqua County, there's 11 different documents, forms of documentation that they need to turn in, and they have to turn it all in by mail, not electronically. And so there are a lot of steps that we could take to make it easier for families to be able to apply and to be able to get to work.
Well, it sounds like you have some great ideas, and I'm ready to work with you to help make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
Back to you, Liz.
Thank you very much, Assemblymember. So I think all hands are down. I want to thank this panel for being our last panel in this hearing. Appreciate all of your contributions today, everyone who came to testify. This will be the official end of the Economic Development Hearing. And for those who have been hoping for the tax hearing, give us 10 minutes, and we will start the tax hearing. And I believe that will require everyone to come off of this Zoom and to re-enter the tax hearing Zoom. So see some of you again in just a few minutes, and the rest of you enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you.